We do not have anyone today for the invocation, so if we could just have a moment of silence, please. Thank you very much, and if you are able to, please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. If we can have roll call, please.
Yes, Diarra.
Here.
Goos.
Here.
Carlson.
Here.
Ding Felder. Ding Felder.
Here.
Citro.
Here.
Miranda.
Here.
Meniscoco.
Here. Thank you very much. Mr. Shelby.
Yes, good morning, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, members of Tampa City Council. Martin Shelby, City Council Attorney. Today, Thursday, October 15th, 2020, is a virtual meeting, a regular agenda of the Tampa City Council. It's being held in accordance with the declarations and provisions of the Governor's Executive Order 20-69, as amended and extended by EO 20-246, and the emergency rules of procedure as adopted and amended by City Council. It is conducted by audio teleconferencing this morning only with video presentations, remote participation, which is referred to by the state of Florida statutes and rules, as communications media technology, or CMT. Now, this morning, the public and citizens of the city of Tampa are able to watch, listen, and view this meeting on cable TV Spectrum Channel 640 and Frontier Channel 15, as well as on the Internet at tappagov.net/livestream, one word, or on the city's Facebook page, and that is facebook.com/cityoftampafL, one word. Now, since this meeting is being conducted with the use of CMT, the alternative methods are established for the members of the public to offer public comment today or during public hearings: the Internet at tappagov.net-publiccomment, one word, voicemail, regular mail, or speaking remotely during public comment or during a public hearing by using the instructions that are available to you on the web at tappagov.net/city-council. Now, there's also an opportunity for those people who don't have communications media technology, a device, to participate, and they can do so by utilizing the CMT device that's made available to the public by the city of Tampa during this virtual meeting at the Tampa Convention Center at 333 South Franklin Street at the channel entrance. Now, public comments, pre-recorded and live, will be heard at the start of the meeting at the direction of City Council, and if there are public hearings, they will be heard when they appear on the agenda. All written or voicemail comments that have been received will be... The voicemail comments will be heard, but the written comments have been distributed to City Council and will be made part of today's record. That concludes my comments, Mr. Chairman. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, sir. All right. We go to the approval of the agenda and addendum to the agenda. We have received, at a late time, a memo from Councilmember Ding Felder to pull item 21 and move it to staff reports. So that's item number 21. And then, if you notice on the agenda, item number 14 has also been pulled, and that will go to staff reports. That is already on the addendum. And then, we have a item number 23. That is a substitute resolution, which appears on the addendum for clarity. So, once we get to that, we'll move to substitute.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Count Carlson.
Yeah, sorry for the late suggestion, but in reading through the public comments this morning, I noticed that, I think it's item number three, has some questions and concerns from the public, and I think if we just... If somebody was available, we were able to ask them to explain that in 30 seconds, it might alleviate the public's concerns, but I'll leave that up to you all as whether you want to pull it or not.
Do we have anybody on the line for item number three? I see it's part... It's a two-part item. Two and three are together. Do we have either the Chief of Staff, or the Chief of Police, or anybody that could stand by for those items? Or answer any questions?
Good morning, Chairman. John Bennett.
All right. Councilman Carlson, we have the Chief of Staff on the line. Do you have any questions for him?
Yes.
Explain what these two items are.
Yeah, Chief Bennett, you may have seen the public comments, and a couple folks wrote in and said that this is funding the quote-unquote militarization of the police. Can you explain to the public what it is, and does it do that or not?
So, I have, in the time that I've seen the JAG grant applied, it's mostly used for strategic overtime use to combat crime spikes typically around the holidays. Was a lot of the effort where security around the malls and whatnot was used across the city to support the businesses during the peak shopping periods. But it's also been used for situational strategic plans throughout the year. But normally, the money has been held towards overtime related to the peak shopping of the holiday season. I believe Chief Burkhart is going to be on to discuss the mental health update at the end of the staff reports. So, if you do pull it, obviously, he can weigh in on that as well.
If I could just ask one quick follow... It's not buying things like tanks and pepper spray or riot gear or anything like that. It's for staff and training. Is that right?
I am not aware. I've never seen the money used for that purpose.
Okay, I just wanted to answer the public's question on that. Thank you.
Chairman.
All right, thank you so much. And just clarification on item number 23 on the addendum. It is pulled for discussion under staff report, so I forgot to mention that.
Chairman.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Ding Felder. Earlier in the week, I had asked TPD about items two and three. I said specifically what we'll be doing with the $120,000, and the response I got back from TPD is only a line or two. Let me read it, just for the record. It says, "The JAG Grant Program," which is the federal grant at issue, "is an annual formula grant that the TPD receives each year. The Department of Justice decides the allocations and amount each year. The JAG Grant is the bond between all three city districts, and will utilize overtime for community-oriented policing initiatives to focus on all..." That's the response I got from TPD. I was comfortable with that.
All right, thank you very much, Councilman Ding Felder. In regards to staff reports and items that were pulled, any suggestions or comments from councilmembers of whom, you know, we need on? You know, we need standing by to answer any questions, or who we can just release at this point to keep things moving?
Mr. Chairman, I did have a suggestion, because I noticed it was quite a lengthy list of staff reports, and theoretically, it's only supposed to be five minutes.
Yeah.
Mr. Remer, our Sustainability Officer, in item 60, has a very, very lengthy report, which is great. And then, there were a lot of... There were some questions that were received in the last day or two from the community. So, what I was going to suggest was maybe we should defer that to a couple of weeks. So, to a time when we can give them more time and give the community a little... To be involved in that. So, I don't know how everybody else looks at that, but I'd possibly move to defer that.
So, you would like to defer item 60? Any questions or comments from councilmembers?
Miranda here. The problem with that, I'm not opposed to, but how are you going to know what we're going to happen in two weeks, or three weeks, or four weeks from now? We don't have a night meeting. I'd rather do them all today.
It's a great question, Mr. Miranda, but I can see today that we've got like 15 items on staff reports, and just Mr. Whitmer's... Excuse me, Mr. Whit... Remer's item 11, it looks like it's at least going to be a half hour, so I'm just trying to ease up today a little bit.
Mr. Chairman, Martin Shelby, may I chime in on this, please?
Go ahead, sir.
Just a reminder, and Councilmember Miranda did allude to it. There is no night meeting tonight. This is your only meeting today. And frankly, we're coming up upon the holidays, and I don't believe, in terms of even workshops, workshops are even scheduled for November or December. So, I would just remind council that your calendar through the rest of the year is very compressed, and just to be aware of that. And again, a reminder for those people who are not aware of it, particularly in the public, council is not meeting this evening, virtually, by video.
Mr. Chair, oh, go ahead.
If nobody else is at the bottom of that, I'm okay, but I just wanted us to give a heads up on that one. Chairman John Bennett, when you get a chance.
Go ahead, sir. And then, Councilman Viera, no.
Thank you. I want to be respectful of all of council's comments towards possibly moving the item. But I just wanted to tell you, when Mr. Remer submitted this, I had a conversation with him about the length and how it would flow, and he provided me that the slideshow would move quickly if that's council's pleasure to keep it here. If not, I just want to remind that if this was teed up as a 100-day report, Mr. Remer's been here basically 100 working days, and this was kind of a snapshot on where he's been in those first 100 days. And so, if we think the combination of the volume and the public input warrants, then one of the suggestions that we've been working with council on is to move things to workshops. But I just wanted to tee up that option as well.
Councilman Viera.
A moot point at this point. If I'm reading it right, it's been withdrawn, but it's a moot point. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, and going into the staff reports and memos that we have received, I see we have one regarding the rental certificates. We have one here on implicit bias training. We also have one from OCAWEN, for our Administrator of Neighborhood and Community Affairs, for items 59 regarding the spirit programs of parks. We already discussed 60, 61. It is the city of New York State statute regarding gender equality. On that, we have a memo. We have a memo for the renaming of Perio in Albany Park. We have one regarding... One from Dennis Rahar on 63. And is there any request that staff not be present for any of these? I mean, they're all very important topics.
Mr. Chair, if I may, Viera.
Yes.
Thank you, sir. Yeah, for my items, I don't... Except for, of course, implicit bias. I believe that's items 59. I don't need staff here for that report. I think it's self-explanatory. I don't need to question anybody on it and take council's time. Then, for item... I'm going through the list here. The Forest Hills one, I don't need anybody for that. And then, for 65...
Okay.
Yes, sir. And then, 65 on my crossover donation, I certainly don't need anybody here for that. So...
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah. I was going to add in, 63 has already been resolved. Mr. Rahar and I talked about it yesterday, and staff did a great job helping Mr. Franklin Glenn get his money.
Okay.
So, we can... Unless somebody else has an objection or a question, we can strike 63. I did have a question... I did have a question for Mr. Viera about 63. And I'm sure I know the answer, but I just wanted to make sure. But the doing of having a house to a church to help them with a rental assistance community event, and is it safe to assume, Mr. Viera, that we've checked, and that's a non-denominational event?
Yes, and thank you for that, Councilman. Yeah, this is a secular event, which is being done to assist people in... Who are apartment renters in terms of knowing their rights, et cetera. It happens to be on church property, but there's no religious overtones or undertones or anything of that nature. So, yeah, purely a reimbursement of use of a property for a secular purpose.
Yeah, I just wanted to get it on the record. I was confident that was the answer. Thank you.
All right. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda and the addendum?
Allo.
Motion from Councilman Goos. Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have a second? Councilman Viera, roll call vote.
Goos.
Yes.
Anis Kako.
Yes.
Citro.
Yes.
Miranda. Viera.
Yes.
Ding Felder.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously.
All right, thank you very much. That settles the agenda, and we now go into public comment. Do we have anybody at the Tampa Convention Center that is there to speak?
Yes, sir, we have one person there to speak.
All right, let's go with that person first, and we'll go into the live callers, and then we'll go into the recorded. If the individual at the Tampa Convention Center would please state their name, I will start the clock, and you have three minutes to speak.
Yeah, good morning, ladies and gentlemen of Tampa City Council. My name is Jethulio Gonzalez-Villatieri. I'm here in regards to agenda item number 60. The Climate Action Equity Plan, it's ridiculous. It's a farce. I've looked at it, and I'm here to voice my discontent and my condemnation about it. This is a plan that its solution for equity in the city is to create nine temporary jobs for frontline workers in the city of Tampa for $15 an hour. That's utterly ridiculous, okay? I'm sure you five ladies and gentlemen of the council know that the protests this summer haven't just been about police brutality, but it's been about racial inequity. And I'm urging you to please have the courage to push the Ready for 100 by 2030 resolution, because this resolution, this climate plan, the alternative to the 2045 plan that will not solve anything, the only thing that it does is mitigate climate catastrophe in by shifting municipal operations towards clean energy. That's less than 10% of energy consumption in the city, right? The 2030, 100% by 2030 actually creates jobs in frontline communities. Frontline communities where I come from. That goes a long way towards solving the racial inequity in the city, right? The city of Tampa has the infrastructure to reach 100% renewable and sustainable energy by the year 2030, and we can be a leader in this nation instead of waiting 10 years after Joe Biden's climate plan, which is utterly ridiculous, okay? We should be at the front of this. We should be creating jobs for frontline communities where I come from, well-paying, unionized jobs, hundreds of people. I've been out there volunteering. I've been out there doing the work. I'm not sure if you five folk know what's going on, but people out there in your city are hurting, and they need stimulus. And you know, as well as I know, that Washington and the federal government is slow and cumbersome. They are unwilling to meet the demands of the people all over this country. So, it's incumbent on us, as citizens and residents of the city of Tampa, to do this work and to get it done, to create these unionized jobs, and to transform this city, right? We can be a leader in this nation. So, that's why I'm pushing this resolution with everything I have. And I find it convenient that Mayor Castor could approve $13 million, a $13 million increase for the police budget, but we can't do this. We can't do this when we're in the midst of climate catastrophe. And if I'm not mistaken, the city of Tampa is 75th when it comes... Out of 100 cities, when it comes to current energy efficiency. We can be one of those top 10. We can be one of those top 10 because we have TECO. We're one of the only cities in the country that has our own energy company. So, I'm urging the City Council, another look at the Ready for 100 2030 resolution, and to consider it and to push it. Have the courage to push it, push it on Mayor Castor, push it on Whit Remer. His plan is utterly ridiculous. In fact, that 30-minute plan shouldn't... It is such a joke that it shouldn't even be brought in front of you five ladies and gentlemen, because it's a waste of your time. It does nothing to mitigate climate catastrophe. It does nothing to stimulate the economy. Look, I'm still in school. You folks should know this, that this plan would create hundreds of jobs in the city, especially for frontline communities. It would go a long way towards ameliorating racial inequities all over the city. So, please...
Thank you very much.
Supplicating. Please take it seriously.
Thank you. Do we have anybody else at the Tampa Convention Center?
No, that is the last person.
All right, we'll go into the live callers then.
All right, the first caller we have is Megan.
All right, hello.
Go ahead.
Oh, thank you very much. Good morning, everyone. My comment today is about the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Grant. It's a $120,000 federal grant, and it's deceiving because there is some funding for mental health resources, but it's wrapped in weapons and drones that only increase police violence. So, in short, my name is Megan. I live in Tampa. I've been a teacher in the local area for seven years. And so, this isn't just about our community, but this is about all of the children and teens that I've worked with and who I deeply care about in our community. I'm deeply concerned how no one heard the hundreds of residents demanding a reallocation of the budget into the community's needs. And I'm frankly losing faith. I'm hopeful that you will do the right thing today. You should reject the Edward Byrne Grant this year and every year forward. You told us that you could not reallocate funds to the community because you were worried about salaries and pensions. With that said, there is no excuse for accepting grants to further militarize an already extremely violent police force. Use of force against us, the people, and especially Black residents of Tampa and the Houseless, has increased by 24% since Chief Dugan stepped in. And therefore, we should not reward them with more weapons. We, the people, called for a crisis response team that is autonomous and independent from the police to respond to non-criminal crisis situations and to help our disabled residents or residents in crisis, similar to cahoots in Eugene, Oregon. We have heard many of you support a co-response situation with TPD. Simply put, since TPD has lost the trust of the people, it makes no sense to create a program that is part of or works that closely with TPD. Cahoots in Eugene is able to respond to 98% of their situations without relying on the violence that the police bring. Finally, I'm concerned that you're not making your best effort to honor the anti-bias charter amendment that we, the people, drafted and voted for. We clearly demanded a comprehensive program, and your ordinance only offers four hours for regular employees and 11 hours of training to TPD. How can you genuinely fit comprehensive anti-discrimination, implicit bias, and anti-discrimination training for race, religion, gender, gender identity, orientation, disability, age, and many other identities within the confines of four or 11 hours? These topics are too important to truncate, and you can figure out scheduling by being strategic and breaking the classes up throughout the year. Thank you for hearing our concerns about hiring an outside organization to conduct this training. It should not be an organization like USF. Instead, it should be a black and brown... Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next speaker, please.
Yes, the next speaker is David Mechanic. If you could unmute yourself.
Yes, ma'am. This is David Mechanic. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
Oh, yes, thank you. Mr. Chairman, councilmembers. I'm the attorney for the applicant on petition for review, which is item 42 on your agenda. The applicant is Mini Haha LLC. I certainly recognize the compression that you are facing in your schedule, and now especially with the holidays, but we are just here to respectfully request that you schedule the hearing on that petition for review at the earliest opportunity that can be accommodated by council, given your schedule and so forth. Thank you. I have nothing else.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Phil Compton. If you could hear me, please unmute yourself.
Good morning, councilmembers. I'm Phil Compton, 1430 Park Circle, Tampa, and I'm Senior Organizing Representative for Sierra Club Florida. First, some good news. First, some good news. The Orlando Utilities Commission announced yesterday that it will stop burning coal by 2027. Now, on today's agenda, while it contains a lot of good points, my disappointment in Mr. Reamer's report was its omission of a goal for the community other than municipal services to transition Tampa away from fossil fuels. But you know, that's okay. It's not up to Mr. Reamer and staff to set such a goal for the city. His job is to work to enact the goals set by elected officials. It's up to council and the mayor to work together to do that. The mayor actually has made it clear that she supports such a community-wide goal. Back during the runoff campaign, candidate Castor replied to my question at a Kathy Contampa event by clearly stating that she is for 100% clean energy, not just for municipal operations, but also for the community as a whole. Now, what does the good news from Orlando have to do with this? The only reason that the city of Orlando has been so determined to convince Orlando Utilities Commission to move beyond coal is that three years ago, their city commission voted unanimously to commit to 100% clean energy future by date certain for both municipal operations and the Orlando community as a whole. Orlando is one of 10 Florida cities to have made such commitments so far, St. Pete was the first four years ago. These Florida cities are among the 167 cities, 12 counties, and eight entire states where over 100 million Americans live that are now committed to a total community-wide transition in a just and equitable way to a 100% clean energy future by date certain. Sierra Club has been involved in every one of these commitments, so I may therefore assure you that each and every one is a commitment for their entire community along with municipal operations. You know, perhaps the best news in these difficult times is that American cities are now leading the way to a total transition away from fossil fuels. Tampa would have the experience and advice available of all these other cities. We can learn from their successes, how they've overcome challenges that we will face. The common factor in their success is that a goal is set and that planning is done in an inclusive and transparent manner. You know, we can no longer just conduct some good projects here and there. We must set a goal through a council resolution for our community and determine together a plan on how we're going to get there. Sierra Club and the Tampa Bay Climate Alliance pledge to be part of that process to help in any way possible. Mr. Reamer will need help from all of us and we're here to do our part. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I just wanted to say to Phil Compton, send our condolences regarding the loss of his good friend and associate Kent Bailey. And we mentioned that a couple of weeks ago when Kent passed and we just wanted to reiterate that to you.
Thank you very much, sir. Kent would have been here today if he could have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Yes, next speaker is Brooke Erit. If you could hear me, please unmute yourself.
Go ahead.
Brooke Erit, if you could hear me, please unmute yourself.
Okay, sorry, I had to figure out how to unmute myself. Thank you. Good morning. My name is Brooke Erit and I'm from Food and Water Action and I'm also here on behalf of our nearly 2,500 members who live in Tampa. First, I stand in solidarity with those today calling to reject the Edward Byrne Grant and demanding comprehensive bias training for our police force. Secondly, I'm here, the city of Tampa is at a crossroads where we must decide whether to invest in the future of this great city. The city has made a commitment to invest and I want to make sure that the city truly lives up to that promise by ensuring an equitable transition to 100% clean renewable energy by 2030 is made. Over the past four months, we've been meeting with your offices, thank you, to discuss the necessity to transition Tampa citywide to 100% clean renewable energy from solar, wind, and tidal sources by 2030. And we're pleased to have overwhelming support from the community to make this transition with a much-needed focus on equity and inclusion. We did become concerned this past week, though, when we saw Mayor Castor's plan deviates from the necessary components of acting quickly and prioritizing equity. Tampa can and must act swiftly. Cities larger than Tampa, in states where the oil and gas industry are more prevalent, have made the commitment to transition quicker. For example, San Francisco, a city with twice the population of Tampa, has a goal of delivering to all residents and businesses 50% renewable energy by 2020 this year and 100% citywide, including municipal operations, by 2030. But as to equity, with the ongoing struggle to correct historic systemic racism and injustice, it is more important than ever to prioritize equity in all aspects of city planning. Equity is not merely a part of planning for the city's future. Equity must be the guiding principle for city planning. And that's why the city needs to take steps to recruit and include frontline, low-income communities in the decision-making and planning process. The energy burden on our most vulnerable populations must be lifted. Our poorest Tampanians pay more in energy than our wealthiest and that can be alleviated through city-assisted weatherization and energy efficiency upgrades. As a progressive and financially capable city with a litany of low-cost opportunities to transition our city, Mayor Castor has an obligation to move Tampa quickly and efficiently towards 100% clean renewable energy by 2030. Any plan that doesn't put equity at the forefront, any plan that isn't community-wide, any plan that doesn't have an aggressive timeline is tantamount to inaction, is tone deaf to the needs of our community, and frankly, that is unacceptable. So please ensure that Tampa moves to 100% clean renewable energy by 2030 and please ensure the community is not only involved, but leads the city on how to solve this crisis. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker?
Yes, next speaker is Mary Elizabeth Estrada. If you could hear me, please unmute yourself.
Go ahead.
Again, Mary Elizabeth Estrada, you're next to speak, please unmute yourself. All right, we'll move on to Nancy Stevens. If you could hear me, please unmute yourself.
Okay, thank you. Yes, my name is Nancy Stevens. I'm a conservation chair for the Tampa Bay Sierra Club. And I'm also speaking on item 16, 60. And first, I do like to thank the city council and the mayor for putting sustainability as one of your goals and working towards it. I mean, I'd also like to thank Whit Reamer for starting on the Climate Action and Equity Plan. And the plan's a start, but Tampa can and must do better to stem the rising tides resulting from climate change. And that threatens all of us and we also have to make Tampa a healthier city. Did you know that the American Lung Association gives Hillsborough County an F rating on air quality for ozone? And to quote from their report, the Tampa-St. Petersburg and Clearwater area rank 68th out of over 200 cities for the most polluted city in the U.S. for ozone. Ozone pollution can harm even healthy people, but it's particularly dangerous for children, older adults, and people with lung diseases like COPD or asthma. Ozone can even shorten people's lives. The report documents that warmer temperatures brought by climate change are making ozone more likely to form and harder to clean up. Everyone in the city of Tampa must work together to drastically reduce our carbon emissions. Tampa can set an example, the municipality can set an example, but also must set goals that we can all strive to reach. Without these goals, we won't get there. So I urge the city to commit to 100% clean renewable energy, not just for the municipality, but the whole city. Join 167 other cities across the country that have made this commitment. And select a timeframe that would stop carbon emissions as soon as possible, 2035, like St. Pete, or even sooner, like 2030. I applaud the city's decision as a start to purchase electric vehicles, plant more trees. It's just a start. I look forward to working with the city and seeing what innovations our citizens can come up with given the challenge of being ready for 100 by 2030. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Emma Lawler. If you could hear me, please unmute yourself.
Yes, good morning, Mr. Chairman and council members. This is with regard to item 60. My name is Emma Catherine Lawler. I am the Florida Climate Crisis Campaign Manager at the CLEO Institute. I'm also a resident in Town and Country and a recent graduate from the Patel College of Global Sustainability at USF. The climate crisis is here. I have worked 10-hour days outside during the extremely high heat events here in Tampa and those high heat events are only going to become more frequent due to climate change. On behalf of the CLEO Institute, we are in support of the work that is happening in the Office of Sustainability and Resiliency and we're happy to know that the city of Tampa is prioritizing environmental issues. This is a great first step, but we should make this plan stronger. We would like to see environmental justice investments continue to evolve in a holistic, diverse, and integrated way that is community-wide by 2030. The good news is, we already have the technology to adjust transition to clean energy and each year it becomes more efficient and more cost-effective. More so, the renewable energy will allow the city to invest in high-paying jobs within the community. I'd also like to note that the solar industry creates more jobs per megawatt hour of electricity generated than any other source of energy. We must shift the energy burden off of our poorest Tampa residents by alleviating the situations that cause their homes to use more energy. We would also like to make our city more walkable and more bikeable. And most important, we need to prioritize working together as a community with an integrated approach to sustainability and resiliency. I believe it was Mayor Castor who said that sustainability and resilience underpins everything we do. And so with that said, the CLEO Institute will be uplifting youth voices to push for a climate emergency declaration that acknowledges the commitment to an urgent transition prioritized across all departments and municipal operations in our community. We would like to make ourselves and the CLEO Institute available to assist in any way we can so that sustainability and resiliency can come to fruition in Tampa. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Levy Frost. If you could hear me, please unmute yourself.
Yes, hi, good morning. My name is Levy Frost and I'm an action fellow with the Alliance for Climate Education. I'm speaking on Agenda 60. I care about the climate crisis because of the impact it could have on our local community here in Tampa. Our future depends on us coming together to fight issues that we face in the modern world. With rising ocean surface temperatures caused by climate change, this comes as a consequence of lack of biodiversity and rising sea levels. I can say with confidence as someone who was born and raised in Tampa that we love our boats and we love fishing. If we don't start to take care of our environment, we are at risk of losing a part of our economy and overall way of life. It is imperative that we protect our beautiful bay. We wouldn't be Tampa Bay without it. The environmental and sustainability efforts that Sustainability and Resilience Officer Whit Reamer is presenting today discusses environmental justice, clean and renewable energy, and climate action plus equity plan, but does not go far enough. It's a good step in the right direction, but we need to see stronger, bolder action. This can be things like making efforts towards declaring state of climate emergency, excuse me, guaranteeing a transition to 100% renewable energy by 2030, ensuring universal access to food and water, making sure frontline communities have a say in all the action that Mr. Reamer and Mayor Castor plans. And in order to make all of these efforts happen, we need to prioritize working together and building community engagement towards sustainability in the city. Personally, I believe that it is in Tampa's best interest to get as many people involved with the upcoming projects as Mr. Reamer is, and starts by educating the public on climate and mobilizing the youth organizations and businesses to pursue climate action. We want to make ourselves available to help with community input and with, and in writs, words, help take action in equity. I hope revising the initial plan will do that.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Bijan Ovink. If you could hear me, please unmute yourself.
I think I'm unmuted, is that correct? The light's green on my computer. Thank you.
We can, go ahead.
Good morning. My name is Bijan Ovink and I reside at 3025 West Van Buren Drive, Tampa, Florida, 33611. Speaking on Agenda Item Number 60. I am speaking in favor of a strong resolution for 100% clean energy Tampa by 2030 for the entire community, not just municipal operations. Climate change is real. Climate change is here and we need to act now. I have read the memo from the mayor's office. It's a very good memo and it has, but it has a major, major, major flow. We do not have time. There is no planet B. As you know, Tampa is one of 10 most threatened cities by climate change and the rising water. And the time to act is now, not by 2035 and definitely not by 2045. Action by 2045 is tantamount to no action at all. Even on a national level, the call is to transition by 2035. If we can do it nationally by 2035, then Tampa can certainly do it by 2030. What needs to be done? Fossil fuels. The city needs to transition away from fossil fuels and towards durable and renewable energy, solar and wind. Cars. Tampa should become a more walkable and bikeable city and we need to work towards clean electric public transportation. The future of vehicles is electric, but that is only possible if the city increases EV charging stations. The city needs to work with hardened TECO now, not in 10 years. Eventually, the city may even follow major cities in the world like Amsterdam and ban gas and diesel cars from the city center altogether. Over 100 million Americans now live in a community that is now formally committed and working towards a goal of 100% renewable energy for both municipal operations and the entire community. Tampa should join these 167 cities, 12 counties, and eight states in getting to work towards moving Tampa as a whole to 100% clean energy future. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next speaker is Walter Smith.
Good morning, council.
Good morning. Yes, sir, go ahead.
All right, good morning, council chair, good morning, council. As a coordinator of the Tampa-Hillsboro Disaster Resilience Initiative, I stand in complete support of the Ready for 100 Clean Energy Action Campaign. It's a program that is focused on addressing the devastating environmental impacts that have plagued black and brown communities for generations because of neglect and policies and unwillingness of the city of Tampa to recognize these devastating effects from not developing a real clean energy program. The information that has been presented by the new Sustainability and Resilience Officer Whit Reamer as a representative of Mayor Castor's office is soundingly tone deaf. It demonstrates detachment from Tampa's frontline communities. That is the evidence that the city's policies or lack thereof are intended to do nothing for the thousands of people who are now suffering and have been suffering the most from environmental impacts. Now, our communities are the worst impacted by continued environmental transgressions that continue to go unmitigated. And this presentation was devoid of a commitment to make a change here and publicly present a plan that will commit to addressing core environmental problems in Tampa's frontline communities. Instead, what it contains of real community resilience and sustainability and reveals a choice to ignore what is painfully obvious to those of us most affected by bad air quality, urban heat islands, overpriced utilities at all. Now, our black and brown communities can ill afford to be ignored as our children have the highest instances of respiratory illnesses due to bad air quality compounded with COVID-19 now. Or as everyday people pass out in the streets because of overexposure to heat. To the mayor and city council, I say, make the commitment to 100% clean energy for Tampa by 2030 and make a real future for all of Tampaans. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Matthew Yampolsky.
Okay, go ahead.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so it's been four and a half months since the murder of George Floyd and that's when a lot of these public comments regarding the police budget really started. For, excuse me, four and a half months, you guys have ignored us. You ignored countless phone calls, you guys have ignored countless written requests, countless emails. You guys have even gaslit us at the end of public comments. Bring your comments immediately after the last meeting, Mr. Councilman. So anyways, you guys have ignored us for four and a half months. So we have no faith in you guys listening to us now. So I'm going to take my opportunity to ask Councilman vitro directly, once again, because you denied it the first time I asked you. Your aide literally told me that the houseless, priceless in Tampa... Your aide literally told me that the houseless, priceless in Tampa was a county problem, not a city problem. And you denied that. Okay, last time I asked you about it, you didn't say anything. So I would really appreciate it and I think the constituents would appreciate some clarity on your aide's comments regarding the houseless community in Tampa. $162 million goes to the police department last, last fiscal year. This year, we're adding 13 million to it. Meanwhile, in Tampa, I think we have one shelter that has no seats. We have homeless people. We have houseless people on the streets that get chased away at 5:30 in the morning by the bike patrol. Okay, so we have all this money, $13 million go into pensions and raises. And you guys, your answer to me, to me is that it's a county problem, not a city problem. Well, I think it's a, I think it's a city council problem. I think it's mayor problem. I think it is a Tampa problem. I think it's a humanity problem. And I think this is a big part of, this is a big reason why the, the signatures are already starting recalling many of you. Because you are, have clearly ignored us. You guys, Carlson literally told us last time that, oh, the calls for, against the protests are 10 to 1 in my office. Well, none of those calls are on record, sir. None of those calls are. Meanwhile, 50 calls last time, countless calls this time. I mean, like, we're talking about hundreds and hundreds of public comment on record and zero for the other side. And Councilman Carlson decided to gaslight the public and say we were a nuisance and that our calls were outnumbered 10 to 1. So we have a councilman in Citro that claims that the houseless problem in Tampa is not a Tampa problem. And we have a councilman in Carlson who claims that we, the protesters are a nuisance. So if Carlson, if you'd like to present some of these phone calls that outnumber our comments for the record, I'd love for that clarity. And Mr. Citro, please, once again, I'm begging you, clarify your aide's comments. Take this opportunity to clarify the comments and, and tell the people of Tampa who elect you what, how you feel about the houses problem in Tampa and what we can do to fix it. And hint, hint, maybe we can take some of that 162 million and.
All right, next speaker, please. And any comments, please direct them to the city council board and not individual council members. Thank you very much. Next speaker.
It's mommy's turn. Next speaker is Jordana Yampolsky.
All right, go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, hi, Council. Uh, yeah, my name is Jordana Yampolsky. Um, I've been a resident of Tampa my entire life. I'm calling, um, with really deep concerns with how you guys handle these public comments. Hundreds of residents call and email and, and send you guys messages regarding, demanding reallocation of the budget into communities' needs. We have all lost faith in you and, and like my husband mentioned, that's why these signatures to have many of you recalled are already, um, coming in. You guys really, you really need to reject the Edward Burns Grant this year and every year forward. Even if you claim that it's going towards, you know, uh, overtime pay because of the holidays and, and it's not going towards weapons. Uh, we don't believe you and we don't believe the police department. And we have, as a, as a community as a whole, we have no faith in the police department to keep us safe. And we also have no faith for them to use money in a way that could possibly keep us safe. They're just not able to do it. Please reject this grant. There is a, we, we've been calling for a crisis response team that's autonomous and independent from the police. And you guys, uh, ignored that as well. So we're asking that you reconsider that. Please, um, listen to us and, and listen to the people that are asking, begging, begging you guys to do your jobs.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
All right, I'm going to go back to Mary Elizabeth Estrada.
Okay.
Mary. Do you hear me?
Mary Estrada.
Mary, I see that you're unmuted. You just need to speak.
Mary Estrada, if you are, you're on, if you would unmute yourself and I can start the clock.
Okay, sure. Well, we're trying to work that out with her. I can move on to the recording comments. I do want to make note that we had two others that registered to speak but did not log on. And it is Grant Loverin and Lisandra Morales.
Okay, how many recorded comments do we have? Is it about 13 or so?
That is correct.
All right, if you'd like to go ahead and begin with those, thank you.
Hi, this is Angel D'Angelo, born and raised in Tampa, Florida. Giving a message to leave a comment for the October 15th 9:00 AM city council meeting. City Council, I'm really urging you at this point in time. As you know, you've disappointed a large number of your constituents to support the budget the way it was, without question. There was a lot of reasons why you all said you did that, including the concerns regarding salaries and pensions, the people losing their jobs. With that in mind, the Edward Burns Grant is being awarded to Tampa should be rejected this year and all years forward. Because all that's going to do is fund more weapons for the police. And if the concern is about police violence, especially towards Black, Brown, and homeless communities here in Tampa, we really don't need to be investing any more money into more weapons, even if it's from a grant. So we should just go ahead and reject that grant moving forward because police violence towards the residents has increased by 24% since Dugan's been the police chief and we don't need to give them any more ammunition for that, literally. That in mind, we did speak with you about getting a program similar to Kahoots. And we have emphasized as a community how important it is that it's not a co respond relationship and that it is completely separate from PPD. If the fractured trust is of PPD, we're still not sure why PPD has any control or say over this. They have not re-earned the community's trust in the amount of time given. In fact, they've probably come closer to losing it. So we're urging you to support a program similar to Kahoots and not a co respond program. I also know you're hearing about the ordinance we the people put together and voted for off the anti-discrimination and implicit bias training. Please note, the charter says it must be comprehensive. So I'm not sure how it's going to be comprehensive to discuss anti-discrimination, implicit bias, and anti-harassment regarding race, religion, gender, gender identity, orientation, disability, age, and all the other areas that they're supposed to touch. I don't see how they're going to do that in four hours or 11 hours to adhere to the common. I'm glad you are taking the look into an outside organization seriously. You shouldn't use an organization like USS. You really need to find a Black and Brown-led DNI program that can truly get to the heart of the issues and the oppressions that PPD, as well as the city of Tampa, place on the people of Tampa. So please listen to these. Don't do a co respond relationship with PPD. Let's get away from having to do so much with PPD. You all said it yourselves, they're overworked, they're stressed out, you know. Then why give them more? Just have a Kahoots program that can crisis respond. Kahoots is able to do this 98% of the time in Eugene, Oregon, without police being involved. And that's a really good number. They've been around since 1989. So please don't let it down again, City Council. Please do the right thing for the people of Tampa and let's move forward in, in the correct way. Thank you all and have a great day.
My name is Barbara Tepke, DO Box 360085, Tampa, 33673. When will the mayor and city council commit to 100% clean renewable energy? The mayor said that municipal carbon emissions will go down to zero by 2045, but city operations are only 3% of the total emissions. What about the 97% from corporations, businesses, and citizens? St. Petersburg committed to 100% renewable energy for everyone in that city. Tampa should do the same. I want to breathe clean air and drink clean water and not fossil fuel pollution. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Claire Edwards and I'm submitting my comments on Agenda Item 60 regarding the city of Tampa's environmental sustainability efforts. I am at 418 Erie Avenue in Tampa. As a mother and a resident of the Dade Resilience Community, I'm extremely concerned that unless we act boldly and with urgency, climate change will leave our community unlivable for future generations. The city of Tampa must show that it takes the threat of climate, of climate change to our area seriously by transitioning the entire community, not just municipal operations, to 100% renewable energy by 2030. The science on climate change could not be more clear. Our planet is in grave danger if we don't act decisively in the next 10 years to do drastic, to dramatically reduce greenhouse gas emissions. We are already suffering from worsening natural disasters, increased temperatures, and warming, rising, and more acidic seas, all of which directly threaten Tampa Bay. Sea level rise in our area is predicted to be up to four feet in the next 40 years. By mid-century, we're predicted to have 81 days a year where the heat index is above 105 degrees Fahrenheit. That's up from an average of four days now. The list goes on and on. Putting our heads in the sand on this crisis is tantamount to writing off the future of our community. Memo on the city of Tampa's plans to address this existential crisis comes across as tantamount to the urgency of this crisis and of the moment. Not only is 2045 far too late and the action described grossly inadequate in scale, but it fails to acknowledge that the burden of the climate crisis hits our most vulnerable populations the hardest. Due to a lack of access of energy efficiency and weatherization upgrades, the poor have higher energy costs and are more vulnerable to flooding and other climate injustices. To move our city forward together, we must make a just recoverable, sustainable recovery our priority. The Climate Action and Equity Plan needs to focus on input from our frontline impacted communities and truly be a solution to the existing problems. The great news is that it's clear that we have the solutions we need to address the crisis and they're getting better, more effective, and more affordable every day. Five years from now, solar and wind electricity will be cheaper than fossil fuel electricity. Solar jobs are growing five times faster than average job growth. And manufacturers are transitioning to electric cars, commercial vehicles, and buses. And companies all over the globe are changing their practices to be zero emissions. Retrofitting existing infrastructure to be more energy efficient is cheap, easy to do, and something we can start right away. Over 100 million Americans live in a community that is now formally committed and working toward a goal of 100% renewable energy for both municipal operations and their entire community in getting, in working towards moving Tampa as a whole to 100% clean energy future. Thank you.
My name is Christina Stokes and I live in the USS area of Tampa. I am commenting on for the October 15th 9:00 AM council meeting. City Council, with all due respect, I am deeply concerned with how none of you heard the calls of a hundred of residents demanding a reallocation of the budget into the community's needs. Although I am losing faith in you, I am hopeful you will do right today. You should reject the Edward Burns Grant this year and every year forward. You told us that you could not reallocate funds to the community because you were worried about salaries and pensions. With that said, there was no excuse for accepting grants to further militarize an already violent police force. Use of force against us, the people, and especially Black residents of Tampa and the houseless, has increased by 24% since Chief Dugan stepped in. And therefore, we should not reward them with more weapons. We, the people, call for a crisis response team that is autonomous and independent from the police to respond to non-criminal crisis situations similar to Kahoots in Eugene, Oregon. We have heard many of you support a co respond situation with PPD. And simply put, since PPD has lost the trust of the people, it makes no sense to create a program that is part of or works that closely with PPD. Kahoots in Eugene is able to respond to a 98%, 98% of their situations without relying on the violence that police bring. Finally, I am concerned you are not making your best effort to honor the Anti-Bias Charter Amendment we the people drafted and voted for. We clearly demanded a comprehensive program and your ordinance only offers four hours for regular. These topics are too important to truce case. And you can figure out scheduling by being strategic and breaking the classes up throughout the year. I'm glad you heard our concerns about hiring an outside organization to conduct this training. It should not be an organization like USS. Instead, it should be a Black and Brown-led DNI training program that actually understands marginalization and oppression in real time. Council, you let your citizens down multiple times in September and throughout the summer. Please do not let us down again. Thank you.
My name is Craig and I'm a resident of East Tampa and I'm calling about the October 15th 9:00 AM council meeting. And with all due respect and deeply concerned with how basically it's just a lack of, uh, attention and also response to the over 100 comments from residents demanding real allocation of funds to safety programs from PPD. I'm also, I'm also demanding that City Council reject the Edward Burns Grant. We definitely don't need more weapons and more surveillance of our communities. That money could be better directed into safety programs that we already gave to the council. Uh, use of force right now is up in PPD. It's been like that from 2017, 2018, and 2019. And no doubt, um, the 2020 numbers are going to be even higher. We've seen an increase in 25%, 24% of violence and over 200% of chemical weapons before the George Floyd protests even kicked off. So it's deeply concerning. And if you want City Council just does not, um, want to address it or just wants to offer it off to the mayor and the mayor's not responsive and PPD, yeah, they don't care because they're doing it. We also want, uh, that, uh, what we are thankful, I am thankful that City Council is responding to, looking at a medical response unit, uh, but we reject, um, the co response method that you guys are looking after. Uh, Kahoots again has a 31-year track history, 100% safety record, no deaths, no serious injuries. So why would we look at inferior, um, co response models around the nation is, is, it blows my mind. So when that comes, I just want you all to know that this blood's going to be on your hands. That in the middle of a civil rights movement, the City Council had a chance to actually fight for and adopt a 31-year complete clean safety record program, uh, by Kahoots. And City Council rejected it. In addition to that, um, I want the South Tampa City Council also to passing the, um, anti-bias training. But implementation is definitely lacking. Believe that there's only four hours of regular hours of training for PPD. And definitely don't believe that, um, you know, that the current, you know, it's really, really deep and in-depth topics that you guys are covering. And just don't believe that can really encounter such a short amount of time. So thanks for your time. I do thank the City Council for making some progressive steps, but don't undermine them with poor implementation, um, and poor execution. It's got to go hard. Thanks, bye.
Hello, my name is David Sinclair, AD 434 Pebble Circle, Tampa. I am calling related to Item 60, ILB 2020-48. The subject Sustainability and Resiliency Presentation. My name is David Sinclair and I have been a member of the Tampa Bay Climate Alliance since its inception. And I am concerned about the dates for which the city of Tampa is considering to become a ready for 100% clean energy city. I believe that any position that does not support a 2030 deadline for Tampa to become a ready for 100% clean energy city is actually a slap in the face of those in our community to be most impacted by the ravages of climate change. Yes, it's also a slap in the face of those hardworking climate justice activists locally who fight the climate deniers. I believe that a declaration to support a transition to 100% clean energy city for Tampa by 2030 would permit us all to hold our heads on high rather than lower our heads and collect the shame as a city with no backbone. Only wanting to kick the proverbial bucket down the road another 15 years when you're all no longer in this room. This is my line of the standard, 2030, not 2045, which is actually a mirage. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Hi, my name is Otisha Floyd and I am a resident of Tampa. And I am just calling in to comment on a few items today. City Council, with all due respect, I am deeply concerned with how none of you have heard calls of a hundred of residents demanding a reallocation of the budget into the community's needs. Although I'm losing faith in you, I am hopeful you will do what is right today. You should reject the Edward Burns Grant this year and every year forward. You told us that you could not reallocate funds to the community because you were worried about salaries and pensions. With that said, there is no excuse for accepting grants to further militarize an already violent police force. Use of force against, use of force against us, the people and especially black residents of Tampa and the houseless has increased by twenty-four percent since Chief Dugan stepped in and therefore we should not reward them with more weapons. We, the people, call for a crisis response team that is autonomous and independent from the police to respond to non-criminal crisis situations similar to Kahoots in Eugene, Oregon. We have heard many of you support a co-response situation with TPD and simply put, since TPD has lost the trust of the people, it makes no sense to create a program that is part of or works that closely with TPD. Relying on violence that police bring. Finally, I'm concerned that you are not making any effort or your best effort to honor the anti-bias charter amendment we the people drafted and voted for. We clearly demanded a comprehensive program and your ordinance only offers four hours for regular employees and eleven hours of training for TPD. How can you genuinely fit comprehensive anti-discrimination implicit bias and anti-discrimination training for race, religion, gender and gender identity, religion, orientation, disability, age and all the other identities within the confines of four or eleven hours? These topics are too important to truncate and you can figure out scheduling by being strategic and breaking the classes up throughout the year. I'm glad our concerns about hiring an outside organization to conduct this training haven't hurt. It should not be an organization like USS. It should be a black and brown-led D and I training program that actually understands marginalization and oppression in real time. Council, you let your citizens down in September, so please do not do that again. Thank you.
My name is Jason Payne, Agenda Item Sixty. So my name is Jason Payne and I'm with the Fight for Twenty Thirty Initiative. A little over eleven years ago, I became a resident of the Tampa Bay area and now reside in the beautiful area called Beach Park. I've long been a supporter of renewable energy and over a never-ending goal to reaching a more sustainable path. However, after learning about this plan to transition to a clean energy by twenty forty-five, I'm left a little dumbfounded. Would the plan only commit into transitioning our municipal operations, which accounts for just under ten percent of the city's energy use? It just feels like we can achieve and commit to a little bit more. So we need a better well-thought-out strategy that outlines not only what we want to do, but also how we can plan doing so. We not only owe it to ourselves, but we owe it to future Tampa residents. So I demand a more aggressive approach to reduce our dependencies on fossil fuels and to push us to a more and better, more forward approach modern city. We need better sidewalks, more access, more access to electric charging stations, bike park, better tax incentives for solar usage, better public transport in congested areas, a solid smart energy grid, tax, tax incentives to drive electric vehicles. If the top cities in other western countries can do this, I think we can too. So to give you an example of how I live with pollution daily, the Kennedy West Shore Business District areas are now so congested during rush hours, at times you can see the haze of exhaust fumes, you can smell the pollution in the air due to the thousands of vehicles that pass through our area. So cutting through residential streets, they're trying to avoid as much traffic as possible. It's, it's just a mess. The Tampa must move forward towards a low-carbon economy, but if I sit on the map and lead the way in the technology and implementation of our community that embraces and only renewable energy. It does surprise me that a hundred million Americans currently live in a community that is now formally committed to a goal of one hundred percent renewable energy and Tampa being one of the fastest-growing cities in America should join suit with these one hundred and sixty-seven cities and work towards a one hundred percent clean energy future. So let's increase Tampa's consumption of renewable energy by twenty thirty instead. It's imperative to decarbonize over the coming decade to avoid all the elements of a polluted system, both for the people's health and the environment. We have the public on our side and you elected as our representative, so let's.
Hello, this is Marilyn Borlick, twenty-five oh-two St. Charlotte Place, Tampa, Florida. This is on Agenda Item Sixty. Climate Sustainability and Reliance Office's report in award should be canceled due its lack of substance. I'm very concerned that the meaningful sustainability and resilience plan for the city is not in this report. We must transition our community-wide effort by twenty thirty to be completely renewable, clean energy. Current weather events are very clear and alerting us to the importance of the increasing need for this. Twenty forty-five is way too late, even on the national level, the transition is twenty thirty-five. Tampa can surely do this by twenty thirty. Every year, technology makes greater transitions easier and better for the interest of people. This is growing and yet the timeline just extended backwards. Florida is ranked seventy-fifth out of a hundred cities on its current energy efficiency and Tampa could very quickly transition off of fossil fuels by simply focusing on energy efficient upgrades, cheap, quick and easy ones. The Climate Action and Equity Plan needs to focus on input from our frontline impacted communities to truly be a solution for the existing problems. Some actions that would be suggested are to shift the energy burden of our poorest champions and alleviating the situations that cause their homes to use more energy, lack of energy efficiency and weatherization upgrades, for example. Two is to make our city more walkable and bikeable and work with TECO and HART, increasing EV charging and clean electric public transportation. Three is transition to clean renewable energy, supporting the city investing in high-paying jobs within the community, installation of energy upgrades to city infrastructure. Again, there's over a hundred million Americans now who live in a community that is formally committed to working towards a hundred percent goal and we can do that. At this election time, when climate is on the minds of many voters, Tampa's, Tampa's sustainability plans need to reflect our community's view of the importance of a sustainable future for our younger citizens. We need to stop this report and revamp it completely. We can do far more than the current plan recommends, offering renewable energy for both municipal operate. Thank you so much for hearing my concerns. Bye.
Good morning. My name is Matt Brownell. I am here as part of the Tampa Fight for Twenty Thirty campaign. I was delighted to hear that the city council Tampa has committed a substantial amount of the budget to creating a Climate Action and Equity Plan. I want to make sure that city truly lives up to that promise by ensuring the plan is aggressively and truly equitable. Unfortunately, the memo from the mayor's office was so tone-deaf to this message that today's presentation should be canceled. We simply cannot wait any longer to transition fully to one hundred percent clean renewable energy. That is why Tampa needs to follow in the footsteps of a hundred and sixty-seven other cities nationwide and commit to a community-wide transition to solar, wind and tidal sources. And Tampa needs to lead this effort in pursuing an aggressive timeline to make that transition by twenty thirty. If we start now, Tampa can easily do this. Lastly, we learned that Tampa is amongst the lowest in the nation on their progress towards energy efficiency. This is great news because energy efficiency is the cheapest, easiest and fastest way to greatly reduce the amount of energy we need. Also, energy efficiency upgrades can impact every portion of our society and will benefit our most vulnerable communities the best. We will save money investing in energy efficiency and the reduction in our energy needs will make it all the more easier to substitute our energy sources with clean renewable energy. As a progressive and financially capable city with a litany of low-cost opportunities to transition our city, we have an obligation to move quickly and efficiently to do everything we can to equip the city to be one hundred percent by twenty thirty. In making this transition, the city will need to take steps to recruit and include frontline low-income communities in the decision-making and planning process. True community involvement must go beyond electronic outreach to increase those who have been separated by the technological divide and to identify and include those who have been most heavily hoisted the energy burden. The city must be wary of being paternalistic towards these impacted communities, but not unilaterally deciding on solutions. Rather, we must engage the community to learn about their firsthand knowledge of what is needed to solve the ongoing crisis of equity and exclusion. Any plan that does not put equity at the forefront, any plan that isn't community-wide, any plan that doesn't have an aggressive timeline is tantamount to inaction and is frankly unacceptable. Please ensure that Tampa moves to one hundred percent clean renewable energy by twenty thirty. Please ensure the community is not only involved, but leads the city on how to solve this crisis. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Michelle Assad. I live at twenty-one oh-nine Bay Shore Boulevard, Tampa three-three-six oh-six. And I'm calling in regard to the environmental sustainability effort for the presented by the mayor's office. And the reason I'm calling is because I read that the goal is to have Tampa be completely renewable by twenty forty-five. However, at in the year twenty forty-five, right now I'm twenty-nine, I'm going to be fifty-four then. So that's been a really, really long time. I think that's kind of, you know, it's a little bit cowardly to be honest. What if we just kind of do this now, solve this now instead of passing, passing the buckons to the next generation? You know, I think it's kind of ridiculous, twenty-five years? So much stuff can happen in twenty-five years, so why don't we just do that now while we have the technology? Please consider changing this to a much sooner date. Honestly, even twenty thirty seems really far away to me, but that's a lot better than twenty forty-five. So come on, you know, get this done and, you know, make Tampa join the twenty-first century. Thank you so much.
Good morning. My name is Natalia Assad. My address is three-six-one-five Dill Road Loop three-three-five-four-eight. I'm with the Tampa Fight for Twenty Thirty campaign. When I heard that the environmental sustainability effort by the mayor's office presented today was focused on the deadline of twenty forty-five, I didn't know if I wanted to laugh or cry. Is this a cool joke? I asked myself. I am personally embarrassed by our city's standing when it comes to our sustainability efforts, nowhere near the other one hundred and sixty-seven cities in the U.S. that have already started transitioning, but this was just too much for me. The decision to make the deadline so far off only confirms to me the complete denial or ignorance of the facts by our current leaders. In New York, there is a clock ticking right now that is marking a countdown, the time that we have to stabilize our climate before the effects of global warming become irreversible. As you're listening to my work, that clock is at seven years and seventy-seven days and the six seconds are ticking. That's how long we have globally to neutralize the brutal amount of CO2 and methane that we've been spewing if we want to hurt the catastrophic chain of events that will begin to happen when we hit five hundred parts per million of carbon dioxide in our atmosphere. We are currently at four hundred and seventeen parts per million. Right now, we're producing only about twenty-eight percent of our energy from renewables and we should be at a hundred percent by the year twenty twenty-seven if we don't want to leave our planet in ashes to the next generations. Do you really believe that a deadline of twenty forty-five is going to cut it? This is the fight for our life and it needs to be taken seriously. Please, no more political theater. Any climate action that does not include the input of the community most affected by it is more of the same, just a bunch of politicians completely out of touch with the people in the communities they claim to serve. Like I said before, we currently have four hundred and seventeen parts per million of carbon dioxide floating in the atmosphere. For eight hundred thousand years, the maximum it has ever reached was three hundred parts per million, which was recorded for the last time in nineteen fifty. From then to today, the CO2 content of our atmosphere increased by over one hundred parts per million. At this rate, we will be way above the threshold that the atmosphere can hold for a livable earth by the year twenty forty-five. At six hundred parts per million, we can expect on earth that it's four degrees hotter, but it just so happens that at two degrees, most of the plants, animal and insect species will perish. And life on earth, life on earth for humans will be impossible at two degrees. Do you still think the year twenty forty-five is a reasonable time for the deadline? Thank you.
Hi, my name is Tina White and I live in three-seven-zero-six with Idlewild Avenue. This is the Pine Tree Apartments and I'm calling because I'd like to put a comment for the October fifteenth nine AM council meeting. So city council members, with all due respect, I am deeply concerned with how none of you have heard the calls of the hundreds of Tampa residents who are demanding a reallocation of the budget into community needs. Although I'm losing faith, you know, I am hopeful that you do right today. You should reject the Edward Burns grant this year and every year forward. You told us that you could not reallocate funds to the community because you were worried about salaries and pensions. With that said though, there's no excuse for accepting grants to further militarize an already violent police force. The use of force against the community, the people and especially black residents of Tampa and the houseless have increased twenty-four percent since Chief Dugan stepped in. And so I think that because of that, we really should not reward TPD with more weapons. I'm calling our, the people have called for a crisis response team that is autonomous and independent from the police to respond to non-criminal crisis situations similar to Kahoots in Eugene, Oregon. I've heard many of you support a co-response situation with TPD and simply put, since TPD has lost the trust of the people, lost the trust of the people, it makes no sense to create a program that is part of or works that closely with TPD. So Kahoots in Eugene is able to respond to ninety-eight percent of their situations without relying on the violence that police bring. And I think that Tampa deserves this. We do not need any more violence. Finally, I am concerned that you're not making your best effort to honor the anti-bias charter amendment we the people have drafted and voted for. We clearly demanded a comprehensive program and your ordinance only offers four hours for regular employees and eleven hours of training for TPD. How can you genuinely fit comprehensive anti-discrimination implicit bias and anti-discrimination training for race, religion, gender and gender identity, religion, orientation, disability, age and many other identities within the, these topics are too important to truncate and you can figure out scheduling by being strategic and breaking the classes up throughout the year is your duty. I'm glad you heard our concerns about hiring an outside organization to conduct this.
Chair, that concludes the recorded messages and we can move back to the live comment speakers. I do have Mr. Grant Loveren that logged on.
All right, go ahead.
Mr. Loveren, if you can hear me, please unmute yourself. Mr. Grant Loveren. All right, Chair, we're going to move on and I'm going to have Mary Estrada on the line.
Okay, and we'll start the clock.
Mary, you have three minutes to speak.
Okay. Can everybody hear me? Just making sure.
Yes, yes, we can. Go ahead.
Great. Thank you for being patient with my technical sound issues and thank you for allowing me to speak this morning. My name is Mary Elizabeth Estrada and I work with the Cleo Institute and I'm also a master's student at the University of South Florida for Global Sustainability. The climate crisis is here and now. We've seen how COVID-19 impacted families, small businesses, the tourism industry and even local agriculture. It should be no surprise that an increase in extreme weather events could be devastating for the city of Tampa on a social and economic level. Black and brown communities, people with disabilities, the elderly and other at-risk individuals are the most vulnerable to these events. I wanted to thank Whit Remer, our Sustainability Coordinator, for discussing issues such as environmental racism, making plans to retrofit buildings to be more energy efficient and developing a climate action plan. These issues are valuable to our community to improve social and economic prosperity. The proposal that Mr. Remer has delivered today incorporates key aspects The proposal that Mr. Reamer has delivered today incorporates key aspects, but will need revisions based on public demand, scientific data, and needs assessments for marginalized communities. I suggest that we begin to prioritize community engagement by working hand-in-hand with frontline resident-led organizations and serving underprivileged communities that will be the most impacted by power outages, storm surges, hurricanes, et cetera. It is vital that more diverse voices have a seat at the table in order to ensure inclusivity and an equitable future is achieved for all of us. We want to continue to be a part of community input through the Sustainable Roadmap Meeting. But a suggestion that we have is to consider inviting organizations or groups to tables such as Tampa Bay Activist Network, Urban Progress Alliance, Tampa Bay Disaster Resilience Initiative, and the Florida Indigenous Rights and Environmental Equality Group. This would really bring a sense of pride in having an involvement and collaborative approach in forming local sustainability policy. I look forward to building a better, more greener Tampa with all of you. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Chair, that concludes the public comment portion of the agenda.
All right, thank you very much. It is now ten-thirty. We will move forward with the agenda here.
Mr. Chair.
Chair.
Councilman Carlson, yes, sir.
If I could just for a minute, for anybody who's watching for the first time or anybody who's watching, who wants to get involved in the process, just to let everybody know, sometimes the administration comes up with ideas, sometimes city council members come up with ideas, and sometimes the public comes up with ideas. And I think that my colleagues do the same thing I do when the public comes up with an idea, is that we try to engage the public and engage the administration and have a dialogue. Because the public many times has ideas and specific research that they've done to on policy issues that can lead to change. An example is Christian Leon, Kelly Benjamin, and others who came to us about a plastic span. And they helped us immensely by doing the research. And we put them in touch with the legal department in the city. And as a result, we passed a rule about that a couple of weeks ago. Connie Burton and many others, for starting when I started anyway, a year and a half ago, asked us to focus on affordable housing. And we listened to them, we again engaged the administration, administration created a plan on housing. And then a week or two ago, we, sitting as the CRA board, approved what I think is a landmark resolution regarding affordable housing. The county made a big deal about allocating ten million dollars a year to affordable housing. If the CACs stick to the goal that we set of thirty percent of funding for CRAs for affordable housing, it could be ten to fifteen and eventually maybe twenty million dollars a year for affordable housing. And it's a big landmark issue. Members, you know, three of us were on the Charter Review Commission, and we listened to restorative justice and other groups who asked us to put more protections in the charter. And we also listened to them by putting in implicit bias training. Several representatives, including Angel DeAngelo, who spoke earlier, came to me and made my colleagues and said they weren't happy with the direction that was going. And that started a dialogue. I put Angel and others in touch directly with the city staff and legal staff, and they've been communicating. And I don't think we're going to end up with a solution that's perfect for anybody, but it's going to be a lot better than if Angel and his colleagues had not gotten involved before. Also, Tampa for Justice and the ACLU and others approached us about the Citizen Review Board, and we put them directly in touch with the administration and legal department, and they're collaborating with us on that. And my point is that, and also other environmental groups have been working on this proposal with Whit Reamer, which is, if you, if, what I would ask the public, if you look at something that's a proposal, it doesn't mean it's going to be the final solution. We can continue to evolve things, and if something isn't perfect, we can come back and look at it. But my overall point is that I think this is a collaborative city council and administration that are looking to work with the public. And if you have specific ideas, my email address is bill dot Carlson at Tampa gov dot net. Bill dot Carlson at Tampa dot gov dot net. Please email me. Happy to set up a Zoom meeting or phone call. I'm happy to listen to your ideas. The idea about mental health, we're going to be discussing later today. And that, on that issue in particular, people have referred us to Koots Program, but there are people that are experts on this issue that have data and would love to have people participate and work on that more. Finally, there was a lot of mention about this grant that the police got this morning. And I was sent even websites about it. And as I looked in the websites, the websites, as I can read it, specifically prohibit some of the things that folks were asking us not to spend money on. It specifically prohibits drones. It specifically prohibits spending money on armored vehicles and other things. This is not an issue that I put on the agenda, but I want to make sure we have the best information and that we're all collaborating and sharing information so that we can move forward. And maybe Mr. Bennett or somebody from police could answer more of the questions about that particular grant. But please, if anybody in the public wants to collaborate with us, if you're interested in civil rights, social justice issues, this city council has been working very hard on it, and several of us did as part of the Charter Review Commission. We want to work with you, we want to collaborate. Please reach out and contact us. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much.
Chair.
Councilman Goode.
Before you start your concern agenda, again, items two and three, they've been a lot of concerns. So I would like to just ask a couple of questions in reference to that. Or if you want that now or pull that to later when the police department will be on the line. I just got to...
Go ahead now. I mean, it's early on in the agenda here, if you want to...
Mr. Carlson, he's looked at the website. I have too, but I was wondering, and Chief Bennett is on the line.
Yes, sir, John Bennett here.
I know you've had experience with this area of expertise with this grant before being the number-two man in charge for a long while. This grant, if this council accepts this grant, I'm wondering, can we put stipulation to make sure that some things that the community is asking is not done, and the grant is strictly only used for the allocation for overtime or maybe for its community service for the holiday season, which you're saying the grant is stipulated for?
I would suggest, Councilman, that by the nature of receiving the grant, that the framework for its use has been identified as such. I do have Mr. O'Hara here who oversees the grant process, and we would only get the award based on the way it's going to be used. And historically, it has only been used for that overtime as related to the community or policing that Councilman Dingfelter mentioned before. And while the discussion and public comments were coming in in real time, I did talk to TPD offline, and they reconfirmed that this is the only purpose for that grant, which is my historical understanding of its use.
And that grant proposal that we're submitting will be online and viewed by the public so they can know that this is what we're applying for and is not used for any militized equipment, any drones and so forth and so on, and is strictly used for what the pretended purpose of the grant is, correct?
That is correct, Councilman. The agenda package is obviously online for public view, and it explicitly does not identify any of those items that you're concerned about. So if the public would go to the agenda item through the clerk's office, they can see the entire package, and it would not have any of those issues of concern.
I just want to make that clear to the public. I wouldn't want to lose any money, especially the holiday season, that we have to have extra patrol in certain areas, especially the malls and things like that for the community. So I just want to make sure we clear for the public that it is not used for that intent. And I can support that with the uses that it's forementioned. Thank you, sir.
Okay, anybody else? All right, hearing that, we will go to the Public Safety Committee, which is Councilmember Citro. We have items one through eight, and then those are items two and three, which have been discussed. And we've received clarity and clarification on... Councilman Citro, do you wish to move those items one through eight?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, I move to move items one through eight.
Mr. Chair. Second, Vera. Second from Councilman Dingfelter.
A question on the motion. In regard to item four, which is a resolution approving reimbursement agreements between Tampa and twenty-eight applicants for TPD, our recruiting program, but I just wanted to compliment the TPD and the department. I asked what the demographic breakdown was for the, those twenty-eight applicants who were getting scholarships. And I was told that it's sixty-one percent female, eighteen percent African-American, and eighteen percent Hispanic. So anyway, we talked to the chief at length the other day about diversity and working harder to have a more diverse force. So I think this is a good step in the right direction. We have a long way to go, but it's a good step in the right direction.
Again, Mr. Chair, I restate my motion to move items one through eight.
All right, we have a motion from Councilman Citro. Second from Councilman Vera, roll call vote.
Dingfelter.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Maniscalco.
Yes.
Vera.
Yes.
Goode.
Yes.
Citro.
Yes.
Miranda.
Yes.
Motion carry unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. Next up is Councilmember Goode, which is items nine through eleven, sir.
Chair, I'd move items nine through eleven, sir.
Okay.
Right, we have a motion from Councilman Goode, second from Councilman Miranda, roll call vote.
Vera.
Yes.
Goode.
Yes.
Dingfelter.
Yes.
Maniscalco.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Miranda.
Yes.
Citro.
Yes.
Motion carry unanimously.
All right, thank you very much. Next up, we have Public Works Committee. Remember that item number fourteen has been moved to staff report. So if Councilman Dingfelter would move items twelve and thirteen, and then fifteen through eighteen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, I'll move those items twelve, thirteen, fifteen, through eighteen.
Okay.
We have a second motion from Councilman Dingfelter, second from Councilman Miranda, roll call vote.
Carlson.
Yes.
Citro.
Yes.
Miranda.
Yes.
Vera.
Yes.
Goode.
Yes.
Dingfelter.
Yes.
Maniscalco.
Yes.
Motion carry unanimously.
All right, if you remember with the addendum, we had item number twenty-three that was pulled. But I believe per Councilman Vera, the question was answered, so we can put that on the consent and vote on it now. However, item twenty-one was pulled by Councilman Dingfelter and put under staff report. So it would be items, Councilman ran items nineteen and twenty, then twenty-two and twenty-three.
Thank you, sir. I would have never got them correctly. Items nineteen, twenty, and twenty-two are the items that I moved, and twenty-three.
Second.
We have a motion from Council, and a second from Councilman Citro, roll call vote.
Chair, I just want to make clear that it's a substitute on item number twenty-three, so that needs to be moved.
Correct, substitute item twenty-three, which is, it was explained by Mr. Vera early before we got to this point.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Roll call vote.
Carlson.
Yes.
Vera.
Yes.
Goode.
Yes.
Miranda.
Yes.
Citro.
Yes.
Maniscalco.
Yes.
Dingfelter.
Yes.
Motion carry unanimously.
All right, next up, we have items twenty-four through forty, and that is Councilmember Carlson.
Yes, sir, I'd like to move items twenty-four through forty, please.
Okay.
First from Councilman Carlson, do we have a second? It was Councilman Citro or...
Vera.
Vera, okay, roll call vote.
Or whoever.
Goode.
Yes.
Dingfelter.
Yes.
Maniscalco.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Citro.
Yes.
Miranda.
Yes.
Vera.
Yes.
Motion carry unanimously.
All right, Councilman Vera with item number forty-one.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair, I move item forty-one.
Okay.
We have a motion from Councilman Vera with a second from Councilman Miranda, roll call vote, please.
Vera.
Yes.
Goode.
Yes.
Dingfelter.
Yes.
Maniscalco.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Citro.
Yes.
Miranda.
Yes.
Motion carry unanimously.
All right, thank you very much. Next up, we have items being set for public hearings. On item number forty-two, Mr. Dave Mechanics spoke during public comment. And if we could schedule that as soon as legally possible for his request, do we have a motion from any council members for the review hearing to be scheduled to a date determined?
Mr. Chairman Martin Shelby.
Yes, sir.
With regard to Mr. Mechanics' request, the original date that it looked like it would fit into the calendar would be January twenty-first at six P.M. Now, a reminder that because this is a review hearing, it requires thirty days notice and posting. So that means obviously November is out. The date in December that is available, if council wishes to, I just wanted to give you a background, would be December tenth at six P.M. Now presently, from what I understand, is you have ten land rezonings and two review hearings presently scheduled, decisions of the zoning administrator. So if council's pleasure is to add it to December tenth at six P.M., that is doable. The next date after that would be January twenty-first at six P.M.
Is there any discussion or questions or concerns from council members regarding December tenth?
If I may, Mr. Chair, this is Vera, I'll move for December tenth, if no one has any, for the earlier date.
Is there any objection by council members? No? Okay, so we have a question from, yeah, the chair.
With all due respect, I know we said that we were going to limit because of the time constraints at night. I think we made a concession again at our last Thursday night session. We made a concession again. Again, I want to caution council, we did make a commitment to the citizens. We would try and get the people out. We would try not to burn these things to late night. Again, I just want to make sure we understand, we did make a commitment. And I know we want to help everybody out, but at some point, we're going to have to say no. I'll go along with today, but eventually in the future, I will say no. I will be voting on these issues.
Thank you very much. We have a motion from Councilman Vera. Do we have a second?
Okay.
Second from Councilman Miranda, this is for December tenth at six P.M. Is there any objection? Hearing no objection, and by unanimous consent, the petition review is scheduled for December tenth at six P.M. Thank you very much. All right, next up is item number forty-three.
Mr. Chairman Martin Shelby again. The date would be January twenty-first at six P.M.
Okay. All right, do we have a motion for January twenty-first?
Twenty-twenty-one.
Yes.
All right, we have a motion from Councilman Miranda. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilman Goode, any objection?
And again, that's six P.M., council, thank you.
Six P.M.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. All right, hearing no objection, and therefore by unanimous consent, the public hearing is set for that date at six P.M. Thank you very much. Moving along to item forty-four. We have a memo from City Attorney Jim McLean from the legal department.
Yes, good morning, Mr. Chair and city council members. This is Chief McLean, Office of the City Attorney. Item number forty-four is a resolution setting of the public hearings for potential ground field designation. May I remind you that there is an announcement that must be read during the meeting today, which is contained on the agenda item.
Okay. All right, do we have any questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman, if you wish, I'll move the resolution.
We have to, here that needs to be read. Is that correct, Mr. McLean?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Councilman Dingfelter, if you want to go ahead and read that.
Sure. Okay, in regard to file number B of twenty-dash-zero-two, I need the following announcement at this public hearing, or public meeting. A public hearing will be held regarding a proposed ground field area designation for rehabilitation and redevelopment of eighteen parcels, approximately thirty-six-point-six acres in size, located at nineteen... located at nineteen oh one North Sixty-Sixth Street, Tampa, Florida, three three six one nine. The public hearing will be held in the Enviro Focus Technology LLC training room, located at sixty-five oh five Dual Avenue, Tampa, Florida, three three six one nine, November fourth, one twenty, at five thirty P M, until not later than six thirty P M. As a precaution during the nineteen nineteen pandemic, masks will be required for entry into the building, and the meeting room will be set up to allow less than fifty percent of the room's maximum capacity. Present to ensure social distancing is maintained, hand sanitizer will also be available for all participants. And with that, I'll move the resolution.
We have a motion from Councilman Ding Felder, second from Councilman Miranda. Is there any objection in moving this resolution?
Mr. Chairman, can we have a roll call on that, please?
Okay, let's have a roll call vote.
Miranda?
Yes.
Citro?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Maniscalco?
Yeah.
Ding Felder?
Yes.
Goos?
Yes.
Viera?
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously.
All right, thank you very much. We move on to item number forty-five. I think it's the same. We have Jan McLean on the line as well.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair. This is another brownfield designation resolution, setting the public hearings, and in the same manner, we would need the announcement to be read out, please.
And if you, and if you are, Mr. Chairman, just for those who are on the line, if you can mute your microphones so that the announcement is clear and unambiguous. So I appreciate if you're not going to speak, to mute your mics. Thanks.
All right, Councilman Ding Felder, do you wish to read the following announcement for the public meeting on item forty-five?
Sure, Mr. Chairman. Okay, in regard to item forty-five, BF twenty dash zero three, I read the following announcement of a public meeting. A public hearing will be held regarding a proposed brownfield area designation for the rehabilitation redevelopment of one parcel, approximately two point zero acres in size, located at twelve thirty-seven East Wick Street, Tampa, Florida, three three six oh two. This public hearing will be held at Channel Pub Apartments on the ground floor of the parking deck, located at one 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 five East Wick Street, Tampa, Florida, three three six oh two, on November third, twenty twenty, at five thirty P M, until not later than six thirty P M. As a precaution during the COVID nineteen pandemic, masks will be required for entry to the hearing, and the seating will be set up in a manner to ensure social distancing is maintained, and sanitizer will also be available for all participants, and I'll move the resolution number forty-five.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilman Ding Felder, and moving that resolution. He has also read that announcement. We have a second from Councilman Miranda. Roll call vote, please, for item forty-five.
Maniscalco?
Yeah.
Carlson?
Yes.
Citro?
Yes.
Miranda?
Yes.
Viera?
Yes.
Goos?
Yes.
Ding Felder?
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously.
All right, thank you very much. We go on to item forty-six, which is again the same. Jan McLean, please.
Yes, Jan McLean, Office of the City Attorney. Thank you, Mr. Chair. This will be the final resolution for a potential brownfield designation, also setting the public hearing, and again, in the same manner, to have the following announcement for public meeting read aloud.
All righty. Any questions or comments? All right, who would like to read the announcement for the public meeting on item number forty-six?
Mr. Chair, Citro here. I will be more than happy to do it. File number, file number BF twenty zero four, a public hearing will be held regarding a proposed brownfield area designation for the rehabilitation and redevelopment of five parcels, approximately ten point three seven acres in size, located at one 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 zero North Thirty-Fifth Street, Tampa, Florida, three three six oh five. This public hearing will be held in the Montega Room at the Hilton Garden Inn Tampa Ebor Historic District Hotel, located at seventeen hundred East Ninth Avenue, Tampa, Florida, three three six oh five, on November ninth, twenty twenty, at five thirty P M, until no later than six thirty P M. As a precaution during the COVID nineteen pandemic, masks will be required for entry into the building, and the meeting room will be set up to allow less than fifty percent of the room's maximum capacity to be presented to ensure social distancing is maintained. Hand sanitizer will also be available for all participants, and I will move the resolution, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
We have a motion from Councilman Citro, and we have a second from Councilman Miranda. Roll call vote, please.
Carlson?
Yes.
Maniscalco?
Yeah.
Ding Felder?
Yes.
Goos?
Yes.
Viera?
Yes.
Miranda?
Yes.
Citro?
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you very much. Just a moment. We need to go back quickly to item number forty-three. And if we can have a motion, this is a correction, a motion to schedule this public hearing, or this petition for review, I'm sorry, to January twenty-eighth in the evening, and I believe it's at six P M.
That's correct, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
We got to open that hearing, Mr. Chairman. Reopen the hearing number forty-three. Second.
All right, we have a motion from Councilman Miranda, second from Councilman Citro. Do we have any objection? This is for January twenty-eighth in the evening.
Yes, it's a motion to amend at six P M.
All right, motion to amend for six P M. Is there any questions or comments? Hearing none by unanimous, yes, sir.
Go on, I'm sorry, go on.
By unanimous consent, without any objection, we move that item for January twenty-eighth. All right. Next up, we have item number forty-seven. We have a substitute resolution. We have Jan McLean here for this one. Anything, ma'am?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. This is a continued public hearing, so I would like to have the record reflect that this, the public hearing remains open. This is for the adoption of the substitute resolution, which will adopt the role for the downtown historic Ebor Tampa Tourism Marketing District Assessment to place on the record that since the continuation of the public hearing, three properties requested to be removed from the role. This is a voluntary special assessment, so that upon their request, that that was done so. And what you have in front of you today is to approve the annual resolution, adopting the role, approving the updated report regarding the methodology, and approving the interlocal agreement between the city and the tax collector for this special assessment. And we need to take the vote while the public hearing is open.
And Mr. Chairman Martin Shelby, if I can just follow up on that and confirm with Ms. McLean, this is a second substitute resolution, so it's actually a substitute of a substitute that's being requested to be moved. Is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
And do we get a motion to open the public hearing? If not, just for the record, can I get a motion to open the?
Second. Public hearing. Second.
All right, we have a motion from Councilman Miranda, second from Councilman Viera. Any objection? Hearing none, and by unanimous consent, the public hearing is open. Who wishes to move this substitute resolution? Councilmember Carlson?
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry to interrupt. I'm sorry to interrupt, Mr. Chairman. I'm just asking for the opportunity for the public to be heard, if there is anybody who wishes to speak to it.
All right, do we have anybody from the public at the Convention Center or on the line that wishes to speak to item number forty-seven?
There's no one at the Tampa Convention Center. However, we do have a participant, Thomas Cloud, that's logged on. If he would like to speak, he can mute himself.
All right.
I'm just happy to answer any questions you may have. Otherwise, I have nothing to say.
What's your name?
My name is Thomas Cloud. I'm an attorney with Gray Robinson.
Okay, do we have any questions or comments for the gentleman? Hearing none, all right. Thank you very much. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak on this item? All right.
No one else.
What?
There is no one else.
Okay, thank you very much. Councilman Carlson, do you wish to move the substitute resolution?
Sure, Mr. Chair. Ms. McLean, which one do I read, then? The one at the bottom, the third one, or the middle one?
Bottom.
The bottom.
Okay.
It does not have to, does it have to be read in its entirety by title only, or just move the resolution, Ms. McLean?
I think you can just move the resolution without having to read it in its entirety.
Okay, Mr. Chair, I'd like to move the substitute resolution for file number E twenty twenty dash eight C H two four dot five.
Okay.
All right, we have a motion from Councilman Carlson, second from Councilman Miranda. Roll call vote.
Viera?
Yes.
Ding Felder?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Miranda?
Yes.
Goos?
Yes.
Citro?
Yes.
Maniscalco?
Yeah.
Motion carried unanimously.
All right, we moved to item forty-eight. Just for clarification, when I made the motion to open the public hearings, that was all of them for nine thirty A M. So that includes forty-eight and forty-nine. All right, item number forty-eight. Do we have a second reading and adoption?
I guess, again, Jan McLean for the Office of the City Attorney. We were before you previously with a ordinance revision to the chapter twenty-six regarding the water and wastewater capacity fees, and we submitted a substitute resolution, which is for your consideration today, and this is for second reading. I don't believe, I don't know if we have anyone for public comment, and we have Mr. Brad Baird, the Deputy Administrator, on the line, if you have any questions.
All right, any questions for Mr. Baird, before we go to public comment? Hearing none. Do we have anybody from the public that wishes to speak, whether at the Tampa Convention Center or registered on the line?
There is no one at the Tampa Convention Center, and we did not have any registration for this item.
Okay, any other questions or comments from council? All right, hearing none. Councilmember Goode, would you mind reading item number forty, the substitute?
Motion to close, please, Mr. Chairman.
Let's get a motion to close.
It's a public hearing, you have to take. So do you have to take the vote during the public hearing? Is that correct, Mr. Shelby?
Pardon me?
It's a public hearing. You have to vote during the public hearing. Is that not right?
They can close the public hearing and then read the ordinance and then vote.
Okay.
Is there?
There are motion closed?
We'll move.
We have a motion closed from Councilman Miranda, second from Councilman Citro. Any objection to the motion to close the public hearing? Hearing none, by unanimous consent, hearing no objection, the public hearing is closed. Councilmember Goode, would you mind taking item number forty-eight?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Good for your leadership today. File number E two zero two zero dash eight C H twenty-six. Substitute ordinance being presented for second reading and adoption, an ordinance for the city of Tampa, Florida, relating to utility fees, utility rate fees, and charges, making revisions to the city Tampa Code of Ordinance, Chapter twenty-six Utilities, Article One, Administrative Provisions, Article Three, Wastewater. Amending section twenty-one dash thirty-one Utility Rate Fees and Charges, utilizing Reserve Section twenty-six dash thirty-seven to be entitled water capacity fee. Amending section twenty-six dash one seventeen Definitions, amending section twenty-six dash one twenty-three, application for sanitary sewer commitment, connection of service, execution of service application considered contract between applicant and city, including all orders or part of the ordinance in conflict, providing severability, providing effective date.
Second.
All right, we have a motion from Councilman Goode, second from Councilman Miranda. Let's get a roll call vote.
Viera?
Yes.
Yes.
Goos?
Yes.
Ding Felder?
Yes.
Maniscalco?
Yeah.
Carlson?
Yes.
Citro?
Yes.
Miranda?
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously.
All right, thank you very much. Next up is item number forty-nine.
Yes, Mr. Chair, thank you, and Jan McLean again from the Office of the City Attorney. This is item forty-nine, which is a second reading of revisions to chapter fourteen dash one ninety-seven for aboding restricted areas. This is to implement consistent speed zones throughout a portion of the Hillsborough River, long awaited, and much worked on, and duly published. And we have Carla Price with the Parks and Recreation Department, and also Captain Jason Dillahay of the TPD Marine Patrol online, if you have any questions.
Do we have any questions or comments from council members? All right, hearing none. Do we have anybody from the public that wishes to speak on item number forty-nine?
There's no one. There's no one present at the Tampa Convention Center, and I did not receive any registration for public comment.
Thank you very much. There was a motion closed from Councilman Miranda, I believe. Do we have a second? Do we have a second?
Second, Carlson.
Second from Councilman Carlson to close the public hearing. Is there any objection to the motion? Hearing none, by unanimous consent, without any objection, the public hearing is closed. Councilman Miranda, would you mind reading item number forty-nine?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item number forty-nine, file number E twenty twenty dash eight, Chapter fourteen, an ordinance being presented for second reading and adoption, an ordinance of the city of Tampa, Florida, relating to voting restrictions, making revisions to the city of Tampa Code of Ordinances, Chapter fourteen, offenses, amending section fourteen dash one ninety-seven, voting restricted areas established, repeating all ordinance or parts of ordinances in conflict within, providing for severability, providing for an effective date.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilman Miranda, second from Councilman Citro. Roll call vote.
Miranda?
Yes.
Citro?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Maniscalco?
Yeah.
Ding Felder?
Yes.
Goos?
Yes.
And Viera?
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously.
All righty, thank you very much. We now go to staff reports. We'll have the administration update with item number fifty, and then we will pick up fourteen and twenty-one that were pulled for discussion, and we'll continue on from this. Administration update, Chief John Bennett.
Good morning again, Chairman. John Bennett, Chief of Staff. Good morning, council. Good morning, public. Just one administrative update, which actually ties into item fourteen, which was pulled, and then bundled with the other items in staff reports that relate to the pipes project. And you'll see on your slide, I asked Suling this morning to grab some talking points where staff is going to bring a little more information ahead of looking at those items on the staff reports, one by one, as we know that council has to do. And I just want to kick off with that the administration, within the last sixteen months, has worked very hard on putting together five advisory, five advisory groups specifically around the strategic plan of moving the city or transforming Tampa's tomorrow. As you all know, that include workforce housing, development services, workforce development, sustainability and resiliency, and of course, mobility. And mobility has a big component of it, of infrastructure. And we know, and we were grateful that, that council last year approved the Pipes program. And we know the incredible accountability and responsibility it has to shore up the city's infrastructure, and that's why we're talking about that this morning. However, I do want to say that every Monday, the administration comes together at the senior level and talks about the agenda, and we go through very diligently the agenda items, and we talk about specifically things related to workforce development and equal business opportunities for all the different subcomponents of equal business opportunity, whether it's small local business or women and minority business metrics. And over the past several months, as we've been interacting with council and working through these agenda items and getting feedback, you know, we felt, in conjunction with listening, that the mayor wanted to introduce a stronger process. And beyond the five advisory groups that we've had, we know that we've also implemented two task force programs. One around the CRV process, that was done by Mayor Castor, and then one in support. And we, we talk about Councilman Carlson's effort to get the economic advisory group together. So all in all, there's been seven advisory or task force movements over the last sixteen months. And pretty soon here, in a second, I'm going to propose another. Could you go to the next slide there for me, Suling? So one of the first things that we realized is that this administration, So one of the first things that we realized is that this administration, working with council and the public, and I know a lot of you have a competitive spirit, and I'll, I'll single out Councilman Gooz because I know both of us have had strong backgrounds in coaching youth and, and developing things for the community. And, and I can tell you that we are not, as an administration or a city, going to rationalize performance. We're, it's not an option for us, and we're going to work hard to make sure that we're getting the best outcomes. And I think this administration has been developed, designed and organized around that, and we're looking forward to improving everything we possibly can. As it relates to the second bullet, I was appreciative of what Council Carlson said earlier about listening to the public and getting ideas, whether they come from council or staff or the community or even another subject matter expert. But I can tell you that I have always tried to make a habit of listening to the public, our personnel as experts and subject matter participants and practitioners, our partners, whether public or private, and of course, our policymakers as we move along in this journey together. So it is time, once again, to challenge the status quo while supporting all of these stakeholders I just mentioned. But the other thing that's challenging for us is that we have to fix things while we're moving. We have to avoid unreasonable paralysis with some of the things like our critical infrastructure, and we have to continue to tie all of our strategic movements into transforming Tampa's tomorrow with a sense of community urgency. And so that puts us in a very interesting spot, and you've also heard us talk about our performance management and how we have devoted a specific executive sponsorship to efficiency, effectiveness, and most importantly, equity. Next slide, please. So in bringing this information in front of Mayor Castor this week, we understood that our current spot, as shown on this slide, is understanding our current framework as it relates to equal business opportunities and our path forward. There, we have to move and challenge and seek best practices. I've had a lot of calls from the outside saying that they understand where we are as a city. They understand that staff is working hard and complying with the current framework, but they also say that we can challenge, and there are some other models out there that we can look at in the different areas of equal business opportunity. And that leads us to where we really need to land in a short order, is redesign the program for success that we can all agree on with all of our stakeholders. Next slide, please. So that said, I would encourage the public and council to look at kind of where we are, and I'll identify this with good. And the only reason I'm using the term good is because the, the administration is adopting a current framework, and Mayor Castor launched her, not only her campaign, but her administration by starting out and, and trying to get more businesses, more equal business opportunity in the pipeline by supporting four bridges to business events, which brought over two hundred potential businesses to be certified under the equal business opportunity umbrella. And not only that, she actually diverted some of, some other staff time to go out and follow up with those individual businesses to make sure that they could cross the goal line and get certified. She also added, again, with council's approval of the pipes plan, she increased the scoring for equal business opportunity by three hundred percent of where it originally was several administrations ago, and that was to show the intense focus on getting equal business opportunity into a major plan. I have worked with Mr. Hart and TNI and the GIS group to map all of our small local business enterprise and women and minority businesses so we could have geospatial context of everybody in our five county area. We still have more work to do there. There is a line item in the budget for a new disparity study, and we offer, and Mr. Hart will talk about this in a minute, incentives, discounts and sheltering to encourage minority business and small local business opportunities. But that's kind of where we are. Now I want to talk for a second about where we want to go. We need to examine our ordinance with courage, and some of the feedback that I've gotten from the community and individual council members seem to be understanding of where we are in the current framework, but not where we need to go, and Mayor Castor encouraged us this past week to start looking at this comprehensively, and I'll get into that in one second. We need to assess all of our procurement and contracting opportunities against best practices. That's the beauty of government. There's a great opportunity, and I learned this in my thirty-five years of public service, that it's a great network of support across the other government sectors. Somebody is doing this very well, and we need to look at those opportunities and improve all participation levels in our equal business opportunity status. We need to get input on our disparity study. This is a, is a complex issue. I have read the disparity study from oh-one to oh-four. I've looked at the audits, I've looked at the ordinance, I know staff has as well, and we need to use that as a baseline for improvement to go forward with the next disparity study that Mayor Castor and council have approved in the budget. And then lastly, just for the last talking point, we need to examine our resources for support. I want to applaud Councilman Dingfelder, who last meeting talked about looking at our staff levels and the complexity of getting the right levels of service in our equal business opportunity space, and suggesting that we may be able to look to seek outside guidance and consultation to do so. But again, we need to support our staff in all these different domains. We need to reconsult with our equal business opportunity advisory council. I know Mayor Castor met with them prior to COVID, but we need to make sure that, that, that relationship is strong and bold for where we want to go. We need to work with our local private and public partners. We hear a lot of good feedback from areas like TIAA and Moffitt and USF and hospitals. And, and while they may be in the NGO or non-government organizational space, or maybe not even the government space, I'm sure there's some tips and tricks that we can benefit from in the city. So where I'm going with this, before I hand it off to staff for the technical conversation, is that we've listened and we're ready to act, and we are going to create a task force around this. We are going to distill all the different function areas, whether it's legal, whether it's partner best practices, whether it is other data collection points that can show our comparative analysis against Tampa to other strong jurisdictions. And we're going to bring back in a very short order a plan to go forward and improve this, not just for the pipes program, but for procurement and construction projects across the board. So with that, what I'm going to do is hand it off to staff. They're going to be brief on purpose, and then we will get to the meat of the, the five items that are on the agenda. And then I know they're also going to follow this item that we're talking about now. So first, Ms. Duncan's going to speak about the urgency.
Mr. Chair. Councilman Gooz.
Uh, let me just say a brief word to Chief of Staff Bennett. I appreciate the efforts you're doing in listening to communities. I've had several calls. The people say that you are a listener. You don't shut things down. You're, you're very open to suggestions and ideas, and I appreciate that. The work that you put so far, and you've demonstrated today with this brief presentation shows that, uh, that someone's listening. So I just want to say we appreciate the work that you're doing, and again, we, we're, this council, we just want to move things better for the community, which I know you do, and the mayor. We can't blame the new administration on things of the past. We have to move forward, and I, I like the EBO, EBO path forward. I think that's a good way to really show the community, this council and everybody, that we are seeing this growing and want to have the best practices and have the best programs around. So again, I thank you for the brief presentation, sir.
Thank you very much. All right.
Thank you, Councilman. Thank you. Gene.
Good morning, council. Thank you for the time this morning. We will be, be brief. I just wanted to give a quick refresher on our pipes program because we do have a number of items before you for consideration. And as you know, last year, the city council approved the utility fee increases that would become the backbone of this pipes program. And just again, that pipes acronym stands for progressive infrastructure planning to ensure sustainability, and I know that's all of our goal, to have a sustainable city. This is a three billion dollar comprehensive, comprehensive infrastructure plan that will transform our aging infrastructure throughout the entire city. And it's the first program of the scale that the city has ever had. So just to demonstrate the sense of urgency with this program, over the last two years, we've had nearly thirty-five hundred pipe breaks throughout the city of Tampa that have caused breakages, that caused two hundred twenty million dollars of unplanned repairs. Obviously, that translates into a lot of congestion issues when those things happen, and we don't want to be in a reactive state like that. So the pipes program really will take us to the next level of being proactive versus reactive, which is much more cost efficient and will guarantee reliable water and wastewater services to all of our residents and our visitors. We will be replacing five hundred miles of pipe infrastructure throughout the entire city of Tampa over the next few years. And I just want to take a quick moment to point out a couple of the large scale projects within this program. For example, council approved the design build contract for the three hundred million dollar David L. Tippin Water Treatment Facility, which is a critical project to replace and upgrade our only water treatment plant. Obviously, if we don't, we don't replace this failing infrastructure, we will run out of water. We're not going to let that happen. But delaying these repairs jeopardizes our ability to provide this essential service. And in the coming months, we will continue to bring to council task orders with GMPs, which are guaranteed maximum prices for the various projects associated with this work, all of which will be vetted through our EBO office, our legal team and our revenue and finance team. So this stage of the project is really what we see the highest opportunity to engage a variety of our minority contractors and subcontractors with work opportunity. Quickly, another major project we're underway with is the high service pumping station improvement. Twenty-three million dollars at the David L. Tippin Plant. We continue to work with our design build team on these projects. We had our first GMP approval this past summer by council. For some of that work, we will have another GMP that we will bring before you before the end of this year. We're replacing all of that critical infrastructure throughout the city, it's recent end of its useful life, and it's time to get the improvements in place. And we want to ensure that we have these systems to continue meeting our water demands and obviously supporting electrical efficiencies, restore recovery footprint and all those sustainable goals that we all have for our city. Lastly, we have multiple projects to install or replace meters, hydrants and valves totaling a brief thirty million dollars. These are essential to keeping our water system functional and providing timely services to support economic development throughout the city. Several of these items will be before you that Brad Baird will explain very shortly. And you know, the city of Tampa is really in an enviable position to have the opportunity to inject jobs and millions of dollars to our local economy through the execution of these projects. So we appreciate your support with our mission of improving this infrastructure throughout the whole entire city. So with that, I'll let Osea Win, our Administrator of Neighborhood and Community Affairs, share a high level framework of our EVO program and some other details.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I just had a question. The, um, we, we, we can paint a rosy picture, and, and I appreciate all that, Gene, but we've got some significant problems that Mr. Bennett identified. And the council has identified, and I'm really proud of council for pulling these items, items where zero percent VBE or two percent VBE. We can't pat ourselves on the back on these types of items. And then, and then we all get calls yesterday and the day before, you know, with explanations, says to each one of those, and why, you know, why this didn't work and why this one can't work, and we're going to the best. And I don't agree with any of them. But my, my point is this, Gene, and I'm going to go to item fifty-five for a second. Item fifty-five is a contract with Westra Construction, and I'm sure they're good people and, and a good company. Well, that's not, unlike the other one, which was the JBS and Southern Underground, which was a straight bid. I do know the difference because I used to be a purchasing agent. The JBS and Southern Underground were straight bids. I know with the straight bid, our hands are a lot more tied. But on the Westra Construction, that was, that was negotiated through the CCNA negotiation process, okay? For eight million dollars. And at the end of that process, and John Bennett, I'm sure that the twenty points were probably applied. I would assume that that twenty point process might have been applied, but at the end of that process, and I know this is a design, Brad told me this is the design part of it, we're going to do better on the build part of it. But even in the design part, Westra said that we're going to do thirty-four percent WIMBIE. And out of that thirty-four, and that's wonderful, but out of thirty-four percent WIMBIE, thirty-one percent is women owned business. Three and a half percent is Hispanic owned business, leaving zero percent for black owned business. Eight million dollars, a CCNA negotiated contract to design this, and Westra and the city of Tampa cannot find any black engineers or consultants or whoever's involved in this type of design to help us participate. That I can't accept. And, and, and John, I know you, your message is that we need to be patient, and, and, and I think that I've been saying this for the last year. I think I've been patient for the last year, but I, I, that's just one, as I'm perusing these four or five items, and Gene, most of them are under your purview, and that's why I stopped in the middle of this presentation, that, you know, I just, I, I don't get it. If we're in a room and we're negotiating with a, a big vendor like Westra, you know, why we can't say to them, hey, you've done a great job with women, and you've done an okay job with Hispanic, three point five percent. Why the heck are we at zero percent on VBA for item fifty-five? So Gene, that's a new point.
Mr. Chair, could I say something to you? No, I, I, I want to say, I, I don't know who else is going to speak, but I know Gene is a very good person and beloved by the community and Chief of Staff the same. And, and I know that they're representing, you know, our interests and the, and the mayor's interests and community's interest well. As somebody else alluded to, we inherited bad decisions or lack of attention from the last administration. And we heard in earful about it this morning. We've been hearing about it every single city council meeting, and we're working really hard on all fronts, trying to change all these issues. This is not just an equity issue, it's an economic development issue. As, as I've said before, you look at tappascorecard.com. Tampa failed economically in the last ten years during the biggest boom in the economy in U.S. history, and that's despicable. How could somebody be at the, at the helm during a boom like that and, and fail miserably? And so I, I think we have to look at everything differently. We have to reinvent, turn everything upside down and figure out what we can do to fix this. We know that poverty and equity are two issues that are holding us back, and it's not a political issue, it's an economic issue because the big companies and the best and brightest people won't move here if they see that we don't pay attention to equity and we don't pay attention to the poverty numbers. This, this issue, the community, I, I don't represent East Tampa. I, there is African American community in, in South Tampa, and I hear from them. But, you know, I'm getting calls from West Tampa, East Tampa, North Tampa, like I guess you all are, and people are demanding change on all fronts. We heard in earful, as I said this morning. But on this, on this business issue, what they're saying is that, don't look at, don't look at us as people that need subsidies. Look at us as, as people who have businesses who want an equal opportunity to get business, and if there's some obstacle in our way, help us to get past that obstacle. And so I, I think whatever we've done in the past, we shouldn't just build on it incrementally. We should break it all, and we should think completely differently about this. And I like what Mr. Chief Bennett said about looking at the best in the country or the best in the world, and let's figure out how we can fix this one, once and for all. Like one of the speakers said this morning, Tampa should be the kind, the city that every other city copies. And I think with this administration and this city council, we're going to get there. We just have to be open to breaking apart everything that was done before or not done before and making sure we do this right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Please continue.
Thank you, Chairman, and, and thank you, Councilman Gooz, Councilman Dingfelder and Councilman Carlson. One point to Councilman Dingfelder before I turn it over to us here. We don't want to be patient on this anymore. We appreciate the patience so far. We understood that we were working within a framework that requires everything Mr. Carlson just said, where we needed to deconstruct the entire process. But we have to do it in part while we're still moving the city forward in some of the infrastructure, and we will just look to work with council to find the balance till we get there over the next couple of months. But we have run out of patience as well, which is the wire. The mayor challenged us to start this task force immediately. So with that, I will hand it over to Osea Win.
Good morning, Council.
What's Chairman?
Councilman Gudes. Councilman Gudes.
Chief, I, I, I appreciate, and I know everyone is running out of patience. You're right. But the community's running out of patience too. My thing is, I always say, "Don't say what we can do, what we can do." If we've got the commitment, well, for me, I can't speak for the other council members and their vote today or what have you, but for me, my word is my bond, my commitment is my bond. And I've talked to some of the stakeholders about this, because they called me and asked me so many questions, and I didn't give them anything. I was up late last night, I even talked to, to Osea Nguyen last night about the situation. And where I'm at is, I don't have a problem if we're moving forward to make a change. I know some of these projects in the whole, we can't blame some of the people who bid it for the contracts and we give it to them. So we can't, I can't blame them, and I can't blame them for not getting all the information in the contracts to say, "Well, a, a, a good faith effort." Well, they, they're going by what we, what we, the standard we've set. So I can't totally blame them. You can't blame the past administrations or previous administrations, I can't. All I can do is look at now. So my thing is just making sure we've got a strong commitment to making sure that we're going to move, change some of these erroneous words that are in our, our EBO frame, and making sure that we're going to come back with a good plan. I don't much know who is on the EBO A committee, A committee. I think council's supposed to appoint people, so I don't think we even know who's on that committee. So I, I would like to get a, a, a list of who's on that committee and what councilman they're representing and so forth, but I, my thing is making sure that at the end of your presentations today, for the, for these projects, that we've got a commitment that we're going to actually move forward and change the process. That's all I'm asking for today. I give that to you.
Thank you, uh, thank you, Councilman Gudes for that, and, and what I would hope is in the past 16 months of the administration and, and the 12 months that I've been working with council, that we have proven that when we make these kind of commitments, that we have actually delivered. And the feedback that I have from council is that we have moved the needle on the things that we've worked hard on together, and this is just the next one up. So with that, I'll give it to Osea.
Good morning, Councilor Osea Nguyen. And in making this brief and talking about working under the current framework, I just wanted to give you a journey of where we are and how we got here. In the early 90s, as a result of the affirmative action, there was legislation written for the discrimination against the WBM, the WBE, I'm sorry, between availability and utilization in contracting services. What the city did was to implement a race and gender-conscious policy or policies to remedy that past discrimination through its procurement practices as well as the procurement opportunities. Now, that legislation was scheduled to sunset in 1997 unless the WMBE participation has not been achieved. So, that legislation was not achieved, and it was then set forth under the governance or overseen by the EBO Opportunity Act, in which we established the EBO office. So, we conducted a number of disparity studies, with the third one being conducted in 2005. The results in 2007 showed a number of things. The first thing it showed is that there was no disparity in subcontracting. There was, however, disparity in prime contracting. There was no legal basis for mandatory race and gender-specific goals, and then it required us to develop a diversity management initiative, the DMI. Under that, it, the DMI, we were, were responsible for capturing the data that was needed to help us assess where we are and how we were performing within the disparity within the EBO office. In 2008, we set forth or established an ordinance which brought forth a new initiative. And in 2013, we are actually working, implemented, between '12 and '13, implemented those initiatives, and we're working through those right now. So that's the framework we're under. However, as Chief Gudes has mentioned, we're not trying to stay there. We're trying to see how we can be more expansive within this program to make sure that there's inclusivity and diversity from all stakeholders. At this point, I'm going to have Jan McLean to come and speak to us about the compliance, why there is compliance, why is it needed, and then Gregory Hart will speak upon us, how do we actually meet that compliance?
Good morning, Mr. Chair and council members. This is Jan McLean, the Office of City Attorney. As Mr. Bennett and as Osea has indicated before, we have conducted various disparity studies and collected data over the course of the years, and this information is critical in being able to establish our Equal Business Opportunity Ordinance. The ordinance is contained, as you probably well know, is in Chapter 26.5 of our city code. The, what I want to provide to you today is the construct of why, how we are operating that ordinance and the programs therein. For the establishment of a small local business enterprise ordinance, we, the legal basis is that you have a rational basis test. The rational basis test is one that is easily identified, and that is to increase the local business participation in government contracting. With the disparity study that indicated that we could move forward on the establishment of a minority business opportunity program, that has a different test. That has the test of a strict scrutiny. And that's important to know, because we have to tailor, narrowly tailor the remedy to address whatever discrimination may be occurring, so that we do not impose undue burden on the unprotected classes. And that is how our ordinance is operating today. If there's, as the, Mr. Bennett and Osea and Jean have mentioned, if there is opportunity for revision, of course, you can look to our, to the additional data collection and to the revision to the poss, of possible revisions to the ordinance, but all that in mind, because that strict scrutiny test comes from the City of Richmond versus Croissant Supreme Court case, which is well-settled law from 1989 and still applies today. So that is the path that we have to follow. The minority, women and minority business programs has multiple components, and one is the construction contracting. And goals are established programmatically and also project-based, and the goals are based on study data. And as Osea has indicated, there's a compliance portion, of course, with meeting those goals. There's two possible ways to meet the goals. One is straightforward, you would submit the information as indicated in the bid documents and sign the affidavit that you will support those goals. Or there's, and if this is included in Section 26.5-204 Good Faith Efforts, this is established criteria, 12 criteria in that section, that the program reviews from each bidder to make the determination as to whether they actually had taken the good faith effort to try to meet the goal. And at the end of that, they must also sign an affidavit saying that they did try to meet the goal. There's compliance as they go, move through the contract and for the program, and for that compliance, I want to turn that over to Gregory Hart to better explain the details of it.
Thank you, Jan. Good morning, Council, Gregory Hart, Equal Business Opportunity. Under today's framework, the city's current process to increase economic opportunities on competitively awarded contracts is deliberate and methodical. To adhere with the guidelines as outlined by, by Jan just now, when a procurement is submitted to the Equal Business Opportunity Office for review, the first thing that the staff will do is to assess what product or service that contract is going to provide. We examine that scope. Secondly, we will reach into what I like to refer to as our EBO toolbox for the right equipment to maximize participation. And some of the key tools that we, 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 we apply to procurements is the sheltered market solicitation. That's when we set aside eligible contracts to allow WMBEs to compete with their peers of similar size and capacity. We also apply subcontract goals. The scope of work must require multiple trades and tasks per industry standards in order for us to set subcontract goals. And those goals are set as a percent of project when subcontract tasks align with registered businesses. And those registered WMBEs must be licensed in the industry category and must routinely perform the task that that contract requires. It is the number of ready, willing, and able WMBEs that translates to availability, and availability is a key variable in calculating the goal percent. Quite frankly, availability is the engine that drives the goal. It, it's not just the size or value of the contract. Another incentive that we use is unbundling large contracts. Projects with a non-specialized narrow scope or task make a perfect candidate for unbundling. And let me give you an example, you may or may not recall. This past year, we had a maintenance and janitorial services contract for the park centers and neighborhood centers throughout the city come before us for review. It was valued at approximately 1.5 million or so, and that contract may have gone to a conglomerate, but for our review, where we determined that we could unbundle those projects. And by doing so, we created four small contracts that actually all went to certified WMBEs and SLBEs, which allowed each sector of the city, north, south, east, and west, to be serviced by one of our local WBME firms. And quite honestly, all of the, the, the center managers just applaud the service that they're getting. Another tool that we use is the bid discount. It's an effort to level the playing field and promote WNBE prime participation with a leg up. And it's based upon evaluation of, of bids, not a, a dollar value discount per se that the city has to absorb. It was mentioned about RFP incentive points. Up to 20 points out of 100 are reserved for commitment to meaningful WNBE participation in the performance of either CCNA or RFP professional service contracts. And that is a very heavily-weighted incentive that can make all the difference in getting to the shortlist for the CCNA selection committee to make a decision. So those are just some of the primary incentives that we, we currently operate under the, the framework that's in place today. Regarding contract compliance and monitoring process and procedures, I want to assure you that Equal Business Opportunity Office and contract administration and/or purchasing, we regulate what the contractor is to do in terms of reporting, how to report, what to track, what to compile, and the frequency. It's not left up to the contractor. Regarding good faith effort, it may sound abstract, but it is a very tangible 12-step legal process. The process embodies very specific actionable outreach and communication steps by the bidder with those ready, willing, and able WNBE subcontractors, who are supposedly licensed, registered, and experienced in performing required tasks. The city also provides the bidder with a listing of available WMBEs to kickstart contacting for matchmaking opportunities, and we give all bidders a link to the entire city searchable database. In addition, there is a relatively new online interactive diversity management portal to monitor prime payments and prime payments to the subs. We also have penalties for non-compliance. We have in the past and will continue to withhold 10% of payments when we see that non-compliance, that compliance is wavering. We also can place prime bidders on probation, all the way up to complete debarment from doing business with the city. There's a dispute resolution, mediation, and appeal procedure to reinforce compliance. And my staff likes to call that going to confession or a born-again session with contractors, because that's when we, we really get down to what has, what kind of corrective action needs to be taken. So that's just a, a quick overview of, of process and compliance procedures. Brad, would you like to pick up from there?
Uh, thank you, Gregory. Brad Baer, Deputy Administrator of Infrastructure. Good morning, Chairman and City Council. I will be going through in more detail than our individual briefings, items 51 through 55, and then item 14 as well, that was moved from the consent agenda to staff reports. Item, I'll start with items 51 and 52, that is the Harbor Island Force Main replacement design bill. This is a replacement of a large diameter...
Can I interrupt real quick?
Sure.
So, Lynn, could you advance the slide to the, the item matrix so council and the public can see what Brad's talking about? It should be like three more slides. There you go. Thank you.
There you go. Thank you very much. I didn't know it was on there. So again, this is the Harbor Island Force Main replacement design bill. It's a, what we have before you is a $79 million guaranteed maximum price. It's a replacement of over two miles of larger diameter wastewater force main, including two micro tunnels and, and three jack-and-bore tunnels. And those, those five tunnels are, are specialty work, and they do not lend themselves to subcontracting opportunities. In fact, the two micro tunnels can only be done by four firms internationally, two of which provided quotes to Kimmons Corporation, and they amount to 40, almost $40 million worth of this work. So the opportunities lie in the remaining $40 million. The procurement method is by the Consultants' Competitive Negotiations Act, which we call CCNA, and selection by the consultant selection committee based on qualifications. The, I won't go into the details of the breakdown of the EBO participation, it's on the slide there. However, a, a goal was set, a combined goal, was set of 10.7%, and this design-build team is proposing 10.3% participation. The benefit of this project, it, it has a tremendous benefit to our customers and the environment, as it carries about one-third of our wastewater flow throughout our service area, which, as a reminder, extends beyond the city of Tampa limits, and it replaces a, a pipeline that was put in in 1951 and is at the end of its useful life. What does it mean if, if this item is not approved? Simply put, it's a higher risk of catastrophic failure of the force main, which would create serious public health and safety situation with a wastewater overflow on the island and into Hillsborough Bay. It's, uh, which would certainly result in a consent order from FDEP. Moving to the next project is item 53, which is the only one on this list that's not part of the pipes program, and it is...
Before we, before we, I'd like to just comment on 51.
Okay. Can, may I proceed, Chairman?
No, I, I would just like to comment on, on 51.
So... Can we, can we keep comments until all the presentations are done?
Well, then, then we're going to have to go back and talk about this one, and that one, and this one, and that one. Each one is different, each one is separate.
Well, go ahead.
Chairman? Chairman John Bennett, real quick, before Councilman Dingfelder goes. Brad is just trying to give a, an executive summary of these items, they're all going to come up individually in front of council, so it's, it's the chairman and Dingfelder's desire will, will accommodate.
Right. And my point on item 51 was, and I don't even know why anybody needed to go into great lengths on it, I think it's extremely... I think it's extremely important item. Very familiar with the need for that item. And I believe that the, the WNBE that's described in the cover is actually not too bad. So it's, that's, that's the little point I was going to make on item 51. It's 51, very, very specialized. And I recognize, I've never read about 51.
Okay. Chairman, may I proceed?
Go ahead, sir. Yes.
Yes. Thank you. Item 53 is design services associated with stormwater ditch rehabilitation. This provides detailed designs associated with modifying drainage ditches. The procurement method on this one was CCNA selection via the professional services work order list, which is a list of over 240 firms that we, that, that they reapply every year and, and we go through the qualifications and put them on the list for selection for services up to $150,000. The, regarding the EBO participation, the engineer that was in charge of this was a stormwater engineer, obviously. And she solicited four firms, three of which were WNBE firms. And, but in her research on the four firm, the three WNBE firms solicited did not have the requisite experience. In other words, they did not have the experience directly related to modifying drainage ditches. And again, this is design services, no maintenance services, no construction services. The, the benefit is a pretty obvious one. It reduces flooding, improves drainage. If it's not approved, flooding conditions will continue and get worse and result in property and street flooding, which impacts accesses to, access to businesses, residents, and, and certainly by emergency vehicles. The next project is item 54 is water utility relocation. And it comprised, it's comprised of water meter installation, water main relocation, and replacements of fire hydrants and valves. This project was competitively bid and had a underutilized WNBE goal of 16.6%. The breakdown is there for both of the contractors that we are proposing to award to, and this is the low bidder and the second low bidder, JVS Contracting and Southern Underground. As you can see with JVS, they achieved a total participation of 17%. However, only 2% was the underutilized WNBE. Southern Underground achieved a total of 22.2%, of which 100% was BBE participation. Then item, and let me go through the, I'm sorry, let me go back on the benefits, is water services, service for new customers, relocation of water mains in county or state right-of-way, replacement of failing infrastructure. What does it mean if the item is not approved? Long waiting lines for, times for water service, you know, especially for new development and/or delays in certificate of occupancy. Additional cost to relocate mains, problems isolating leaks in the distribution system, that's key, because it takes longer to get shutdowns, and then problems with firefighting as well, because this, this contract includes hydrant and valve replacement. And then finally, item 55, well, not finally, because we have item 14. The project is water main improvements design build. And this is a design of water distribution infrastructure. This entire project is anticipated to be about $50 million, with 8 million of it being the design portion. The procurement method was CCNA selection by, again, by the consultant selection committee. And I want to point out, because of my earlier comment, that this portion is not negotiated. The negotiations come in with the GMP, the Guaranteed Maximum Price, which of course we would be coming back to City Council for approval of that. And, but in this part, it's, they have actually exceeded what they proposed to use in their presentations as part of that CCNA selection. And it amounts to a total EBO participation of 34.5%, of which 31% is WBE and 3.5 is HBE or Hispanic Business Enterprise. The benefit is reduce water loss, provide reliable water service. If it's not approved, we fall further behind on replacing infrastructure, increase water loss, increase traffic congestion, and less reliable water service all around. And finally, item 14 is, the project is Davis Island's Water Main Replacement Change Order Number One. It provides for installation of new six-inch, 12-inch, and 16-inch diameter ductile iron pipe on Davis Island. The change order, the change order focuses on upgrades and roadway restoration, primarily milling and final paving course. This item also was competitively bid, had a set 24% combined goal. And the, the participation that is being proposed is 28.43% for the total, of which 27.38% is women, Business Enterprise or WBE. Almost 1% is Asian Business Enterprise, and then .07 is BBE participation. The benefit is replacement of failing infrastructure that's at, at the end of its useful life. This project is nearing completion and it is in the punch list phase. So if the item is not approved, it's simply the, the contractor and subcontractors, including WMBEs, cannot get paid. And that, that's my summary of the projects. And with that, I will turn it over to Oseya Nguyen for the wrap-up.
Yes, so Council, just wanted to share with you a few final remarks. If you can change the slide please, Lynn. Yes, a, a few final remarks. One is that I just wanted to stress that this administration is currently and will continue to be committed to compliance, growing, and inclusion. And we have things that we've worked on since the administration started, things that we're working on now, and things that we will be proposing in the future. And just to highlight some of those, we have committed to provide to you the semi-annual Pipes report. This commitment is to ensure that you have the timely report. Whenever we said that we were going to provide them, that you would get them. You had concerns or have concerns about the bandwidth within the EBO area. We're looking at that to see how can we make that a more efficient and seamless process for our contractors as well as for the, the work that they're currently doing and providing. We're enhancing our sire process, and you will get more information and insight on that. We're in the design and discussion phase of, of the sire process. But what that will do is to provide you with information probably go into the sire agenda system. You are aware, and Chief Bennett has mentioned, the Bridges to Business Program. The Caster Administration started this program to provide the certification process for businesses, minority businesses, for contracting opportunities. Was there a question?
Do we have any questions from council members?
Oh, I heard, I'm not done. I just heard a, I heard a noise.
Oh, no, no, I didn't hear anything. Go ahead. I'm sorry.
Okay, so we have the Jocks Program. And what we're currently doing now, and I'm not sure if you are aware, but we're doing the prime time of purchasing. That started maybe about a week or two ago. The purpose of that is to increase the minority participation on the Jocks Program. And this is an external outreach, virtual outreach event for our certified subcontractors to network them with our purchasing, our EBO offices, as well as with the primes. We are, have revamped, and this will be live within the next week or so, but we have revamped our purchasing and EBO website. It provides a more efficient and seamless process for anyone who is looking at those opportunities. It will be, instead of the information being buried several layers deep, it provides with an oversight and overview on our website and webpage that covers contracting, that covers the, the opportunity certification. So we've worked on that. What you can expect going forward is, as the, as what we have committed previously, and we will be coming back in January with the workshop. And in the workshop, we would definitely dive deeper into these issues. As Chief Bennett has said earlier, has mentioned earlier, we will have an, an inclusive partnership with all of our stakeholders so that we can address these concerns. I just want to leave you with this. As the Diversity and Inclusion Officer for the City of Tampa, I am committed, not only for the administration, but personally, to make sure that we have this compliance, this growth, and everyone is included in the procurement process. And that everyone has their fair share of the opportunities that are provided for the city. So we are all excited to expand this, to learn from, from where we are, to get better, and to actually go from good to great. So if there are no further questions, I will turn it over to Chief Bennett.
Thank you, Oseya. I appreciate council's patience as we try to explain where we are today and where we need to go. And I just want to reiterate, I do appreciate, and I know the mayor expresses the same feelings, that if we are accountable on each one of these agenda items, it'll make our scorecard accountable across the board. And I will also say that we're not looking to get to the workshop to start figuring this out. We're hoping to bring answers to the workshop to solve the concerns that we have, the public has, our policymakers have, and our partners have. So as I mentioned, 16 months, this will be our eighth advisory slash task force session going on to make Tampa transform itself into the, to the best functioning city for our community under the leadership of the mayor and the support and leadership of City Council. So with that, Chairman, it's back to you for the agenda. Thank you very much. Now that we've wrapped that up, Councilman Carlson.
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you all for your presentation. And I know from talking to you privately that you have a commitment to try to change all of this. The folks from the community that are reaching out to me are, are asking us to, are asking me to, to turn down contracts as a way of getting to the point where we can get a new process and better results. And I don't want to turn down projects that necessarily and, and, and hold back the projects that need to be done in the city. It sounds like you all have a, a, a plan on how to study this and work on it going forward. Do you, do you have a timeline? Is there a way that we can tell the community, you know, give us 60 days or give us 90 days or something, and then, and then measure our results again after that?
Thank you, Councilman Carlson, John Bennett, Chief of Staff. I can tell you, committing to this effort is, is going to start immediately. Two of the areas that I think are critically important, I've talked to Ms. Grimes and Eagle, we're going to start looking at ordinances right away. And then we're also going to look at some of the opportunities at our procurement level. I've had conversations with Mr. Spearmann about that to start moving the needle immediately. But I would say that our focus is to bring back a, a comprehensive response and deliverable by the workshop that has already been set in January. That way, we don't have to ask for any different dates. But in the meantime, there's still going to be a lot of checkpoints along the way. You're going to get the semi-annual report on the Pipes project. Of course, we're going to look at each agenda item as it comes through in the current level of compliance against the current level of need and timing. And that's why we're asking for a short-term understanding of where we are, a midterm understanding between now and the workshop in January, and then to go from that good to great, like Ms. Nguyen said, effective in that workshop with council's concurrence in January. I hope that helps.
Yeah, I think that the goal of the committee, from what, as I understand it, is systemic change that leads to long-term results. It's not about any particular contract. And so I will go back to the folks who have been calling me and ask if, if we can wait and listen until January. Hopefully, you all are reaching out to a lot of the, the folks who have been advocating for this too, and we can come up with some meaningful change. And then after that, hopefully, the numbers will, will change in a way that folks will think we're accomplishing something. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other council members?
Yes, sir.
Councilman Dingfelder.
Thank you, sir. First, Mr. Carlson, I agree with, with some of what you said. I look forward to hearing your comments. But there are overnight fixes.
If you're not speaking, just mute yourself. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Trump. Anyway, there's no overnight fixes. We have some problems. For example, Mr. Jimmy Ransom, I think everybody got copied on the documentation that Toba has been compiling for years and going back, going back to 2006, 2007 into, I think, 2010. Black, BBEs, black businesses have, have represented like, you know, a half million dollars out of our 100 million dollars of purchasing and contracts. And that was before we had a lot of money to spend. So, you know, so that amounts to like 1% or less than 1%. And that's the way it's been for a decade. And perhaps you hear some of my frustration. I'm sure Mr. Miranda, you know, has, has recollection of the same thing, that when you, when you've been around this as long as we have, and things don't change, then you realize that there's, there's really some systemic problems. And other communities and other agencies like TIA and, 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 and City of Orlando, you know, they, they do better. And they're, and they're located in the same state we are, and they have access to the same contractors and subcontractors that we do. So clearly, we need to do something better. And I'm glad to hear that, that Mayor Castor and Mr. Bennett and the whole team are going to head in that direction. But I do have to point out a couple of things, and, and there's a few of these that I can't vote for because I can't sleep at night. You know, this is, this is the community's money. It's not our money. It's not staff's money. It's community's money. And, and for example, on, on the item 55 that I referred to before, it's $8 million. That's $8 million that the community will never see again. That's $8 million that the black businesses will never see again, any portion of it. Because guess what? The, the response from Westra, and Brad, you can correct me if you, if you want, but the response from Westra on that was 0% BBE. And staff said they made a good faith effort to get there. I can't vote for that. You know, and listen, we haven't been fixing water mains for, for, for 100 years. Okay? And, and in my opinion, item 55, we can put off fixing those water mains for another year, okay, until we can fix this EBO problem. Because I just can't, I can't agree to that. All, the money, when the money's spent, it's gone. Item 54 is $16 million. All right? And that, that was some nominal percentage of EBO from, from- uh, from, from, from one of those two vendors. Um, excuse me, not EBO, the BBE. And in regard to item fourteen, that's an embarrassment. Item fourteen is a five hundred thousand dollar change order. And Mr. Baird, you and I both know that change orders are typically negotiated. Um, and that's been my experience. The, the vendor calls up and he says, hey, the original four and a half million dollar contract wasn't enough to finish Davis Island. We need an additional half million dollars to do the following thing. And there's some negotiation that goes on in that. And guess what? At the end of the day, that entire five million con, dollar contract to do Davis Island had point zero seven percent BBE, BBE for twenty-five hundred dollars worth of sod work. Twenty-five hundred dollars worth of sod work is the entire amount of work that we're going to give the black community, the black business enterprises off of that five million dollar proj, project. And Brad, you know, I'm not blaming you, I'm blaming the system. Though I can't go for, I can't vote for that. Okay, let the project go unfinished and, and bid out the remaining half million dollars, and let's, and, and let's do it right. And find, and find some BBE, um, opportunities in there. But I can't vote for item fourteen, and I surely can't vote for item fifty-five at eight million dollars with zero BBE. So, that's, that's just, uh, that's my strong feeling on it. And I do appreciate Mr. Bennett's comments. I appreciate Osea's comments and Gene's comments. And, and I appreciate where we're going to go in the future. But at the end of the day, all we have to help in this situation, all we have is our vote. And our vote carries weight. And, and our vote carried enough weight last time, that that's why we're having this big discussion. And that's why we're, we're getting the attention that we're getting. But if we just add to Kate, to these numbers of zero percent or point zero seven percent, then we've done nothing. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Goode.
I've got a question for, uh, Mr. Baird.
Go ahead.
These, these kind of decisions are, are hard to make. And the administration is, is, is doing their best. And I think there's just a lot of old practices that, 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 that we're trying to change. When you look at fourteen, fifty-four, and fifty-five, I just want to know, did staff go back to these bidders, fourteen, fifty-four, fifty-five, and ask them for reconsideration of, of the original?
Yeah. Yeah. Um, first I want to say, and then I'll turn it over to, uh, uh, Mr. Hart. I want to emphasize that, um, these, uh, two contracts, or the three that you've just mentioned, are in full compliance with the EBO, uh, EBO program as it now stands. Um, you know, as Mr. Bennett said, we're, we, we have a plan to go forward. We're, it's our number one priority. We're going to implement that immediately, and start working on that immediately, uh, to get to where we all want to be. We all want the same thing. Um, to...
But that wasn't my question, sir. That wasn't my question.
Okay, I'll, I'll address your second question, second part. And, and that is, and, and I don't mean to sound defensive here, because I'm not, but that gets into, um, a, a legal issue as to whether after you've determined a contractor, um, is compliant with the program, then, um, you're asking us to go back and negotiate further with that contractor um, to get additional participation after they've been determined to be compliant with the program. Um, and, and that is, uh, just simply treading in an area that is, um, quasi unethical and can lead to other things such as bid shopping. And we have, we have not done that in a single case in the city, at least since I've been here. Um, and then, uh, if anybody else wants to add anything from Legal Department or, uh, Mr. Hart, um, please do.
This is Jan McLean, Officer Attorney. That would be essentially requiring the bidder to, uh, provide additional, um, provide additional services beyond what the code requires. And we need to stay with, strictly within the constructs of the code and the implementation of the remedy, remember, as I indicated earlier. So we, we can't, given what we have on paper today and how the program is implemented today, that's what we need to stay with, and these have been determined to be compliant. What we do going forward is a different question, but now we have to stay within the legal constructs of the code.
All right, so that answered my question. We didn't go back to asking questions. Uh, number two, I don't totally believe that we are totally incompatible. I believe that we're going on the good faith word. Um, I don't believe that we really inspect what's going on with some of these jobs, personally, to know that, to find out if people are actually doing what they said they're going to do. But hopefully, with, moving forward, we'll have some things in place as it relates to good faith and making sure we have actual people who are monitoring the work and making sure people are, are submitting information truthfully, that they're actually having the people on these sites are going to, or they're going to have the people on these sites, like other programs do vet the programs. But I'll, I'll, I'll make my decision later on in the, uh, in the meeting. Thank you for your time, Mr. Baird.
Thank you very much. Anybody else?
Vera, if I may, Vera, if I may.
Go ahead, sir.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, the way I see this, we're, we're, and I, and we've heard from a number of council members. I, I'd, I'd like to hear from everybody in terms of everybody's thoughts on this, frankly, before we go to vote, because this is a, this is a gray area here. I think Councilman Dingfelder expresses a lot of our frustrations with some of the numbers here. We're working very, 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 very diligently to, um, continue to have accountability, collaborative accountability, uh, with the administration on this really, really important issue. Here we are, spending several million dollars on what appears to be, um, legally enforceable core, critical infrastructure projects, um, that don't have the kind of numbers that we want to see. We're, we're, you know, faced with making a decision right now, uh, that is a gray decision in the sense that these are core, critical infrastructure projects that maybe not all of us are, are comfortable on sitting on for three months, six months, twelve months in these areas, like, I, I believe it is, um, Harbor Island, Davis Island, et cetera. But on the other hand, we're not satisfied with these numbers. Um, I, I think that we need to reach a resolution that expresses that dissatisfaction. But also, quite frankly, we're talking about millions of dollars in core, critical infrastructure. Oh, we, we need to do our job both with diversity and making sure that we take a strong stand in that regard, and a collaborative stand with the administration that I know is working with us on this issue, while also moving forward on these needs. Again, it's a, it's a gray area, uh, but just my, uh, my sentiments. I think we all have frustration, uh, with the issue that has been brought up. But again, leaving these projects behind, uh, uh, like this, uh, troubles me. It, it obviously does. I think it troubles all of us, just like the first issue. The lack of diversity troubles me a great deal. Um, just my thoughts, Mr. Chair. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? All right, hearing none. Thank you very much. So, from what I have heard, we have covered items, or discussed items fourteen, or the substance of it, and then fifty-four and fifty-five. Is that correct? Before we've taken anything to a vote?
Uh, Mr. Chair, uh, also fifty-one and fifty-two and fifty-three.
So you've covered everything, answer, or, or done, you know, any presentation, anything else? Is that correct? Is there anything else that you need to add or say?
No.
Okay. So having heard that, we go back to item fourteen, which was pulled, but we did not vote on. Um, so let's get that out of the way. Who wishes to move the resolution for item number fourteen? Does anybody wish to move the resolution for item number fourteen, the six hundred and eighty-two thousand dollar contract?
Before I say that, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I've been trying to get online, but for whatever reason, I was muted by the organizer, which I'm sure it was an error.
No problem.
Uh, and, and speaking, and following, you asked about council members. I, I understand the frustration of the three or four council members who have spoken. I understand what the Legal Department said. But what I'm most concerned of is the probability or lack of probability. How many times do we check these contractors to make sure that the people that they have as subcontractors are really there? What I do not want to see is a ghost contractor. And I'm not accusing anyone of having that, the city or the main contractors, that the subs are ghosts. However, that's one thing that I'm really bothered by, that in case this happens, how do we find out? How many times does the city make a, attempt to go out to the field and check, make sure that the contractors that are doing those jobs and subcontractors are the ones that are there? Those are things that I think we have to check and see to make sure, because I always said, you gotta, you know, you have to verify, and then you have to make sure they're verifiable. So, I, I, I'm not putting anything on the administration. I'm sure they're doing a good job, that they're, always have done. But I want to make sure that when these contracts are laid out, and the subs are under there, under any minority contract, that the subs that got the jobs are the ones that are there. I don't want to see a ghost contractor.
Mr. Chair, may I address it? I'm sorry. Mr. Chair, may I address that? Thank you.
Go ahead, Mr. [inaudible].
Yes, uh, the vast majority of these projects, thank you, uh, do have full-time inspection, where we are there, um, every single day. Uh, and all, all of the hours that the contractor is there. We, part of their job is to verify which contract subcontractors are on that job, keep track of all the work that they've done, sign off on that work, and make sure that the invoices, and that information and that data is included with their monthly pay application. And that the amount of work is done is commensurate with the dollars that they're invoicing. Um, we, we do that on a daily basis.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Baird. That's very satisfying to all of us. I really appreciate the comment and the truthfulness in you. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much. All right. Item number fourteen, do we have a motion to move the resolution?
Um, Vera will put it up there to see what happens. I'll move it to see what happens.
All right, we have a motion from Council, and we have a second from Councilman Miranda. Let's take a, a roll call vote on this one.
Question on the motion.
Yes, sir, Councilman Dingfelder, go ahead.
I know I'm sounding like a broken record. But I just wanted to remind council, this is the item fourteen. This is five hundred thousand dollar change order, for a total of five million dollars to this vendor, who is providing zero, point zero seven percent BBE, twenty-five hundred dollars for sod, out of the five million dollar total contract that this vendor has. So, there's no absolute requirement, the city, to, to award this. It wasn't part of a bid, it's a change order. And, uh, I'm going to be voting against it. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
No, Councilman Miranda.
May I ask something for clarity? I want to make sure that my mind doesn't leave me, uh, in any doubtful way. Uh, I, uh, remember when the conversation was going on on this item here. It was mentioned that, uh, well, we know how these things happen. These things happened because there wasn't enough money to finish the contract. There could also be another reason why. That's why I want to find out what the reason is. A, was it the amount of money that we bid on was not sufficient to, to contract? Or B, was there a change order given to do other jobs within the same scope?
Um, hi, Brad Baird again, uh, Deputy Administrator of Infrastructure. The, um, the add-ons, uh, for the change order, I'm grappling for it here, is, um, is listed in the agenda package. There were, um, about fifteen of them, if I recall. But the primary items were to, um, upgrade, um, the, uh, milling and, um, what's called super paved asphaltic concrete, uh, or asphalt. Um, so we upgraded the paving on those streets to make sure that we, um, not only paved the entire street, instead of, um, you know, just one lane. And then, also, we upgraded the, um, the final course of asphalt.
Well then, Mr. Baird, you're saying that this one is in addition to the original contract?
Correct.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much. Any other council members have questions? Hearing none. We have a motion from Councilman Vera, with a second from Councilman Miranda. Let's have a roll call vote.
Goos.
No.
Carlson.
Yes.
Citro.
Yes.
Vera.
Yes.
Miranda.
Yes.
Maniscalco.
Yeah.
Dingfelder. Was that a no?
That was a no.
Thank you. Motion carried with Goos and Dingfelder voting no.
All right, thank you very much. Um, we now go on to, well, item number twenty-one was pulled. Um, and, uh, well, let's get, let's get these votes out of the way first, before we go to twenty-one. So we go to item, uh, fifty-one, which is a seventy-nine million dollar contract. Uh, do we have any questions or comments on this item?
Mr. Chairman, as I said earlier, I'll support items fifty-one and fifty-two together, and I'll move both of them.
Fifty-one and fifty-two. We have a motion from Councilman Dingfelder, with a second from Councilman Miranda for fifty-one and fifty-two. We can get a roll call vote, please.
Carlson.
Yes.
Miranda.
Yes.
Dingfelder.
Yes.
Maniscalco.
Yeah.
Goos.
Yes.
Citro.
Yes.
Sierra.
Yes.
Motion carry unanimously.
Thank you very much. Next up is item number fifty-three. Do we have a motion to move this resolution on fifty-three?
Again, Vera will move.
Vera, Vera, the most, that, who was the second?
Citro.
Second from Citro. Any questions or comments? Roll call vote.
Vera.
Yes.
Dingfelder.
No. Oh, excuse me, yes, that's the story.
Maniscalco.
Yeah.
Goos.
Yes.
Miranda.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Citro.
Yes.
Motion carry unanimously.
Thank you very much. Next is fifty-four. Motion to move item number fifty-four.
If no one else, I'll Vera again. Vera so moves.
Vera moved, who's the second? Second from Councilman Citro. Roll call vote on fifty-four.
Chairman, question on the motion.
Yes, sir, go ahead, Mr. Dingfelder.
Um, as I've stated many times, thirty, thirty years ago, I was a purchasing agent. And I do believe in the bidding process. And unfortunately, these two would bid instead of negotiating. I think if they were negotiated, we would have a much better, uh, BBE percentage from one of those contractors. But I do believe in the bidding process. Um, I think it, it's a fair process, and, uh, and, and for that reason, and that reason alone, I'll support fifty-four regarding.
Okay. Roll call vote.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Goos.
I just want to get the explanation on the record of both of these, uh, this bid, with the two companies in one bid. If I can get that on the record.
Okay. Thank you very much.
So is that a question?
Yes, Mr. Baird can ask it that, so the public can know, these, these are, you know, an item that is lumped together. I thought it should have been, uh, separated, but I just want to get it on the record for, so the, uh, community will know, why was that done?
Okay, yes, thank you. I'll address that. Uh, the reason we're, uh, awarding to the two low bidders is, um, simply because of the, um, amount of work we have in, in the Water Department, particularly in the water distribution facilities. Um, we have a large backlog and more than enough work, um, uh, for both of these firms.
All right, thank you, sir.
Chairman, Chairman, John Bennett, real quick. I apologize, based on the virtual setting that we live in, I have to do this a little atypically. But I wanted to broaden Councilman Goos' question by asking Mr. Baird a quick question. Mr. Baird, based on those two, uh, low bids, uh, it was the second bid that brought the twenty-two point two percent BBE to the table. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you. I just wanted that on the record as well. Thank you, Chairman.
Okay, thank you very much.
What, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Councilman Dingfelder.
Um, in, in doing my diligence, I just wanted to amplify that a little bit. The reason, the reason the second bidder was a little bit higher, um, in part was, was because he went to a BBE pipe supplier. And, and being a small, a small business, that BBE- And, and being a small, a small business, that BBE pipe supplier, prices were a little bit higher. Um, so at the end of the day, the city is paying a little bit more, um, a little bit more to Southern Underground than they were paying to JVS. Um, and part of that reason is because, uh, JVS didn't have a BBE contractor and, uh, and Southern Underground did. So sometimes you might have to pay a little bit more to achieve the goals that you're looking for. So it's not always about low bid. It shouldn't all be about low bid. We have to have other philosophies and other policies that play instead of just, just a little bit. But I just wanted council to be aware of that, if they weren't.
Thank you very much.
We'll support that.
Thank you very much. Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Can we have a roll call vote? This is for item number fifty-four.
Yes, Goose?
Yes.
Maniscalco?
Yeah.
Vera?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Ding Felder?
Yes.
Citro?
Yes.
Miranda?
Yes.
Motion carry unanimously.
Thank you very much. Next, we have a resolution here for eight million dollars. Item number fifty-five.
Mr. Chairman, just, yeah, just for the record, this is the Wester construction. Um, this was, is the design portion of a, of a larger design and build project. This is eight million dollars that we'll never see again. This is zero percent BBE and that's why I will, I will not support this.
Thank you very much. We have a motion to move item fifty-five. We have a motion to move item fifty-five. Who would like to move the resolution?
Vera again, we'll move it.
Thank you, sir. We have a motion from Councilman Vera. Do we have a second?
Second from Citro. Is Brad Barrett still around?
Yeah.
Yes, I am still here.
Mr. Barrett, I, I see that thirty-one percent is women-owned business?
That is correct.
I, not to confuse things, but is women-owned businesses broken down by just women-owned businesses? How many of those women happen to be Hispanic? How many of those women happen to be Asian? How many of those women happen to be African-American? Is that broken down or is it just allotted to women-owned businesses?
Yeah, thi- this is, this is just, uh, I'll let Greg chime in, but this, this is, um, just, this business is just certified as a woman-owned business and there, um, I believe there are more than one as well as part of this team. And Greg?
If, if, if this may answer your question, a, a woman-owned business on this particular project classified as Caucasian female. Any ethnic female business defaults to the ethnic category or classification of either H Hispanic, B Black, A Asian, et cetera.
I, I thank you very much for that answer. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. We have a motion from Councilman Vera and was the second from Councilman Citro?
That's correct.
Thank you. Let's have a roll call vote, please.
Miranda?
Yes.
Citro?
Yes.
Goose?
No.
Vera?
Yes.
Maniscalco?
Yeah.
Ding Felder?
Yeah.
Carlson?
Yes.
Motion carried with Goose and Ding Felder voting no.
Uh, Mr. Chair, if I may, this is Vera?
Yes, sir.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I, I have a one forty-five appointment, um, that I have to go to. It's only going to take me out for like twenty minutes or so, maybe ten or fifteen minutes and then I'll, not even that, and then I'll be driving and be able to, um, uh, get on through, uh, while driving, which isn't the best way to do that, frankly. Um, is there any way, Mr. Chair, if I may, I, I don't know if the next pulled item, I think there's one more item that's going to be pulled. I don't know how long that's going to take, but, um, since I wanted to speak on the implicit bias motion and whatnot, um, I, I didn't know if, um, when that was going to be coming up.
Well, uh, item number twenty is the, is the last pulled item that was requested. Um, let's, let's move through that. Well, we'll, we'll get through that and then if you'd like, uh, we can go to the implicit bias.
Um, Sure. I don't, I don't know how long the pulled item will take, this one, but, um, just inquiring and just to let you all know that I'll be out for maybe ten minutes or so.
Okay, well, let's go to item number twenty-one that was pulled. Item number twenty-one that was pulled and item number twenty-one that was pulled. Who is here to speak on item number twenty-one?
Councilman Maniscalco, this is Ashley Baumann, Marketing Committee.
Hi, how are you?
Great.
All right, this is Councilmember Ding Felder. Go ahead, Ashley.
Okay. As you know, Tampa has the largest media market in the state and the seventh largest in the country. Being able to leverage the power of digital, traditional and social media allows us to engage our community. I'll paint the story.
Ashley, I'm sorry, can I, this was my question. Can I just cut you off? Because we did get the memo and the memo, the memo was excellent. Um, I, my only question to you, which was sort of a follow-up question that I already enunciated, was you said this was available to all city departments, but I asked if it's going to be available to city council, whereby perhaps our aides could be trained on it and use it, uh, for whatever city council might want to use. And the response back was a little confusing. So I just wanted to hone you in on what my question was and I'm sorry to interrupt.
No, no, that's fine. Our team will be happy to provide you all with demos of how to use the first service offered by Meltwater in which our team can help engage your aides in your offices to bring those reports to you.
That's great. I appreciate it. That's all I needed, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Any other questions, comments, item number twenty-one?
Well, I'll be glad to move on.
The motion to move it from Councilman Ding Felder, do we have a second?
I can do that.
Second from Councilman Miranda, roll call vote.
Maniscalco?
Yeah.
Carlson?
Yes.
Ding Felder?
Yes.
Vera?
Yes.
Miranda?
Yes.
Citro?
Yes.
Goose?
Yes.
Motion carry unanimously.
Thank you very much. Uh, Councilman Vera, what time did you say your appointment was? Councilman Vera?
Oh, um, probably I'll, I'll, I'll need to leave here. I'll just have about ten minutes of maybe five minutes of blackout, um, where I have to log off, um, at about, in about fifty minutes. So I, I, I should be fine. I don't think this is going to take forever.
Fifty, fifty or one five?
Oh, um, um, uh, ten, five minutes. That I'll be out at about, um, one twenty or so, within, within about forty minutes, in other words. So in other words, from here on out to forty minutes, I'm good to go.
Very much. Thank you very much. Councilman Carlson?
No, I was just going to add on the Meltwater thing. You know, it's a, it's a standard tool in the, in the communication industry and, um, that's one of the tools that my staff use. So it's a, it's a good choice to use that, um, I think. And, and I agree with, uh, Mr. Ding Felder. Be, we get the, uh, the daily media clips, which is very helpful. Um, what, what I really would like to see is, um, also social media, um, posts. There are lots of constituents that are posting, especially on places like, uh, Nextdoor. And, uh, because of the way the accounts are set up, we can't always see it or we don't always see it fast enough. And so just as, uh, city customer service may be responding to constituent complaints on social media, it would be good for us to know it too because we might be able to intervene quickly and help them. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. We are going to go to item number fifty-eight. And then from there, we're going to go to fifty-six and continue in order through the agenda without any, uh, jumping around anymore. So item fifty-eight, if Ms. Delman is on the line regarding the,
Can we go back to my office for a second?
Yes, good afternoon, Chair. Um, I'll go ahead and start. As you'll recall, back in July, we presented you with a draft implicit bias ordinance intended to satisfy the charter requirements. Um, at that time, council requested that we look at a few additional issues. One was the use of outside trainers. Um, one was, um, finding some way to measure the effectiveness of the ordinance. Um, in addition, council asked that we speak with the Restorative Justice Foundation, uh, Coalition. And I did have a good talk with, um, Angel from that coalition and an additional item that he requested, as did Councilman Goose, I believe, was that we also increase the amount of training required for Tampa Fire Rescue. So what you have attached to the memo that was submitted into the record is the draft ordinance and then in yellow highlighting, highlighter, um, I've shown you the items that we've added since July. And again, one was the reference to the training being primarily provided by outside trainers who are not City of Tampa employees. Um, we also, um, added a paragraph about, or a whole section about development, developing metrics to track both the effectiveness of the training, but also, and this was in response to restorative justice, to also track and make sure that we're covering all, that the training itself covers all the topics that were, um, identified in the charter revision. Um, we did make a minor change, um, in one section to give the city additional time to initiate the training since this, um, whole process has taken longer than we thought to get the ordinance adopted. Finally, again, in response to an issue raised by council as well as restorative justice, we've increased the number of hours that Tampa Fire Rescue, um, will also be trained. Um, so that is all in what I gave you. I can, I can go into a lot more detail, but since we did so in July, I'm keeping my remarks short. Um, so if you did want to talk more, I'm happy to elaborate. But if you're comfortable with the changes that we've made, our proposal is I can put the ordinance in final form and bring it back to you for first reading on November fifth.
Mr. Chair?
Uh, Vera, if I may?
And then Councilman Goose. Yes, sir. Go ahead, sir.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Appreciate it. You know, uh, this is a really important issue for me and for all of us on council. Um, you know, looking through this ordinance, I think it's a good ordinance. We can talk about, um, any ways to strengthen it prospectively when it comes before us. Um, you know, I, one, one of the big issues for me, and I'm glad to see from my understanding that this has been taken care of, is to make sure that the training is going to be done by an outside trainer, um, outside of the City of Tampa, um, government employment. It, it appears that that is going to be done by an outside entity. Uh, well, we can talk about that. I want to hear about who this prospectively could be. We need to make sure that the voices of all the people in our Tampa community, um, who could be affected, uh, by this, uh, ordinance and program that includes LGBTQ, members of, of clergy who, who strike for a socially conscious, um, uh, society, those with disability, advocates for, uh, uh, civil rights minorities, et cetera, heard in this process. You know, I, I, I always say this and I'll say it again, that I'm, I'm very proud to represent a district that I think speaks to the need, uh, to have an implicit bias, uh, ordinance like this that's very strong and robust. I always say that my district is one of the most culturally diverse districts, um, or areas and probably the most culturally diverse area, I think, within the City of Tampa, uh, with regards to religious affiliation, culture, et cetera. You know, just last week, um, I went to a Sikh temple, which was over at, uh, on Morris Bridge Road, which is outside of the City of Tampa, but most of, just outside of the city, but most of the congregants there are City of Tampa residents. You go a little bit further, you have a Protestant, uh, uh, Christian church. You go a little bit further there, you have the New Tampa mosque. Um, you know, that, that really speaks to the cultural diversity of, of one of the areas that I represent. And we're all very, very proud of that diversity. This training to be done by an outside agency goes not just to race and ethnicity. We'll be talking about disabilities. Uh, we'll be talking about culture, religious affiliation, et cetera. Um, I, I, I'd like to meet with the person, um, uh, who's going to be talking about what entity, et cetera, uh, will be involved with this so that we can make sure that all voices are going to be brought to the table. Um, and this is very important for us as council members, uh, to lead not only with regards to what we propose for other people, but also for ourselves, uh, as I think we'll be under this training and, and that's important, you know? Uh, so it's a very, very important ordinance. I'm glad that it originated with our Charter Review Commission. I know that, uh, council members Carlson, Goose and Citro served there. This was brought forward by my friend, my constituent and my colleague, uh, uh, Michael Stevens, who actually was my appointee and, and, and lives in New Tampa. And Michael, who's just, uh, uh, one of the best people I know, uh, approached me about doing an ordinance, uh, for this in two thousand and eighteen. I brought this forward in eighteen under the old council and then we were advised to wait until the, um, charter process had finished and, and, um, and now we're here. You know, one thing I would like us to see do for this is to have this come before us for review once a year. I, I say that because issues of diversity and pluralism change as years go by. Um, you know, in, in eighteen sixty-five, um, uh, the issue of women's rights as we understand it was beyond radical for so many people. In, in nineteen sixty-four, if you would have asked LBJ about gay rights, he was signing the Civil Rights Act that year, he probably would have done, what are you talking about? Just fifteen years ago, the issue of equality for our transgender brothers and sisters, uh, was out of the mainstream for a lot of people. And today, for, for many of us, it's in the mainstream as it should be. So my point is that, you know, each generation, uh, gets presented with new realities of social consciousness and tolerance and social justice as it applies to people. And so I think that this is something that should be reviewed every year so that we can make sure that we keep up with the new realities of tolerance and compassion. Um, so I, I'd make a motion for that whenever the time comes, Mr. Chair. Um, but, um, but I, I'd like to ask questions. Whenever questions are, are fit, um, just with regards to the hours of training, how much does that, how does that stack up with other cities? And then what's the process on the entity that's going to be doing the training, um, whether it's the University of South Florida, whoever it may be? Um, and, and what voices are going to be heard, um, in that process? Just whenever is the time for questions. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Councilman Goose?
That was going to be, uh, Mr. Vera, I took my thunder there a little bit. That was going to be my question during the training. I keep hearing USF, USF. And it, it brings to the point of, well, USF may be a greatest institution. I miss my council members are USF graduates, go both. But I think, uh, some of the comments, the public comment were true, that we do have a bunch of HBCU, uh, schools within the state of Florida. Maybe, uh, if AC, USF is who the city administration is looking at, I would hope that they would, uh, have USF maybe partner with one of the HBCUs, uh, in the state, uh, to, to bring an extra dynamic, uh, to the process. Because, you know, you have to live in a house to kind of understand that house. And a lot of times we have people that we bring in to do things, but haven't really lived in a house to understand culture or actually been on the ground with that culture. So I, I'm, I'm looking forward to hearing about who may be involved in, uh, and, and putting on this training and so how we can be involved with some of the other schools, uh, local, uh, HBC colleges to be a part of that as well. I'll yield back to you.
Thank you very much. I see, uh, Councilman Citro's hand up. Go ahead, Councilman Citro.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I do appreciate it. Um, I'd like to really thank the people that were involved with the Charter Review Commission. Uh, Councilman Goose, uh, Councilman Carlson, uh, especially our, our attorneys that are here now. Count, uh, excuse me, our attorney, uh, Andrea Zelman and Morris Massey and all the other members of the Charter Review, uh, who, who helped make this possible, but also the work that was done by the public who came down to the Charter Review and asked for this. And, and, and I, I think it was a, a group effort, not only by lay like myself that were involved in this city's decision, but also the administration, also the then council, uh, years ago that had heard the request of the Charter Review Commission, but also the public that came down and spoke and asked for this. And I am also totally in agreement with Councilman Vera that this needs to be looked at once a year by council. And if changes are needed to, that, that council will apply these changes. So I, I want to really thank everybody that was involved in this, uh, and a job well done and, and, and I'm just going to support this. Uh, Mr. Chair, thank you very much and I, I yield back to you.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak on this item, number fifty-eight?
Um, Vera, if I may, just one quick thing?
Go ahead, sir.
I think, thank you, Mr. Chair. Appreciate it. And just another thought, you know, we, um, uh, individuals who, who are, um, you know, aware by, by virtue of their vocation of some of these diversity issues, um, if you're looking for also perspectives from the minority community, um, with, with that combination, uh, I would also advise staffers that George Edchcombe, uh, Bar- the George Edchcombe Bar Association, which is the historically African-American bar association here for the Hillsborough County area, just a great resource filled with many wonderful people. Their past presidents include my state representative, Fentress Driscoll. So just another good resource on top of what Councilman Goode's mentioned there, so I'd echo those comments. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chair.
Councilman Carlson.
Yes, I would just like to thank the folks from the community, and in particular, Restorative Justice and Angel D'Angelo for coming forward a couple, was it two or three years ago? But then also, Angel's been giving input on this to me and to the administration for almost a year. And so this is not perfect. I got a whole email with a whole bunch of things that aren't included, that it looks like we're not going to be able to include on this round. But it's much better than it was before Angel got involved. And so, again, it's a great example of community participation and collaboration. And, you know, thanks so much to Andrea for reaching out to Angel multiple times. I like Councilman Vera's proposal that we come back and look at this again in a year. And I think he and others maybe mentioned some other groups that might look at this. But whoever will be managing this process, I would recommend you reach out to Angel or someone from Restorative Justice just to, just to show transparency and how this is being run and to get feedback so that we can follow up a year from now and try to make it better. Thank you all.
Thank you very much. Anybody else?
This is Andrea Zelman. I just wanted to respond to one request. We, we will go back and change the ordinance to require reporting on an annual basis rather than every two years. I think my thought was that it may take a lot of time initially to get this underway. We have to, for example, to one of your other points, go through a procurement process to find the appropriate trainer. And no, we're not locked in at this point in time to any university or any other trainer. We, we have to go through a process to find the trainer. We have certainly heard council's request that that trainer be able to provide as diverse a viewpoint as possible. And Kelly Austin's here, and she and Kay Hunter will take that to heart. The contract will come back before council when we do find a trainer. So, but again, that part of the reason I had originally drafted it to require reporting every other year was, was simply because of the amount of time that's going to be involved in undertaking this. Remember, we have over 4,600 employees that will be subject to this training as well as the council members, so. But we'll, we'll change it to an annual reporting. And if there's anything else, I'm glad to answer any other questions. Thank you.
Anything else from council members?
Oh, Vera, I guess I'll move. Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Before we entertain a motion, I just wanted to say a couple of things. You know, we, we all have our own bias at whatever level it is. I mean, there's, there's always something there. We're human. None of us is perfect. But, you know, looking at, at ourselves, beyond implicit bias training, you know, we have to remember, we need to focus on, on viewing people as, as individuals. We have to eliminate stereotypes. We need to take the time to try to understand whether it's, you know, somebody else's life, somebody else's religion, somebody else's culture, without criticism, without judgment. You know, we have to perhaps then adjust our perspective and even increase our exposure. I mean, we, we often criticize what we don't understand. And in my life, and I would say going back 20 years, before criticizing something I didn't know, I tried to understand the, you know, from the other perspective. You know, after 9/11, there was a, an anti-Muslim rhetoric. And I remember a friend of mine in high school who was one of the only Muslim students in our high school, which was a Catholic high school. And instead of criticizing, I, I reached out to him, and we're still friends 20 years later. And to understand his culture, understand things, and that was just one example I remember. And instead of criticizing something, let me learn about it. And I think in today's world, and when we talk about, you know, our thousands of employees and how we interact with the community and whatnot, we have to eliminate stereotypes, look at individuals as people, try to be understanding instead of criticizing. And I think it will help us in, in moving forward. You know, the, the training and the implicit bias training is very important so we can all be on the same page, we can all be better understanding, and we can learn. I think we talk too much instead of listening when we should be listening and understanding. So having said that, Councilman Vera, sorry to cut you off. I think you wanted to make a motion.
Oh, no worries, Mr. Chair. Thank you for your remarks, sir. Yeah, I move that this be returned to us for first reading as an ordinance with the addition on the annual reporting. And, and Ms. Zelman, Mr. or Councilman Citro brought up something, just thanking you and Mr. Massey as well for your service in the Charter Review. Thank you so much for your work in that regard, both of you all as well. And thank you for that, Councilman Citro. And in terms of when the reporting starts, I think it's reasonable to, you know, have it begin a year after the actual program begins. If this begins in seven months, there's no need for this to come back to five months thereafter. So I'll make that motion, if I may.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilman Vera. Was that a second from Councilman Goode's?
Yes, sir.
All right. Do, do we have any objection to the motion? Hearing no objection by unanimous consent, motion passes. Thank you very much, Councilmember Vera. Okay, we are on number 56, and we're going to continue to the end of the agenda in numerical order without jumping around and switching around. So out of number 56 is Mr. Vic Bida. I know this was continued from one of our last meetings, and it was to discuss the parking fees.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Vic Bida, Mobility Department, and that's correct. The item was continued from the October 1st meeting. The item is related to schedule of fees for parking-related activities. And in essence, what we're proposing are a new parking rate structure that is designed primarily to meet our business expenses. So for many years, we have not been able to meet our business expenses, be they operating or capital. Furthermore, we have identified a few years ago some critical capital needs and prioritize them in high, medium, low priorities. And we're able to chip away at the high priority to some extent, but certainly funding is an issue. Another reason we're proposing these rates are to improve performance of our parking facilities, but also to move strategy elements. So from a performance standpoint, what we mean is our on-street rates are currently lower than our off-street rates, and this promotes more congestion, more looking around for parking on-street when you want that parking facility, especially in our CBD, to be transient so that it supports economic development. Other reasons why we're proposing these rate structures is also so that we can reinvest in the community as we look at challenges like sustainability and resilience, congestion, but also equity. So, you know, that, that's why we're proposing these new rates. We considered several factors as part of developing the rate structure and operating principles. These variables considered included equity, maintaining an adequate low-cost supply of parking. We are the lowest-cost parking product in the city. Market rate and the differential between market and public rates. Operating and capital needs, like I mentioned, real-time demand. So one part of this rate structure will allow us to do on-demand pricing, again, to improve availability, but also improve performance of our parking services. Facility type, on-street, off-street lots, and then location, certainly, which is a driver of rates. The goal here, again, is to make the parking division whole, be able to pay expenses, to be able to modernize and to move the overall city's transforming Tampa's Tomorrow strategy forward. Our hope is, or our projection is, it's not a hope, that these, this rate structure will allow us to meet all our expenses and become solvent in 11 years. And, and that's really the plan. It's a three-step rate increase for our garages where rates will be increased in small amounts over the next three years, FY '21, '22, and '23. On-street parking rates will see an increase in FY '21 and then an increase in FY '23, with FY '22 proposed rates remaining the same. At the last meeting, details about our rate structure were requested, and subsequently we have made that available to you. And at this point, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Do we have any questions for Mr. Bida?
Sir.
Councilman Dingfelder.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, thank you, Vic, and thanks for providing that, that additional graphic that was very helpful. Subsequently, in the last day or two, I think all of council got a letter from the, from the ATU president. I don't know if you saw it or not, as related to general employees who, under, under normal conditions, have to come down, there are many have to come downtown and, and work in our various facilities, often paying parking. And the, the complaint, part of the complaint was, and Vic, this might not be you, this might be more Mr. Bennett, but part of the complaint was the fact that, at least that they alleged that certain management folks get free parking, and, and our city staff as, as employees have to pay for monthly parking. And now we're in the process of increasing that monthly parking, which not only will affect the entire community, which we care about, obviously, but, but will, would very well, under, at least as far as Mr. Simon asserted, impact our employees, especially our rank-and-file employees and some of our lesser-paid employees. So, like I said, there's not so much Mr. Bida as it might be a Mr. Bennett question.
Thank you, Councilman. And yes, I can confirm, you know, while we certainly empathize with that position, I haven't personally read the letter, but that would be more of a bargaining unit item than a parking rate item where we are governed by statutes and do have to charge equitably.
Well, yeah, yes, yes.
Councilman Dingfelder, John's here.
Yeah. I'm in a meeting now, but I'm, I'm moving away from my computer, so they don't know I'm still here.
Chairman, I, this is John Bennett. I'd like to respond to Councilman Dingfelder's question, comment.
Go ahead.
Thank you. First of all, great question, and I, I did take notes on the last time this came up from Councilman Goode's question in a similar vein. I do recall this kind of being on the bargaining table with the ATU when we were working through the contracts and, and, you know, of course, the full negotiation package that the mayor increased the last year to three and a half percent to, to make sure there was equity in some of the other increases. And again, not everybody parks downtown, so everybody gets the benefit of the raise, but not necessarily parlay's into the parking. I can tell you that the minute I was hearing about this agenda item and listening to some of the comments, I started working with Mr. Bida's office as well as Ms. Austin's office and started pulling down some of that data. And so I will be looking at that comprehensively and to see how we can look at that from a personnel perspective and equity perspective, and of course, what Vic said about maintaining the business perspective of that. But that is, that is on my desk at the moment.
Well, just as a follow-up, you know, a lot of downtown businesses either pay for their employees to park in their buildings, even though they might not own the buildings, you know, various banks and that sort of thing, then they either pay for their employees or they subsidize their employees. When I was over in the Public Defender's Office, Public Defender, I think, had about 30 spaces in that building that she, that led to her, you know, her longest-serving Public Defender. But anyway, I'm, I'm just wondering, you know, I'm okay with the rate hike, but, but, you know, how, how do we, is there an opportunity to give our employees a discount off of this rate hike or, or some sort of future discount? And also, Mr. Bennett, is it true that some management employees get, they do, they do get free parking in our city lots, but other employees don't?
Yes, great question, Councilman. There has been a city protocol that certain positions, whether they're in-and-out management or static management and, and higher, both in the brickyard as well as the parking garage, have, have had parking as part of their, part of their position assignment, if you will. As far as the, the rate hike against everything else, I will say, with the, the quick look at the data, there was about 200-plus employees that were, that were using the, the parking system related to not just the garage, but the flat lots and some of the periphery of parking based on their choices. I also understood that there's a pretty large waiting list for the public as well as personnel to get in the garage. So there's a lot of dynamism in the numbers, in the price points, in the equity, and all those things are, like I said, something that I'm trying to look at and find some balance to based on the conversation.
Okay. We hold off on, on voting on this until you get back with us on that, because let's say for argument's sake, we decide to give our city employees 50% discount, 200 employees a 50% discount, that could have some impact on Mr. Bida's ability to, to balance the parking department's budget. Maybe we should hold off until you come to a conclusion on that.
Councilman, if I may, I mean, we, we manage around 13,000 parking spaces in total, and so if at all possible, if we could have the conversations be logically separate, that would be preferred only because what we are proposing as the Mobility Department with the rates, that conversation is somewhat related and we empathize, but it is separate in terms of how it will manifest in action.
Well, the numbers help me also because you're saying 200 out of 13,000, so it's rather a drop in the bucket.
That's correct.
Okay, all right. I'm, I'm firm about that.
Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. Councilman Carlson.
Yes, along those lines, I happen to have my update meeting with ATU the other day, and some concerns were expressed about, about how staff members will be dealing with any complaints that they might get around the system. And so I, you know, offline talked to Mr. Bida, and he assured me that they're going to be doing thorough training to answer all the questions. I think this is something that, that we've needed for a long time. We need to make these parking garages break even at least, and we need to be able to invest in more infrastructure in the future. And it's going to cost my company, but, because we pay for all of our parking, but, but that's okay because it's a good investment in new infrastructure in the city. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now, I, I remember about 10 years ago during my first campaign, in which I lost, but it was brought up to some of the candidates regarding how the City of Tampa and their enterprise fund and whatnot with parking, it's always losing money. And I, you know, I know what you brought up today is, you're just bringing us up to speed and putting us on, you know, parallel with, with other cities and municipalities to make sure that we're getting that revenue in and we're not continuing to lose money, but at least putting us, you know, on par with, with others. So I appreciate it very much. Any other council members?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Councilman Miranda.
I just want to make a comment. Chairman, no one loses in elections. You're just never getting enough votes. Thank you.
That is correct, but I came in fifth place out of fifth place, so.
It was very close.
I did not get enough votes by a long shot, so. Thank you very much. Anybody else? All right. Thank you, Mr. Bida. We appreciate that. I don't believe that there's a, well, there's a substitute resolution here. Do we have anyone willing to make the motion? a, well, there's a substitute resolution here. Um, do we have anyone willing to make the motion to uh, move the substitute resolution for item number fifty-six?
Move fifty-six, file number F twenty-sixty-four-seven-thirty-two, move the substitute resolution.
Okay. All right, we have Councilman uh, Miranda with the motion, second from Councilman Citro. Um, is there any objection to the motion? Hearing no objection by unanimous consent, the motion passes. Thank you very much. All right, next up is item number fifty-seven. We did receive a memo from Simone Savino, our Assistant City Attorney, with a PowerPoint presentation on the Rental Certificate Program. If she's on the line and she'd like to go ahead or whoever wishes to present.
I'll, I'll go ahead. Good afternoon, uh, Council. This is Keith O'Connor, um, Neighborhood Enhancement Manager. I'm here um, at the Lemon Street Office, uh, joined with city uh, staff. I have Assistant City Attorney Kamire.
Kamaria.
Kamaria Pettis-Mackel and Assistant City Attorney Simone Savino. Uh, in addition, here I have uh, Joe Pappy with Business Tax and Susan Wenrich with the Code Enforcement. Um, are you hearing us okay?
Yes, we do. I hear you, sir, yes.
Okay. On the PowerPoint, if we could go to the next slide. So back in June, Council, you uh posed a question um, for us to come uh, and present to you, and the question was, what sort of efficiency we might be able to make to improve the Rental Certificate Program as well as possibly making it more self-sufficient financially? Um, and to get started, I wanted to clarify that um, back in June, when the, when the audit of the Rental Certificate Program was going through, there was a dollar amount in the audit of a hundred and eighty-six thousand per year. And I just wanted to clarify that, that there was no hard cost associated with this program, that that dollar amount related to um, an estimate of the administrative staff that worked on the program throughout the year. There's thirteen staff members that touched that project throughout the year, but they spend less than twenty-five percent of their time, and therefore, that cost would be incurred by the division with or without the program. So I just wanted to clarify that uh, before we went forward, if there was any questions on that.
Mr. Chairman.
Any questions? Go ahead, Ms. Miranda. Council, Councilman Miranda, yes, sir.
I, I just wanna say something that I have to say. Uh, I'm getting mixed motions from the administration, and maybe I shouldn't have, I didn't have the time to, to make an inquiry. Just the other day, it was yesterday, the day before, I got involved in a listening session with, I believe with District Six on the neighborhood call, and a high-ranking administrator said to, when they were asked a question about uh, individuals that have houses that are, are cut into two and three apartments and they got the garage built up to rental, rental individuals that are using a, what used to be a uh, carport, they, you know, put it in, fence it around, put a couple of walls in it and rent it for six, seven, a hundred dollars a month, ninety-nine point nine percent of the time in cash. And if you wanna give the, the, if people own a house a check, hey, say you want it, you gotta give it cash. I'm not gonna, I can attest everything I say. The next thing is, when you have a rental certificate program and you got, I would say, hundreds and not thousands of homes that are renting without a rental certificate program, and one administrator told me we're gonna work on it, then I heard another administrator say that the other day at uh, the six o'clock conference call, but I think with District Six, that I was just not a participant, but wanted, uh, could go in and listen to the conversation. So happens that this came up when I only listened for about ten minutes, and I feel myself, well, that's odd. Uh, so I got to know which way the administration is going, you know, we're gonna go, and let me say this, I think the administration tried to do something, but they got me confused which way they wanna go. And, and what I'm saying is this. A, the people who do not have a rental certificate are not paying at the law taxes equal to, greater than somebody who has a home under their name. B, sometimes you're married and your spouse maintains the name of the parents instead of your name. And then you see, sometimes they got four names, and then you see things that are different. I don't know if they have four or none or whatever to get homestead exemption. Do they have one homestead exception or four? They got four houses, they got four different names. That's an hypothesis that I haven't proven yet. Secondly, they pay no income tax on the revenue, because ninety to ninety-five percent, if not a hundred percent, is all cash. So now I see things that are happening. You see a house, the next day it's sold, the following day is a right fence around it, which you cannot see through. You don't know what's going on. But the next week, that's what you got, solar panels. A lot of them. Then you see more cars. So I have to make an assumption that they've cut the house in pieces and they're renting it, and the reason for the electric system now going solar is to reduce the payment electricity to be no higher than the average of that block. So I like to know from the administration, what are we gonna do? And how we're gonna do it, and it doesn't have to be today, but I'm getting to wits in on this deal, and I like to know one thing or the other. In fact, I even went as far as having Charlie Miranda sue Charlie Miranda. Now, that sounds crazy, doesn't it? See, we're elected official, we got responsibility to the citizens, but we're also citizens who have responsibility to being yourself. So these things are all in my mind, and I haven't figured out which one I'm gonna do, but I'm gonna do one of them. I just don't know which one. And I'd like to know what we're gonna do with all the houses that have rental certificates and all the houses who do not have rental certificates. And they have two hundred and thirty-two houses that were confirmed, two or three that have come up. In fact, Council, without knowing, at thirty-two oh five North Lincoln, there was a house that the people came over and they said, no, this is my cousin, and you know, and I asked the lady, eh, how come you got two doors if it's your cousin? Well, we wanna give them their privacy. You mean, you got a wall between them? Yeah. What about a kitchen? Oh, we wanna give their own kitchen. Guess what happened? It passed Council six to one, about two months later, the house sold. It wasn't for their cousin. It was for the rental income, so they can sell the house for more money. Well, look at thirty-two oh five North Lincoln. Look at the price before, look at the price after. But what I'm saying is, we have some problems here that may be able to be addressed and should be addressed. A, the government, no taxes, and that balar, three governments, not counting Whitman and others, the school board, those were counting the City of Tampa. No taxes paid on the income at the end of the year to the federal government. I think that, in my opinion, I think that the Treasury Department should get involved. I think that the good people at uh, the tax situation should be brought up. I think we gotta form a consortium of more than just the City of Tampa, with other agencies to clear this thing up. This is nothing more than rental stealing is what it is. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much.
Point of order, Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Ding Felder.
Yes, sir. Um, on fifty-seven, I, I read the memo from, from staff. Um, it was a good, comprehensive memo. It talked about what the rental program is and if we wanted to expand it, how much it would cost. And then I spoke with uh, with uh, Ms. Wynn um, in the last day or two, and we talked about it's more. Um, I probably should have suggested that item fifty-seven is one of those that we, we didn't necessarily need the verbal report, because Miss, my, my basic question to Ms. Wynn was, based upon everything I read and everything she, she and I talked about, I think the Rental Certificate Program is a two-hundred-thousand-dollar waste of effort, and it's also a waste of time in terms of the, the landlord's participation, because at the end of the day, we collect, you know, nine thousand names of, of people who are renting their houses, and those are the ones who, like Charlie said, those are the ones who actually are straight up and participate, but we don't do anything with it. We don't, we don't, you, we don't do anything with it in terms of enforcement. We don't follow up to make sure that what they're telling us is true. We don't follow up and chase people down who don't participate in the rental program, Rental Certificate Program. Uh, we don't make any money from it, and so it's a loser, it's a two-hundred-thousand-dollar loser. And as the gentleman indicated, we got thirteen staff members who, who put in some portion of their, of their hundred percent time, some portion less than twenty-five percent of their time, to, to keep this thing going. So I, I raised all those questions to Astia and, and she's, you know, this department's new for her, and so she agreed that she and her staff were gonna take a close look at it over the next couple of months and, and, and get back to us. So, so with that, unless there's an objection, what I'd like to do is defer this item fifty-seven and let uh, Ms. Wynn come back to us um, in ninety days after the first of the year uh, with her opinion of the viability of this program.
Second, Mr. Ding Felder.
Um, Councilman Ding Felder, do you have a date? Uh, ninety days would put us in the January um, window. Mr. Shelby, what do we have in January? Uh, what is our regular meeting?
Chairman, you have a regular meeting on the fourteenth, and you have a workshop on the twenty-eighth of January, nine AM.
The fourteenth under staff report.
Well, this is, this might, uh, Council, you only have one meeting, one regular meeting scheduled now in the month of January, and that'll be the first meeting back from your winter break. So you might wanna try to keep that light and put it on for the workshop session, if I may suggest.
The first regular meeting in February, Mr. Shelby.
The first regular meeting in February is February fourth.
That would be my logic.
Second. Second from Councilman Miranda.
May I say one other thing, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Thank you very much. And, and the other thing is that when you have this, we're, we're accepting the burden of proof ourselves for someone to prove that the people that wanna move in or that one individual, your mother, your mother-in-law, whatever it is, and I'm not against that at all. However, it should be the applicant's ability to prove or not prove that they are related through ancestry or whatever, because the federal government doesn't just say, oh, yeah, yeah, okay, you gave me a name. Well, that, that's your relative, that's done. No, it, it goes more than that. I think it's a burden of proof that be on them, not on us, and we're putting it on ourselves to say who it is. And I, and I agree that they do check it once a year. It has been checked once a year, and if that, that applicant is not there, then that certificate is, is not in void. I agree with that. We, I'm not here to hurt people, I'm here to help people. But at the same time, the people who are helping themselves are the ones that I say, ah, ah, you gotta be like everybody else. You gotta pay and shoulder the burden. If you wanna make some money, do it legit. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. We have a motion from Councilman Ding Felder, second from Councilman Miranda, that would be for February fourth. Under staff reports, is there any objection to the motion? Hearing none, no objection, with unanimous consent, the motion passes. All right, we are, let's see, four and a half hours into this meeting. I think we could use a break. I was gonna say ten minutes, perhaps we need fifteen minutes. So if you could mute your phones or, or mute your devices, and we will uh, come back from a break at one thirty-five, one three-five, and we'll take roll call, and then we'll pick up with uh, Whit Reamer from there. All right, so we are uh, recessed for fifteen minutes until one thirty-five.
So, uh, but I don't know, I'm, I'm open to other suggestions.
Any suggestion by any council members? Uh, because of course, you know, we did hear the public comment this morning, which was, was significant. Um, quite a few members from the public um, stating their concerns about this report. Um, so I understand where Councilman Ding Felder's coming from. Is there a, a date perhaps after the holidays, uh, beginning in January? Because I know that, as has been said, the agendas are, or our calendar is compressed for November and December. Uh, I'm open to suggestions from council members.
But what's that workshop look like in January, Mr. Shelby?
It looks like the uh, Equal Business Opportunity Program, twenty-six point five, is the main uh, topic, and the concept of the city auditor conducting an uh, audit on the program. And the um, um, Unfinished Business Staff Reports is the Transportation Department discussing parking in the right-of-way and residential areas. Those are the only two items on uh, the uh, calendar right now.
How about the February workshop?
February workshop is open.
All right, I'll move it, I'll move this item to a more comprehensive report uh, in the February workshop.
Second. Councilman Ding Felder.
This, this is Mr. Reimer. I could just, um, I just wanted to let you know, I can get through my presentation um, fairly quickly, and, and I do uh, I, I do wanna be able to respond to some of the comments that we received this morning, and I, I actually think that it's important to do that sooner than later. We are currently drafting the RFP that will establish that will establish this Climate Action Equity Report. And I want to be able to have as much community feedback and input as we develop that RFP process. And we start writing that plan, which is gonna happen hopefully in the first calendar year quarter. And it's certainly your prerogative if you prefer to delay this. I just wanted to give you just a little insight into both my presentation and our timeline to move forward with this Climate Action Equity Plan.
And Mr. Chairman, may I just chime in for a minute, Martin Shelby?
Yeah.
Just a reminder to council that under your form of government, the RFPs don't come back to city council for review before they're, they're released. So if that is in fact the case, it may be of use to council to, to understand the process now and to be able to give input now, if that's in fact going to be the timeline. Certainly, council's pleasure.
Come.
Although I second the motion, if he can do this thing and we can hear it, I don't mind hearing it today. I don't want, I don't want to put anything more burden on one individual running a program. That's what we have right now, and I'm sure it's in the embryo stage, it'll get better. But I'm not opposed to hearing it today if he's gonna do it. He says he's gonna take, I don't know how much, ten or fifteen minutes. I don't mind that at all.
Mr. Chair, if I may, I'd like to ask Mr. Reamer, if he's been sitting here all morning long. And I would like to hear from him today.
Anybody else?
Mr. Chair, I think that Whit has a great background that lends itself to this position. And I think he at least ought to have a minute to, to talk about his background and what he plans to do in, in his defense and in the city's defense. Thank you.
All right, Whit. That was Councilman Carlson. Anything you'd like to say or speak at this time?
I'm happy to proceed if, if that's the council's directive.
All right, we had a, we had a motion to postpone this from Councilman Dinkfelder. Does the second still stand? Or do council members wish to go ahead with this today?
My second stands if it's gonna take an hour, but it gonna take fifty or twenty minutes. I'd like to hear it today.
Mr. Reamer, what, how long do you think your presentation would take?
My presentation will be no more than seven minutes.
Perfect. I think we should listen to it today and might as well get, get it out of the way. Councilman Dinkfelder, what do you think? You withdraw the motion, considering the?
That's fine. The report looked like a lot more, and I expected questions and answers, but that's fine. Seven minutes.
All right, Mr. Reamer, go ahead.
Okay. Hopefully, you can now see the PowerPoint presentation.
Yes, sir.
Okay, wonderful. So I want to just kind of touch on some highlights within the memo that was circulated to council, starting off with renewable energy, which is really a first step, and really a first for the city outright. We haven't, besides some of our police monitoring devices and some streetlights, we haven't done a whole lot of solar panel or electric vehicle purchases in the last couple of years. So we are, we're moving in that direction. And that's all being driven by Mayor Castor's pledge to transition the city of Tampa to a hundred percent renewable energy by 2045, which was the target that we, we were asked to meet it by originally. And I certainly heard from the community this morning, they'd like a more aggressive timeline, and we are willing to look at timelines that our sister cities have met or have pledged to meet. And so this was simply a starting point over a year ago. And, and like I said, happy to look at an updated timeline. So see how this quickly transitions. This was something the mayor pledged to do. And on the right-hand side of the screen, you see in our budget proposal, right here, we're gonna create a climate action plan that's focused on vulnerable areas. We're gonna look at everything that we're doing, both within our municipal operations. And we're also gonna look at permitting processes and green building standards, community-wide, to really make sure that not only are we committing to transitioning municipal operations, but that we're putting in place policies and goals that ultimately can incentivize our entire community to, to transitioning to clean renewable energy. So I can't overstate that enough, that perhaps the way the memo was framed was, was confusing. From the mayor's position, we are laser-focused on transitioning municipal operations. And the plan that we create, which I mentioned as part of the RFP, will address community-wide renewable energy goals. Thank you. So just a quick snapshot, looking back, I know a lot of folks mentioned on the public comment this morning that the municipal operations were a small portion of the entire city of Tampa footprint. That's true. This is a greenhouse gas study we did back in two thousand and nine, and it shows that our wastewater and our waste energy facilities account for over sixty percent of our carbon emissions. A couple of other things in the renewable space. A quick little fun project that we're working on here is Woodland Terrace Park. Some of the residents have requested to be able to take nighttime evening walks to get fresh air and get their exercise in. Tico looked at putting their traditional lights in. They couldn't get their equipment in there. We saw this as a perfect opportunity to bring clean renewable energy projects to East Tampa. And I believe the purchase order for this was put in today, and hopefully those will be installed in the next couple of months. Similarly, on the right-hand side of the screen, our fleets department has made some, some great inroads with the recent purchase of eight or nine, I believe, Nissan Leaf electric vehicles. This is actually another great story whereby I think a traditional combustion engine purchase was slated to be made. And the new administration, even before my time, stepped in and said, can we look at electric vehicles instead of the combustion ones? We made either a change order or we switched that through the process, and we are gonna be receiving those. Actually, I think we already received them, and we're doing some wraps on those, which will be really neat to unveil here in the next couple of weeks. On the sustainability side, thanks to this council, we recently passed a single-use plastic regulation. I wanted to update council that I have the executive order, the draft executive order implementing this on my desk from the mayor. And she's asked me to go back in and bolster the objective to be more aspirational and to show all the things that we're doing on, on single-use plastics and solid waste diversion. So we're still putting the final touches on that. It's forthcoming. Similarly, we are looking community-wide at our environmental footprint through the Lead for Cities process that is taking an exorbitant amount of time to put the documentation and narrative together. But it's given me an opportunity to meet city staff that I would have never had a chance to meet, I think, in my first three or four months, including our great landscape architects who are incorporating green infrastructure elements, are protecting our urban tree canopy, improving our water efficiency, looking at new transportation options. That, those are all the things that the Lead for Cities process does. You can see just an array of the credits that we're gonna be applying for, and we'll be actually applying for that next week. And we're actually in the, in the gold category with the credits that we're looking at right now, which will be actually higher than a lot of our sister cities. I wanted to mention another cool project that we're working on. It's an environmental justice project that was an opportunity that was presented by a group called E Pluribus Unum, which stands for Out of Many One. And as you can see, Mayor Castor is joining an distinguished group of southeastern leaders to focus on racial and social justice equity issues. We presented a project to concentrate regenerating our urban tree canopy along transportation corridors and underserved communities that will pay people from those communities to go out and, and, and plant new shaded paths in their, in their neighborhoods to allow for protected walking, because we know that the Union of Concerned Scientists tell us that we're gonna be experiencing severe heat events over a hundred days with a hundred and five degree heat in the next ten to fifteen years. And so making sure that we've got shady places for our citizens to walk is really important. And I can mention, I'd like to mention that that organization was really, really happy to see an environmental justice project come through. I think we're probably one of the only ones that's submitted an environmental justice project out of this entire group. Quickly, I just wanted to review some of the science with you guys that are driving the decisions and policies that we're making here. Everyone has seen these headlines at the Tampa Bay Times related to flooding and storm surge and sea level rise. Those headlines are important, but really where I like to, to dig in is, is the actual science. We have some great scientists here in the Tampa Bay community that, that are looking at sea level rise. And this is one of the reports they've put out. Here in Tampa, we are looking at two to eight and a half feet sea level rise by 2100. And I'm taking this information and I'm disseminating it to our planning department, our permitting department, our building codes department. And we are trying to, to, to update our codes to, to meet these, the recommendations of these science panels. This is just a quick look at the, the sea level rise gauge off of St. Pete. And this is projected high, medium, and low feet, and we use that intermediate number. This is just, I'm gonna run through these really quickly. This is what sea level rise will look at with varying feet. This is where we are right now. This is a mean-high-high watermark. I'm gonna go to one foot, two feet, three feet. And you could see kind of down the south part of the peninsula, you can see the Harbor Island area, you can see the Hillsborough River starting to get a lot of, a lot of water here. That's four feet. So that's kind of the mid-range that we're gonna be looking at. That's what's gonna be potentially subject to sea level rise. And then you could even go to five feet and eight feet, and, and we've got some real problems. So we need to start mitigating the impacts of climate change. We need to start changing our building stock, our, 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 our building processes to adapt to, to these changing conditions. Here's a report on something that we're doing right now. It looks like twelve to fourteen hundred properties by 2040 will be affected by sea level rise. Eighty percent of those are publicly owned. We need to start working with our community partners, those on the front lines, those critical facilities, to make sure that we are adapting to climate change and making sure that our critical infrastructure is strong and resilient. Again, another thing that we're doing, we got a seventy-five thousand dollar grant to look at how our comprehensive plan and our, our regulations currently either meet or don't meet the types of changing conditions that we know the scientists are telling us that we need to pay close attention to. Again, this is an insurance company report. It's called Karen Clark. This is from a couple of years ago. This is related to storm surge, which is a little different than sea level rise. Sea level rises gradual. It occurs from thermal expansion in the oceans, melting ice sheets, things like that. This is storm surge. This would be like a hurricane pushing water into Tampa Bay. And here's what that report says. It says Tampa Bay is the most vulnerable city in the entire U.S. to storm surge. We are laser-focused on finding policies, programs, and projects to help mitigate and adapt to these hazardous conditions. And, and, and here, here's another thing that's happening. Our real estate is starting to change. And the companies that are selling houses like Realtor.com are now giving us a flood score. So if you see down here in the bottom right-hand part of your screen, you pull up a house down in South, South Agandy area. It shows you the flood zone, and you can click on that. It pops up and gives you a flood score. It says this is a high-risk area, and that you need to make sure you're buying flood insurance, and you need to have a plan to evacuate. And you need to understand the type of investment that you're making. Here are some flood maps. We have new flood maps that are gonna be coming online and drop by January of next year. It's gonna put a lot more people in flood zones. It's gonna take a couple of people out of flood zones. But we haven't had updated flood maps in over twenty years here in Tampa. The science has changed since then, so this is a welcome addition. Quickly on stormwater, we just received a report in June of this year, looking at all of our stormwater outfall canals. There's over five hundred of them. Many of them are subject to the potential impacts of sea level rise. I know our stormwater team is taking sustainability and resilience into the decisions that they're making every single day, and making sure that as we develop new stormwater outfall canals, that they're raised to, to a level that will be safe from impending tides and sea level rise. One of the projects that they're doing, they created a GIS map to show green infrastructure projects. Green infrastructure projects help with water quality and stormwater management in a new and refreshing way, not using traditional gray pipes and infrastructure, but rather using nature-based solutions. On the resilience front, we are part of the Tampa Bay Regional Resiliency Coalition. And we are working with a group of international resilience experts called the Resilient Cities Catalyst to develop a resilient Tampa roadmap. I can tell you that that process has been an extraordinary learning experience. And we are coalescing around four priority areas. And no surprise to the folks on this line, they're gonna be focused on transportation, climate change, affordable housing, and addressing the wealth gap. So resilience isn't just about the built infrastructure. It's about how all of these things that Mayor Castor has put forward in her T3 plan are tied together. She was serious when she said resilience underpins everything we do. And that's the end of my presentation. I'm happy to take questions.
Do we have any questions from council members?
Mr. Chair, if I may.
Councilman Citro, go ahead.
Thank you very much. Whit, thank you very much for your report. My, I, I do have a question though. How can we establish a, a community-wide process with our citizens that engages people to help respond to these environmental threats and on our, and our path to become a resilient city?
Thanks for the question, Councilman Citro. As part of the Climate Action Equity Plan that we're gonna be writing the RFP on, there will be a major component focused on community outreach. That, that will be a huge part of the RFP. And when we are interviewing potential respondents, we will ask about their plans. I will certainly be in the community. I'll be working with our community partners to make sure that we are getting as well-rounded of a response as possible. In addition, we are gonna be creating a short-term climate advisory committee that will help me and our community partners steer that Climate Action and Equity Plan. So multiple opportunities forthcoming. I look very much forward to working with our community partners to have a voice in that plan.
Thank you very much, Whit. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Anybody else have any questions?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, Dinkfelder.
Thank you. Um, I wasn't trying to blow you off. I just wanted to make sure you had adequate time. But if you want to come back for a report in the spring or something like that, just let us know. So two questions, two or three questions. Number one, somebody mentioned an RFP. What, what's the RFP?
The RFP will be a solicitation of services to help us create a Climate Action and Equity Plan. Many, many cities, most cities have these. We have one that Atkins helped us develop back in two thousand and eleven that, that didn't get a whole lot of traction. So we're gonna rewrite our plan with an intent focused on action-oriented solutions. So how can the, the city itself, how can our municipal operations quickly transition to a hundred percent renewable energy? And then policies and programs that, that the community, that we should be looking at in the community to help us reach that hundred percent renewable goal, and look at all of, all of the climate-related issues that we need to be paying attention to. And, and given that I'm a one-man shop, and that it's pretty typical for cities to use outside services, the RFP will be focused on bringing architectural and engineering expertise to the city to help me create that plan.
Okay. So looking at your pie chart, I don't know if you've got that handy. It was like the third or fourth slide, I think. Are you controlling that or is somebody else?
I can, I can, I can go back to control it. Let's see. Give me one second. There we go. That one?
Correct. So the elephant in the room is, is the wastewater treatment plant at thirty-five percent of our greenhouse gas emissions and the, and McKay Bay Waste Energy Burning Our Garbage plant at thirty-six percent totaling seventy-one percent of all the city's greenhouse gas emissions, according to two thousand and nine study. Obviously, those are two critical functions in the city. You know, I, I imagine, I've been out to the wastewater plant recently for another tour. You know, I imagine it's just the digesting, you know, the digesting of the organics is part of the wastewater treatment process that emits greenhouse gases, sort of like, like a cow chewing its cud emits, emits greenhouse gases off the backside. So what are we, you know, what kind of possible proposal is there in regard to those, those gases? I know that, that there have been experiments to try and capture some of those gases, especially the methane, and, and, and generate, generate electricity with, with the methane. And then my other question is, on the waste of energy, what is the possible solutions? Is anybody talking about when we burn our trash and create energy, we burn our trash and we send up lots of greenhouse gases?
All right, sure. Thanks for the question. Thanks for the question, Councilman. I might have to defer some of this and get back to you to get a little bit more specifics from our engineers that run these facilities. But in general, I can tell you that I think the wastewater actually probably has to do with more of the pumps and the moving of the water in the facility. That's incredibly energy-intensive. So I think it's probably the electricity that's actually required of the pumps, although they might be including within that calculation some of the emitted emissions from the digestion process. In terms of offsetting or reducing that, you know, we're going to have to have a wastewater treatment facility. I think they've got a master plan to upgrade it. They're bringing in some cogeneration opportunities. But ultimately, this is a critical function that will probably, as it exists now, not change a whole lot over the next couple of years. But the one thing that we can do is, as a city, invest in renewable energy to help offset some of this energy that's being used. And we can put solar panels on, either on-site or somewhere else, and use that renewable resource as part of the offset. We're looking at any number of options. Those are engineering-related questions. Those are the exact types of things that I'm going to be asking in the RFP for help on, Councilman. So that's why the RFP comes into play. Same thing with the waste energy facility. I'd say a low-hanging fruit is simply, we need to recycle. We need to reduce more of the waste going into that facility, so we're not burning as much. That's easy to say, harder to do. But again, looking for efficiencies in our, in our, the stacks there that emit those carbon emissions. You know, there are any number of technologies that exist, and that's exactly why we need help understanding what are the best and most innovative cities doing on these things. Come tell us those ideas and give us an opportunity to replicate.
Yeah, so in regard to wastewater, you're right. Glad you reminded us of that. We're probably spending $100 million on the consultant engineer to look at the wastewater plant. And I think that it's really, really important, considering it's 35% of the total emissions, that you plug yourself in to that process and make sure that, that your issues, our issues of sustainability and resiliency are addressed in whatever they're doing when they re-engineer that plant. And then the same thing on waste energy. Obviously, we just took ownership or took control. We always had ownership, but we took control of McKay Bay. And now we're doing a lot of re-engineering and retrofitting. And again, I know you're just a one-man band, but I would urge you to plug yourself into McKay Bay too, because if that's 71% of our emissions, we can play around a lot on a lot of other things, but we could really make progress in those two facilities.
If I may, Councilman, oh, sorry, sure. I just wanted to quickly respond. I can just tell you, the staff that run both those facilities have been incredibly welcoming of both my ideas and have embraced sustainability and resilience in their master planning initiatives. I've been out to McKay Bay twice. I've been to the wastewater treatment facility once. Those were the first stops I made. In the first couple of weeks, I came on board. And you're right, I just, to that point, efficiency is the cheapest way to start reducing our carbon emissions and achieve that renewable goal. There's no point in going and building, overbuilding a big solar field to offset emissions where we could have achieved them much cheaper and much quicker on efficiencies. I just wanted to make that point.
And my last point is, concurring with the community. When I saw the 2045, it kind of made me gulp. I don't even want to think about how old I was then. And I'd like to, you know, I'd love for us to see more like 2030. So anyway, that's just a comment. All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. Any other council members?
Mr. Chair.
Councilman Carl.
Just, Whit, just a quick comment, and we can address this later. But obviously, those maps are dire warning for South Tampa. And I think probably most people in South Tampa have seen some version of those maps before. I've held a couple forums on this, and the feedback I got from the community, the experts in the community, is that probably the first in line will be the risk managers. The insurance companies will stop covering properties, and then the mortgage companies will stop covering properties. But I saw, I heard some of your comments about certain parts of South Tampa, but look forward to working with you to appropriately educate and inform the public about the risks that are being taken, and that not everything could be fixed through building more pipes. Some of it will either require major, major infrastructure or will have to retreat back. So look forward to hearing more about that later. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? Anybody else? All right, thank you very much, sir. We appreciate the presentation. Next up, by request of TPD, and we have Chief Burkhall. Because of a scheduling conflict, we would like to take up number 64. And I know that there was a presentation, a PowerPoint for it. If we could go to 64, and then we'll go with 61 and 66, and that'll complete the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, just a reminder, if you can, number 59 is something that I believe has not been received and filed. I don't know if you're moving past that, but just a reminder that that's just a note.
All right. I get a motion for receiving files, number 59.
So I move, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Councilman Miranda with the second, Councilman Cietro, any objections? All right, by unanimous consent, without any objection, that passes. All right. Number 64, I think we have Lee Burkhall on the line.
Yes, good afternoon, Council, and thank you for the agenda update from me. This is going to be very brief. It's just a quick update on our mental health program. If you could go to the next slide, please. So I'm very excited about our progress and the implementation of this program, as is the mayor, the chief, and myself and the organization, as we feel that this program will bring a value to our agency and the city at whole. In the last 30 days, our teams conducted a plethora of meetings with a variety of stakeholders. The first one I have listed on here is Justin Coffey and his team. We've actually met with them several times on virtual meetings with our group, and they provided a lot of research and valuable insights. So we do appreciate their assistance. And Dr. Kathleen Moore is part of our team. She's from the University of South Florida. She's assisting us in the drafting of the RFA process. Claire Reynolds, which I'm sure you all know, at the Crisis Center of Tampa Bay, her organization has said that they're not going to be part of this RFA process. So she is going to help us out and be a stakeholder and subject matter expert for us in this program. And of course, City of Tampa Purchasing, who's assisted us greatly in drafting the RFA. We've also conducted two site visits at the St. Pete Police Department and Pasco County Sheriff's Office to glean about their programs and speak with their commanders. And we've done a webinar at St. Leo University on this very exact subject, on social work and policing, where Pasco County and St. Pete again highlighted their programs. Our RFA draft has been submitted to purchasing and is nearly finalized. We're tweaking some more language on there, but we should have it finalized shortly. Next slide, please. So our RFA, as we discussed before, is going to be very broad and open up a lot of potential options. That does make drafting the RFA very difficult, because we're not itemizing a particular plan or program. And we're basically saying, what does the community think would be best for this area? The subject matter experts. To give the community some guidance, we've highlighted these programs here. Pasco County's program, the Behavioral Health Intervention Team, Houston, Texas program, the Crisis Intervention and Response Team, the Dallas, Texas model, the Rapid Integration Group Healthcare Team, and the Eugene, Oregon Kahoots Program, which we're all familiar with. Next slide, please. So the next 30 days, we're going to be preparing the RFA draft for publishing. We're going to establish the RFA Evaluation Review Committee, publish the RFA, and at that point, that's what's critical. The next step is to engage and educate the stakeholders. Some stakeholders may not be aware that this is coming out. So we're going to be proactively reaching out to them, so they'll know that this RFA is published. We'll be responding to the inquiries. We'll have an information session where they can speak to us and ask us questions about the RFA, and then we'll prepare to close it and give our response evaluations. Next slide. So the timeline is difficult to put exact markers on it, because we're being methodical and diligent in our process, which we believe will pay dividends in the long run. But our goals here are to have the RFA published in the next week or two, have the RFA open for approximately four weeks. Assuming we get responses, we'll complete the evaluation and identify the best program options for the Tampa Police Department to pilot. We're aiming for early 2021, where we'll begin the pilot program process. So that's just a quick, brief update. If there's any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Do we have any questions at this time?
Just a comment.
Go ahead, sir.
Well, yeah, I just wanted to thank Chief Burkhall for pursuing this with great vigor and speed. I think it's very exciting. I'm very pleased that they included all the different agencies that they're looking at, including the Eugene Kahoots Program, because that is responsible to the the community was very excited about Eugene programs. I did have one question, if you can answer it, Lee, which is the, I was sort of surprised and disappointed that the Crisis Center said they didn't want to participate. Can you tell me why, and can we change their minds?
I don't think, I don't want to speak for Claire Reynolds, but it's my assumption that they have too many projects right now. To be honest with you, I'm happy that she's a stakeholder on our end, so it benefits us just as much this way. But I'm just speculating as to her response.
You're comfortable there's other potential providers out there?
Yeah, I'm optimistic. We are trying to get this through quick, because other agencies are doing the same thing. So the sooner we get it out, probably the more options we'll have.
Again, thank you for your hard work on this. When would the next time that you would anticipate coming back to us with an update? I guess after you
If you're looking for some substance, I would go at the beginning of the year.
I missed that, I'm sorry.
If you're looking for a substance report, I would say the beginning of the year.
Well, you know what? I'll leave it, I'll leave it in your hands to schedule something under Chief of Staff Reports to come back to us with an update when you have something substantive to report.
Sounds good.
sooner than later. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? Anybody else? All right. Thank you very much, sir. We'll go to item number 61. We have a memo from Andrea Zelman. If Ms. Zelman is on the line.
Yes, I don't know how much detail you want me to go into. I'm sorry, this is Andrea Zelman, Deputy City Attorney. I did provide the memo just briefly. Council had asked us to look into the possibility of doing a salary history ban, which is a relatively new tool designed to prevent pay discrimination, particularly for women, when employers, prospective employers ask employees. I'll wait.
Use your cell phone. Thank you.
Anyway, the ban would prevent prospective, the city from asking prospective employees what their salary was prior to being hired, with the concept being that if you've been historically paid less than, say, women are typically paid less than men, then that asking the history, and then, you know, theoretically, you would then base the new salary on that history. It perpetuates the gender discrimination. So the concept is to stop asking that question. And so as I outlined in the memo, it would certainly be appropriate for council to ask the mayor to implement a policy banning that question here at the city. And I also have Kelly Austin here to quickly explain how that could be done, should that be council's wish.
Good afternoon. It's Kelly Austin from Human Resources. And we did a little bit of research, the for the application of job apps. And programmatically, we do have a fix, you know, on the form that we could implement to eliminate salary ask. And then what we could do is, when the candidate is, the chosen candidate to be selected for the job, we could provide them with a supplemental questionnaire that asks what desired or expected salary is. So we would not be asking for their historical salary. It would be what their desired or expected salary is for the position in which they're applying.
Chairman? Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Andrea. Thank you, Kelly. That sounds good in regard to the city's process. But I think the larger question, which you, I think you dabbled against, Andrea, was, you know, what can we, what can we legally do out in the community to discourage or prohibit employers from, you know, from making, including that in their, in their application process and their hiring process? And I wasn't sure, after reading the memo, if Florida's different than New York. It appears they do this in New York to a great extent to help women. And I think what happens is, is women leave, you know, leave the market, you know, the job force for X number of years to have the children, and typically to, you know, raise them for a while, and then they come back in, and they've lost momentum and, you know, and that sort of thing. And then they get, and then they get paid less, and that's not fair. So I think that's, I guess I'm preaching to the choir with the two of you, but you know, can we do it in Tampa? Can we do it in Florida? And if so, why don't we?
Well, let me, let me quickly address that. First, I did want to remind you at the outset, yeah, we, and we touched a little bit on this in the memo, that there is pending in Congress, a federal salary history ban. The Florida Legislature has taken this up every year since 2018, but has yet to pass it. There is already in the Florida statutes a prohibition against wage rate discrimination based on sex. But probably more significantly, in Chapter 12 of our code, our Human Rights Ordinance, the city provides a cause of action for people who believe they have been the target of unlawful discrimination. And that includes discrimination with regard to wage disparity based on gender. Again, Chapter 12 provides a cause of action where you can file a complaint with our Office of Human Rights. So we do, we do have a number of protections in place. In terms of whether other jurisdictions, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I'm very familiar, and I did read that in the memo. I just think that this is a more subtle form of discrimination. I think it'd be extremely hard to ever prove. But I think that we all know that it happens implicitly, not explicitly. And I think this would be a very good proactive way to, to limit any opportunity for discrimination. You know, and why should people have to prove it? Why don't we just try and cut it off at the pass? So anyway, that leads to my next question. You said 20 states have allowed for it. Florida, obviously, it's been proposed in Tallahassee, and it will never go through as long as a certain party is in power. And just because no Florida or county or city has adopted it, the question is, can we do it?
So that was what I was going to go to next. While a number of states have adopted statewide salary history bans that apply to both public and private employers, at the city and county level nationwide, I found literally a handful that apply a salary history ban to private employers as well as government employers. And so, and, you know, again, this is a relatively new thing that's, that really, when you go back and do the research. So and and, you know, again, this is a relatively new thing that's that really, when you go back and do the the research, has only been utilized for probably the last three years. One city to date, there's one published case to date addressing the constitutionality of a city applying a salary history ban citywide. And that was in Philadelphia. I can give you the case site later, Mr. Dingfelter. But in that case, the Local Chamber of Commerce sued the city of Philadel- Philadelphia, arguing that it was an infringement on commercial speech required, you know, banning employers from asking their employees that. In that case, the Third Circuit Court of Appeals did uphold uphold the salaries ban, the city's salary ban, I'm sorry. But I would, I would point out that the basis on which they upheld it was by finding that the city had met the intermediate scrutiny test that applies to an infringement on commercial speech. And specifically, they cited to the very extensive expert testimony that was provided when the city council decided to adopt the ban. Because, you know, it's one of those cases where you have to first determine that there's a substantial interest at stake and then make sure that what you're doing is narrowly tailored to address that interest. So I would, I would caution council before we move forward with anything like that. We would need to make sure that, you know, first, it was necessary in the city of Tampa. And, you know, again, you would have to build that record before adopting anything. Which was one of the reasons our suggestion was, you know, if we do it at the city level, it actually gives us an opportunity to see how effective it is, how it works, you know, before moving to something as significant as trying to provide it citywide.
And this is not aimed at you, Andrea, but sometimes I feel like on these things, we're never willing to step out and lead. We we look across the bay at St. Petersburg and 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 they take progressive, bold steps. And Orlando up the road take progressive, bold steps. And and I think this is, this is a great example of something where we can say, and and I agree with you, we have to do it methodically. You know, we have to, we have to accumulate our evidence and accumulate our witnesses. And obviously, in a public hearing, if the chamber wants to oppose it, then they can oppose it. And then we can look and see what the policy is. But I think this is a really, really neat idea. They call it the Helen Gordon Davis Fair Pay Protection Act. And we all knew Helen Gordon Davis. And she would be very proud of us if we moved forward on this thing. So anyway, I'll I'll bring it back as new business at a later date. You and I can talk about it a little more, but I I just think it's a worthwhile endeavor. I hope my fellow council members do too.
Thank you very much. Any other council member have any comments or questions on this item? Thank you very much. Thank you, Ms. Zelman. We appreciate it. And we'll go to item number sixty-six, which is the final item of our agenda today, that the motion from Councilmember Goode's regarding Williams Park Building and the conditions.
Good afternoon, Chairman, members of City Council, Brad Baird, Deputy Administrator of Infrastructure. Going to introduce PJ Callaway, who is our resident engineer that oversees all the construction of of city projects. And that amounts to about fifty projects. And he'll give a short report. Hopefully, addressing Councilman Goode's concerns on on this project. With that, I'll turn it over to PJ.
Thank you, Brad. Good afternoon, Chairman and City Council. I'm here to speak about the several issues that Councilman Goode brought up regarding Williams Park Activity Center expansion. I believe there are three items that were previously brought up. One was the loose handrail. That I was on site last Friday and that handrail had a loose embedment. It has been corrected. It was corrected as of last Friday. The second item that we had ongoing was a color match on the split face block, I believe is the the issue. That existing building has been there for at least fifteen years. And the color that we chose and chosen by the team, including us and Parks and Rec, was the closest match available. The contractor did order the correct block. It was brought on site and 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 it was constructed. Unfortunately, there is some natural variation in in machinery type items. And that's where we're seeing that there isn't a a complete match for that building material. The the last item that I had was the operation of the HVAC system out there. Apparently, it wasn't operating correctly, at least when when Councilman Goode visited the site. So the the system mechanically was performing correctly, but there was a programming issue with it. Since that time, we have had the subcontractor supplier, supplier for the HVAC system onsite. And they have reprogrammed it. That was done on October eighth. And since that time, we have not had any issues with the HVAC system working properly at at the park. So we are very close to completing the job. We are working through a few punch list items similar to the ones that Councilman Goode's brought to your attention. There's some painting that we are going to redo inside the building. And there is some ongoing, the existing park center. So we are very near completion and ready to trade over to Parks and Rec and open up to the public.
All right. Thank you very much. Councilman Goode, this was your motion. Did you have any questions or comments?
Yes, I I talked to Mr. Baird offline this week. The gentleman that just talked, he gave a small, small descriptive interview of what's going on at that facility over there. There are a lot more issues than he indicated in in the report. But I don't want to get into it over line right now. I think that Mr. Baird assured me that they're working on several of the issues that happened with that facility. And that he assured me that they're going to be able to correct a lot more than the three issues that I did name. I know that Ms. Ms. Sosia, Ms. Nguyen and her staff, they all went out there and it concurred that a lot of things, a lot of shouting work was done on this project. Don't really know how it passed. Some of these get this far. But I do know that they're working on a lot of those issues, other than what the gentleman just talked about. I really want to know, I have not heard the dollar amount for that project and what was allocated for that project. I mean, the building is like, I believe, only six hundred square foot. I think the other hundred and fifty, maybe the 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 area, just the bulk area underneath where the the brick was laid. So about a seven hundred and fifty square foot building. I I still haven't got the dollar amount on it. But Mr. Baird, do we have those numbers yet?
Yes, I did. I I forgot to put the the bit tab in front of me, but the it's a twelve hundred square foot addition for five hundred and sixty-three thousand, seven ninety-five. And we as I, as I told you the other day, we also have a pending change order seventy-seven thousand dollars with some add-ons requested by the Parks and Recreation Department. However, we do have, we we did receive six or seven bids. And they range from this low bid of five hundred and sixty-four thousand roughly up to over eight hundred thousand dollars. So it was competitively bid. And we did go with the lowest responsive responsible bid.
Well, I'm not, I'm not gonna, you know, we we talked offline already and you you kind of understand my frustration with what I saw in in the process. So hopefully, going forward, we we won't have these issues. I'm just glad that the project is moving. The community is looking for it to be open. They that project's been delayed since March. So hopefully, we should be on track with that, within the next, within the, the end of this month, hopefully by the first of November. Mr. Baird?
We got, Councilman Goode, this is PJ Callaway, Resident Engineer, Contract Admin. We do have, we have obtained a a certificate of occupancy from the Construction Services Division. And as I said, it's the building is is almost ready to be opened. We're just cleaning up and and completing some punch list items. So that Parks and Rec will feel comfortable bringing the the public into that building.
And what about the inside painting job on that? Are we, are we going after the contractor in reference to this project? Because I think we're spending some of our money on this canal, correct?
Yes, sir, Councilman. We we, the contractor will be repainting that entire addition. And you you are correct about the painting. It's 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 very strange, actually. I I've never seen anything like it. It's at certain angles, you see different sheens on the paint. And so we're, we made the decision earlier this week to just repaint that entire addition. And then, as PJ said, also, you've seen the the tile on the inside. We will be cleaning that tile, or re-cleaning that tile again to make it look as as good as we possibly can. And I did want to bring up something you brought up to me the other day about the children having to go outside to go to the bathroom, you know, when it's raining, it might get wet. So we looked into that with our architect as well. And for that reason, we made the bathroom that's connected to the main building a unisex bathroom. And then the bathroom that's on the the outbuilding that you were referring to, that's also a unisex bathroom. So that that should not be an issue.
I hope we look at that floor in there, because I I mean, that floor was pretty bad in there. They were already working inside painting and doing whatever in the floor. That floor was never done. So I'm hoping that's added into what we're going to finish up on that.
It it is. And we we will be doing another cleaning. It was cleaned once, believe it or not. But yes, there are, there are, there were numerous scuff marks from, you know, the contractor going across the existing flooring. And we will be cleaning that for a second time. You know, off the the entire floor.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Baird and Mr. Callaway.
You're welcome. Thank you very much. Anybody else? Thank you so much. We appreciate it very much. If I could get a motion for items sixty-two and sixty-three, they just need to be received and filed. Can I get a motion to receive and file?
So move.
Motion from Councilman Goode?
Second, Citro.
Second from Councilman Citro. Any objection to receiving and following those documents? Hearing none by unanimous consent. And no objection. We have received and filed items sixty-two and sixty-three. And for item sixty-five, we have a resolution for the five hundred dollars to be donated to Crossover Church. We discussed it earlier. That was brought forth by Councilmember Vieira. May I have a motion to move the resolution?
Move the resolution.
Chair, that resolution was already adopted.
Oh, we already did it? Okay, I'm sorry. Double check. All right. Well, that settles the agenda. We're at new business from council members. I'm going to start with Councilmember Miranda. If you have any new business, sir. Councilmember Miranda, if you have any new business.
No new business.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Citro, do you have any new business today, sir?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Per the request of the Planning Commission, a motion scheduling a plan amendment adoption hearing for TA slash CPA twenty dash thirty-two for the evening of December tenth, twenty twenty, at six P M. And direct the legal department to provide the city clerk with the form of notice for advertising the the public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilman Citro with a second from Councilman Miranda. Is there any objection to the motion? Hearing none, no objection, unanimous consent. The motion is approved. Anything else, sir?
Nothing at this time, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Carlson, do you have anything under new business today, sir?
Yes, sir. Thank you for your leadership today.
Thank you. Not much leadership, but, you know, thank you very much. Councilman Goode, do you have anything today?
No, sir. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. Councilman Dingfelter, do you have anything today for new business?
Yes, sir. In January, we have a part of our workshop includes a a report from the Audit Department. And and I spoke to the our city auditor recently and and you know, I had a long chat about how they do the audits and what type of audits they do and what type they don't do. And and I said, wow, this is really good information for all council members as well as the community. They really work hard and and I think they have less people than they used to, which is unfortunate. But anyway, so I'd like to expand when 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 the Audit Department comes for the workshop. I'd like to expand the scope of their report to be broader in terms of giving us an overview of what the Audit Department does. And then, and then one a, one additional item as related to the auditors is is I I I learned that we have an unusual practice in the city of Tampa where they, and I don't know what mayor started it. I know it wasn't this mayor. But where the auditor sends the audit to the mayor first, they get to review it. And perhaps, I don't know if they edit it or what. And then, and then it gets released to the community and the council. And and I and and I, I asked about that and and found out that that was not the national practice. That's not the best practice. Because it's sort of constrains the auditor, auditor's hands and it removes some of their independence. So anyway, so I'd like them, I'd like the auditor to also report on that issue. Which is, let's call it auditor independence and previewing by mayor's office.
Okay. Do you have a specific date or anything to that, Chair?
Well, it's it's already scheduled for that January workshop. So what I'm doing is just expanding the scope of the auditor's report. And I'll be, try and be more concise for the clerk. So
January twenty-eighth. And that's set for for nine A M. Present.
Okay, yeah. So we'll just add on to their their initial report. And and in addition to what they're already were going to report on, they would also, number one, give us an overview of what the Audit Department does. And number two, to give us an update on the pros and cons of of the of a of a mayor's office previewing the audit before it goes public.
Okay. We have a motion from Councilman Dingfelter. Do we have a second? We have a second from Councilman Goode. Was that, was that you, sir? Is that your voice?
I'll second it.
Okay, I don't know if I heard a second. All right. Is there any objection to the motion? All right, hearing none by unanimous consent. We we've approved this motion. All right.
Thank you, sir. Have a good, have a good day.
Thank you. All right, anything else, sir?
Nope.
All right, Councilman Vieira, do you have anything at this time, sir?
Yes, just very briefly, a motion for a commendation to be given to the Sikh guard, Gurdwara. And I, Gurdwara, and I, no, I mispronounced that. G U R D W A R A. Of Tampa Bay who have distributed over four hundred meals to the public every Sunday. And that said commendation be given on site.
Second.
All right, we have a motion from Councilmember Vieira with a second from Councilman Citro. Hearing none by unanimous consent. Without any objection, the motion passes. Anything else, sir?
Yes, sir. Just lastly, if I may, similar to my, I guess, where we can make donations with our money. I request that five hundred dollars from my account be appropriated to Pepin Academies. And that a, I guess, resolution or whatever it may be be presented back to council. Let's say, I I don't, I don't have this here in front of me. I apologize. Three, three weeks from now, Mr. Shelby, Mr. Chair, whatever the date would be.
All right. Three weeks. If we have, or whatever is nearest to that date.
That would be the nineteenth of November or the first meeting in December, December third?
You know, let, if I may, let's have, is November twelfth available? I guess that's CRA. Yeah, let's just do nineteenth.
November twelfth is the CRA day.
Yeah, so let's do nineteenth. That's fine.
Okay, we have a motion from Councilman Vieira with a second from
Citro.
Councilman Citro, is there any objection to the motion? Hearing none by unanimous consent. The motion passes. Anything else, sir?
Nope, just I I believe a Monday early voting starts, so no matter who you're going to vote for, just to all of the four people listening to us right now, make sure to go out there and vote. And make your voice early. God willing, we don't have long lines like we saw in Georgia. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much. I have nothing at this time. May I have a motion to receive and file all documents?
Mr. Chairman?
Martin Shelby. Mr. Shelby, yes, sir.
Yes, thank you, counsel. I have two items. Number one is before you receive and file, I believe the clerk is in possession of two conflict forms, eight B. One from Councilman Goode and the other from Councilman Dingfelter. Do you have that in your possession, Madam Clerk?
Yes, I do.
Okay. I'd like those to be received and filed as part of the receive and file. Would you do, would you want a separate motion or you want to include that, Madam Clerk?
One motion will do.
Okay, thank you. And, okay, so that'll be part of the receive and file, please. The other council is just, pardon me?
No, go ahead, Mr. Shelby.
Okay. The other point that I, I'd like council to be aware of, as well as the public, is that the Governor's Executive Order twenty dash forty-six and the accompanying documents from the clerk, from the Governor's office, makes it clear that twenty dash sixty-nine will not be extended, which means we are in preparation for returning to the Tampa Convention Center for an in-person quorum of city council. And again, the public will be able to attend there. But from my understanding, per council's desire, unless otherwise directed, is we're setting it up for hybrid meetings. In other words, those people who want to participate while we are still in a state of emergency, obviously due to COVID nineteen, have the opportunity to attend virtually. So that being the case, council, I am requesting that the council direct the clerk to amend its calendar for the months of November and December to indicate that the location of the meetings will be at the Tampa Convention Center.
All right. Can I get a motion to that effect?
So moved.
We have a motion from Councilman Citro. We have a second?
Second.
Second from, was that Councilman Goode?
Yes, second.
All right. Any objection to the motion? All right. Hearing none with no objection and by unanimous consent, the motion passed. Is anything else, Mr. Shelby?
No, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Well, we appreciate it very much. There's nothing, we did receive and file, correct? Yeah.
No, I don't believe you did.
No, we did not.
May I have a motion to receive and file all documents?
So moved.
Second.
Motion from Councilman Goode, second from Councilman Citro. Any objection? Hearing no objection by unanimous consent. We have received and filed all documents. Thank you very much. We are adjourned.